Good morning, everyone. We will convene this public hearing of the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee. Any preliminary comments from my ranking member?
Welcome, everyone. We look forward to hearing from everyone today. There's a lot of great topics on our docket.
I will just start off by reminding everyone of our basic rules, which is three minutes of testimony per person. And if you are signing up for a panel, we give you five minutes, but please share that five minutes with the rest of your panel and don't just take it all over yourself. And then before we get started, I will note that happy Pi Day. So extra credit for any math nerds paying attention today during their testimony. So with that, we will call the treasurer to the chair.
Good morning, everyone. Senator Fonfaro, Representative Horn, Senator Fazio, and Representative Paletta, and distinguished members of the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee, thank you for this opportunity to testify in support of two bills today. Senate Bill 1462, which is an act establishing a tax credit for employer contributions to employees' CHET accounts, and concerning the Connecticut Higher Education Trust and Baby Connecticut Baby Scholars Fund, as well as Senate Bill 1461, which is an act concerning the treasurer's recommendation for pay down of special tax obligation.
National gas, you know, China's building, as my colleague had said previously.
All right. The committee is in possession of my written testimony, and but there are a couple of things that I just want to highlight in the bills before I answer any questions that you may have. With respect to CHET, as you know, the Connecticut Higher Education Trust Fund is the state's 529 tax advantaged college savings program, and it's been a powerful tool for Connecticut families and college-bound students since its inception in 1998. The CHET Direct program currently has approximately $5 billion in assets under management, and there are nearly 200,000 accounts, and that's as of the end of fiscal year 2024. So we manage another billion dollars in assets in the CHET Advisor Program, which is marketed to individuals through a network of financial advisors developed by our partner, Fidelity. Over the past four years, approximately $800 million have been redeemed to cover the cost of education for students attending nearly every public and private college, as well as K through 12 schools here in Connecticut, but also for schools outside of the state. Senate Bill 1462, so in addition to some minor technical changes in ensuring that the future changes to federal law are automatically incorporated here in state law, the bill calls for two attractive benefits for taxpayers and Connecticut businesses. So the bill ensures that all rollovers permissible under federal law are also permitted here in Connecticut. Therefore, if a child graduates from school and pays off all of their student loans, they can use the remainder of their the balance in their CHET account, and it can be rolled over into qualifying tax advantaged accounts, including retirement savings. And the bill also establishes a 25% tax credit for employer contributions to employee CHET accounts. We believe this is a powerful tool for Connecticut businesses, families, and students. The credit in this bill will encourage employers to offer check contributions to employees as part of their benefits, providing another avenue for to help families pay for educational expenses. We're capping the credit at $500 per employee. Six other states have a similar credit, and three states allow a deduction for employer contributions. We're proud to have the support of the Connecticut Business and Industry Association for this provision of the proposal, and we support their suggested expansion of the credit to insurance companies and healthcare centers as well. Finally, the bill repeals outdated references to the CHET Baby Scholar Fund and now allows taxpayers to contribute all or part of their Connecticut tax state tax refunds directly to the Connecticut Baby Bond Trust simply by checking a box on their tax returns. This change does not affect the Baby Scholar Program at all, which provides $100 to CHET accounts that are opened in the first year of a child's birth or adoption. As we are currently, we pay for that program through the office's contract with Fidelity, which is our program administrator. As of June, $1.6 million has been paid out to eligible accounts under the CHET Baby Scholars Program.
You've reached three minutes.
Thank you. I'll just say briefly on the Senate Bill 1461, it's the you the committee will recall from last year, this is our proposal around pay down of outstanding STO debt. So anytime we are exceeding the 18% of expenditures for in the Special Transportation Fund, we would use that excess to pay down long-term debt in the Special Transportation Fund. With that, happy to take any questions from the committee.
Thank you. I will start off with just a couple of questions. One about the 1462, the CHET bill. And you mentioned that six other states have a similar program. I wonder whether you could just flesh that out a little bit about how it's worked in those other states.
Sure. So there Colorado, Illinois, Nevada, Pennsylvania, Wisconsin, Idaho all have programs. They also have the $500 cap per employee. Illinois, they're they had their program in place. I forgot exactly when it was kicked off, but they just extended it, I believe, for another five years. And so it's a very similar structure to what we are proposing here today, and they found it to be effective. We work very closely with a coalition of treasurers all across the country in trying to make these chat programs and college savings as useful as possible. And I think they've found a lot of success in incentivizing people to contribute to these accounts while also giving the benefit to businesses who are participating and helping with that incentive.
Thank you. And then with respect to the Special Transportation Fund proposal, just I think we've had this testimony before, but does that aside from the obvious savings, does it have any impact negative? You know, presumably, but negative or positive on the state's credit rating or on the availability of funding in that fund or anything like that?
So no impact on our ability to fund projects, the way we fund all of our programs around transportation with the DOT in Connecticut is through the issuance of these STO bonds. And so what this is doing is reducing that debt profile. If anything, it's freeing up more resources for us to issue bonds as we continue to increase the number of projects that we are building out. It does reduce our overall debt profile, and there are significant savings from a debt service perspective. When this was passed last year for fiscal year 25, November, we eliminated $534 million of outstanding STO debt, which is saving taxpayers upwards of $682 million over the next decade in debt service.
Thank you. Do you have no other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Representative Plata.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Treasurer, thank you for being here. My question is just regarding the STF as well. I know that there's been a lot of talk about the projects in the STF. Some of them have not gotten off the ground yet. This is a little backlog there. How much is there in the reserve fund right now in the Special Transportation Fund? Do we have that information?
Just over 500.
Okay. And in my final question around the projects, because it's been a topic of discussion in the building the last several sessions of, you know, we have, I think, 40, 50 projects in the queue. I don't know the exact number. Is there any idea as to when we can actually start to to use those funds to get these projects off the ground and get our, you know, folks to work and start improving the transportation around the state?
Sure. So one, and happy to build on this, we work closely with DOT in lining these projects up. And just so you know how these work, when we are issuing debt, a lot of these projects take time even when they are shovel ready. And so what happens is we're drawing on these funds over the life of that construction. We are seeing these challenges all across the country as a lot of it has to do with the number of engineers and staffing up to get these projects shovel ready to be built out. But to be clear with this proposal, nothing about the funding component is going to hinder our ability. In fact, it's going to help as the DOT has really ramped up the speed that they're deploying capital for these transportation projects. We want to make sure we're ready to do that as efficiently as possible as well.
Thank you.
Representative Rader.
Hi, Treasurer. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Just a quick question for you regarding the language around the CHET accounts, and you you mentioned how you know, a student grows up, they go to college, they get a full scholarship, and there is, say, $100,000 saved up for them. They are what are the kind of avenues or vehicles that you see would be permissible for them to transfer that money into? You spoke about that would be retired. You said retirement account, but is there any are there any limitations to the amount? Can they split it up? You know, I'm just curious, like, what that would look like.
So I believe it can be split up. This was actually part of the federal change, which is why we're coming forward today to make sure that our laws here in Connecticut are lining up with the new federal law that make clear that we this money can be rolled over. This is also part of the kind of incentive like incentivizing folks to contribute to these accounts because I we heard some reservations around, you know, concern that we would put money into an account that may not be used for educational expenses in the future. To be very clear, I mean, people could take their money out of a CHET account. The downside of that is that you're not getting the tax incentive of the earnings that were accrued over the investment life of the money in the CHET account. And so this is making clear that you get the tax benefit of these rollovers into a similar or another tax advantaged type of.
But there has to be a remain. So even if not $1 was used for education because their circumstances, they're not getting penalized. They roll it into one of these other.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative Yaccarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric, great to see you. Doing a terrific job, you and your team. I just one question. The higher education piece for could you use that money that the person use that money for accredited trade schools instead of the higher ed? It doesn't specify it. I'm guessing you can, but I just don't.
Correct. So CHET accounts can be used for educational expenses pretty broadly. So it could be K through 12 schools for private schools. Those funds could be used for accredited colleges, for vocational schools. And so there is a pretty broad net. There are, you know, specific. So for example, schools that are funded through Title IX is, I think, what is the requirement for vocational schools, but there is a broad use of the funds. It could also be additional expenses that are tied to books or, you know, other things that students cause that students would be incurring.
I appreciate the clarification. Thanks. Keep up the good work. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. I believe Representative Berdr Gavalo is online with a question, but Representative Farrar also online.
Hey, y'all. Thanks so much. Hi, Treasurer. I did have a question and hoping if you don't have the information right now, you could share it with the committee. You shared that there were several states that have provided this tax credit for employers again to incentivize some more of those contributions. You know, I'm curious what, again, those other states have seen about the uptick around those contributions. If that's something you have that you could share today or with the committee at a later date.
Happy to circle back with you. I don't have the the exact numbers on hand, but I'm happy to provide that.
That would be wonderful. I think, again, that would just give us greater evidence to see if this is fulfilling what the intent is. So thank you to the Treasurer. Thank you, the Chair.
Thank you, Representative. I believe there was another representative who was traveling, but I don't know whether she was able to pull over. So when we get her question, we know where to find you, Mr. Treasurer.
You do.
We will direct that to you. Seeing no further questions, thanks for being here and for sharing your proposals with us and for kicking us off.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Stephen Renieri.
Here, Woman Horn, Chairman Fonfara, Ranking Members Paletta and Fazio, and members of the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Steve Renieri, and I am the Controller for Enterprise Mobility. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of HB 5983. Enterprise Mobility operates the Enterprise National Car Rental and Alamo Rent-A-Car brands. We started as a small family-owned company with a fleet of seven cars with our founders' tireless credo, do the right thing. One of our greatest strengths as an organization is our promote-from-within culture. In Connecticut, Enterprise employs over 700 people and pays over $33 million annually in various state taxes, fees, and surcharges assessed on the rental industry, including 8.4 million in local taxes paid to municipalities for vehicle property tax. Enterprise Mobility supports efforts to level the playing field in the rental car marketplace within Connecticut. It is unclear what the what rate peer-to-peer car sharing companies operating in our state are currently taxed at. Peer-to-peer car sharing is generally referred to as the Airbnb of car rental. In 2021, the Connecticut General Assembly passed legislation regulating the peer-to-peer car sharing industry to be more in line with the traditional car rental market. One of the requirements from that legislation was a request of the DRS to submit a ruling to the legislature on how these peer-to-peer car sharing transactions should be treated relating to taxes. According to testimony submitted for this bill by the DRS Commissioner, the 2021 ruling was that peer-to-peer car rentals were subject to the 9.35 rental tax based on the marketplace facilitator rule. HB 5983 helps achieve parity in the marketplace and makes peer-to-peer taxation clear by requiring the 9.35% sales tax be assessed to peer-to-peer rentals less than 30 days. 9.35% has been the tax rate for years on traditional rent-a-car companies. This elevated tax is subject to all car rentals less than 30 days in Connecticut, regardless if the rental occurs at an airport or at one of our over 68 enterprise offices within Connecticut. Many people assume that car renters are all from out of state, but I can assure you 80% of our transactions are Connecticut residents. So in my opinion, you know, why should a Connecticut resident who chooses to rent from us be taxed at 6.35%, where if they choose a peer-to-peer company, they pay 9.35%? So last thing I'll say is later on today, you may hear opposition talk about a special tax exemption that the rent-a-car industry receives. I can assure you it is not a special tax exemption when we purchase vehicles. It's that we are a wholesaler, and like many other wholesalers in the state and across the country, we are not subject to sales tax when we purchase vehicles. We pass that sales tax along to the consumer, and then when we sell a vehicle at the end of its life, it's sold wholesale to a dealership, and the dealership then turns around and sells the car to the public, which taxes and collected from at retail at that point. So I just wanted to kind of clear that up in advance, but thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And just going back to that last point, I wonder whether I could just draw you out a little bit. As you noted, there the some in opposition to this have noted what they claim to be an unfairness in terms of the charging of sales tax on the income, the original purchase of the car. And you don't see that as a disparity? Why again?
So as a wholesaler, we purchase a vehicle with a specific intent to rent to the general public or consumer, which we then charge sales tax on that transaction. And then at the end, when when the car is done with its rental life, we sell the car wholesale again to a to a dealership within the state who then sells it to the general public and collects sales tax at that point. So we feel as though because we collect and remit sales tax throughout the life of the rental, that it's not subject in the on the front end, similar to like if a a company like a Best Buy or something who wholesale purchases TVs, they don't pay pay sales tax on that TV when they buy it. It's when the customer who's ultimately going to put it in their home would would take possession.
Thank you. Representative Berry.
Thank you, Steve, for being here. I want to first start by saying that Enterprise is a valued great, great community partner in Glastonbury. So I thank you for being here. I think you mentioned it in your testimony, but what percentage of cars are rented to Connecticut residents?
So 80% of our transactions are to Connecticut residents within the state.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Paletta.
Thank you, Steve, for being here. I'm also too on a fact-finding mission. There's been a lot of testimony or talk on both sides of this issue. It's something that interests me. We've heard it the last couple of years and just wanted to get your opinion. So first, my first question, I've asked it to numerous people, and I think it's important to get on the record, but the you mentioned this, the 9.35% that that Enterprise pays. So why the the 3% difference in the 6.35 to the 9.35? So peer-to-peer pay the 6.35 or charge the 6.35? The rent-a-car companies, enterprise, et cetera, 9.35. Is there something built into that 3% that you're what is what is that 3% for? I guess that's my question. Why? Why the excise tax?
Right. So I've been in my role for 10 years here in Connecticut, and this happened before my time, so I really don't know what the reason is for the elevated tax rate on the on the rental industry. But I'm sure I can, through some research, I could probably provide that for you.
So and I and I guess not to put you on the spot, because I'll probably ask the question numerous times throughout the day, and then perhaps someone else after you could expound on it as well. I don't know if you have an explanation, but does in any way, shape, or form the extra tax that's charged get provide you or your company any benefit?
No, the sales tax is strictly a pass-through. So we collect from the customer, we turn around and remit it to the state. There's nothing that Enterprise keeps from the the sales tax.
And there's no nothing in that 3% that you utilize, use that benefits the industry at all in that. Okay.
Nope. All right. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, thanks for being with us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jean Cronin.
Welcome. Welcome. Chairman Fonfara and Representative Horn, Ranking Members Fazio and Paletta, and Vice Chairs Miller Cabrera, Rader, and Constantine. First, I'd like to say I've been doing this a long time. I've never got such a low number as three for a public hearing. So maybe this is good luck. My name is Jean Cronin. I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut Package Stores Association, and I have with me today Maureen Abramson. She's the owner of Mo's Wine and Spirits in Fairfield. And we're here today to support Senate Bill 1460, an act concerning interchange fees on electronic payment transactions. So you all know Connecticut's an expensive place to do business. We have one of the highest minimum wages in the country and even higher electricity costs. We have expensive leases, property taxes, and business taxes. And yet, despite all these burdens, the most complaints we receive in our association from our members is about the skyrocketing costs of credit card fees. Most purchases now, and it depends on the store or the percentage, but most purchases are made electronically as the consumers are shifting to cash. as the consumers are shifting to cashless payments using credit cards and other electronic means as opposed to cash. Credit card networks charge the retailers exorbitant rates for the privilege of using these cards. And I think most consumers don't realize that. Transaction fees are charged on each of the of the sales. And then there's even a larger portion that's charged on the entire amount. It's called an interchange fee, and that's on the whole amount of the sale, including the sales tax. So these interchange fees are set by the card issued banks and they vary depending on the type of card you use and the rewards associated with that card. It's not a fixed amount. Retailers are often unaware of these fees until they get those monthly invoices from the processing companies. And these Maureen has some to show today, but these interchange fees on these statements are really hard to read. It's incredibly confusing. And most of the retailers don't even know what they're being charged until they get these these statements. So I'm going to turn it over to Maureen to talk about the situation she's had and some of the things going on with her credit card transactions.
Kind of interesting that this kind of all came about at the same point that we were having this situation. But good morning, good afternoon, esteemed members of the Finance Committee. My name is Maureen Abrahamson. And I own Mo's Wine and Spirits in Fairfield, Connecticut. My husband and I have been self-employed for 27 years, in which we have owned three separate Connecticut businesses. It is my understanding that I'm providing testimony today to illustrate how small businesses must navigate the credit card processing behemoths, lack of transparency regarding fees. In August of 2023, I signed a 24-month contract with Global Payments, which is a large credit card processing firm. With 12 months remaining on my contract, Global Payments breached my contract and charged me 66% higher fees for November 2024 over November 2023, even though my business was flat. After calling Global Payments several times, I was informed that their fees had increased so that they were passing the increase onto their customers, even though I have a signed contract. My case was then kicked upstairs. I was then informed that I could receive a $5,000 refund if I signed another 12-month contract. But if I terminated Global Pay within that 12-month window, they would garnish the $5,000 back for me. I was also provided a revised client-side satisfaction order offer, which would bring my fees close to the original contract. In addition, I was asked to sign a settlement and release agreement, which would essentially release Global Pay from any future claims while admitting no admission of liability. So in the middle of my most important season, we transitioned to a new company, which is significantly less expensive. The reports are easier to understand and the processors do not break down and are much faster. In February, Global Pay claimed we had an outstanding balance for transaction processed while we transitioned to the new company, even though they had breached my signed contract and still owed me money from November. They also threatened to report us to Experian. I've now corresponded to Global Pay that I'm not going to pay this outstanding balance as this is an unfair business practice. If a huge company can increase fees on small businesses without explicit signed documentation, then why have a contract? In conclusion, credit card fees are very expensive for retailers and credit card companies are charging an exorbitant amount for the privilege of using their processing capabilities. As you can see from my story, the retailers are at their mercy as they continue to ease on a whim while having access, direct access to our banking accounts. This bill would provide a step in the right direction by disallowing the charging of their fees on state sales tax, which could potentially save me several thousand dollars a year. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
And this bill, we're not asking to cap the fees of these credit card companies. We're not saying they can't charge fees. What we're simply saying is don't charge the sales tax on the interchange fee. That just seems like a fee on a tax. It seems very unfair. Thank you.
Thank you. As you know, we've looked at this proposition a couple of different times before. And I had two quick questions. One is you mentioned you talked about transparency here. Is there a would it be helpful at a minimum for us to take action with respect to transparency?
I mean, can you do that on the state level or is this a federal issue? So that's
That is an open question.
Right. Because I know there's been a lot of class action lawsuits. But when you get, and I was just showing this to Jean, a statement that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven pages long, there's just a way you can understand it. The other thing is that who can tell me what VS Business Purchase Retail PPD is? Right? And it's 150 line items of this. So yes, I would love more transparency. It'd be would be terrific.
Thank you. And then just I have had it suggested to me by some opposition to this bill that that eliminating these interchange fees would be bad for small business. I wondered whether you had any position on that.
That doesn't
Other than baffling.
Doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you.
If it's going to save me $8,000 a year.
Yeah, I think Maureen did a calculation, just her store, what she would save if they did not charge sales tax in these interchange fees.
And I just before I go to there are lots of people, several people with questions. But there is, to your point, there is a significant federal issue here that
Yes.
people have different positions on. So Senator Honig.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for being here with your testimony. I my question is, you know, if we're going to limit the dollar amount that the credit card companies can charge you fees on to the purchase price and without the sales tax. My kind of thinking is if we did that, they would just raise their fee level by, you know, 6.35% and wouldn't end up saving any money. So could you like talk about that?
I agree. There's got to be some kind of mechanism that this can be tracked and reported out because that's absolutely correct that that could happen.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Representative Menepace online.
Hi, thank you. I was wondering for this one and forgive me, I'm kind of bouncing between this and another meeting and I might have missed it, but have is there really any difference between the different credit card companies in terms of these these junk fees that you're receiving? Is this something that is just kind of a carb lunch for all of them that they're charging very similar ones? Are you seeing differences between the companies?
Junk fee, that was that's a great way to explain it. With regard to different fees, yes, I have now utilized a new, keep looking up there, thinking he's going to be up there, a new company that has come in significantly less less money with less fees and they're actually easier to understand too. So you don't have 150 line items. You've got 10. So yes, there is, there is a difference.
But but Representative, they also charge different fees based upon the types of cards. So if it's a reward card, somebody's getting cash back, they're getting miles. That's a different fee than if it's just a flat base card. So it's all over the place. As Maureen was saying, it's very confusing on these statements. Depending on the card the the customer uses, it's a different fee every time for the card.
Through you, Madam Chair, just that that does sound very confusing. And I was curious if your organization has been able to provide really any guidance? Or is this just getting so complicated that that you are really struggling to be able to guide your your the businesses in your organization?
Representative, it's the latter. It's very confusing and complicated. That's why we kind of are looking to you folks. While as as Senator Honig said, this may not be the perfect solution, at least it's a step in the right direction because these fees keep increasing every single year. And as Maureen said, you have a contract, you think you have a rate, but it changes constantly. So you're not really quite sure what you have.
Thank you.
It can change on a whim.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Zupkin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hi, thank you for coming today. So some of my questions have been asked about the transparency. To me, it seems like a federal issue unless you're going to change Waterbury Teacher Credit Union fees, right? We can't cap or do anything but federally. That's above us. So it would be just on banks that are in our state, correct?
So it's a it's a sales tax issue. So I I'm not a lawyer, so I I don't know how that would be calculated if it would be state-based banks versus federally chartered banks. That's an interesting question, but you know, I do know we've done this other issues, other committees, you look at the Insurance Committee with insurance mandates. That ends up being on certain insurance companies, but not the self-insured ERISA plans. So we have precedent for doing it. But you're right, it could be a situation where it's it's just the state ones versus a federal. There is, it did pass, this legislation passed in Illinois. I know there's a lawsuit pending that is progressing. This issue was brought up in that lawsuit. I think there's some other people who will be speaking behind me who can who are much better informed on that issue than I am, that may be able to answer that question in more detail.
Okay. And if, say, something was going to happen to somehow adjust the fees or you pay only on the goods and services and not the tax part of it, how would you do that? So would your business, ma'am, would your business submit to I I don't know that you could do it to Visa, but a a local bank or, you know, I don't know who you would submit it to to say these are what I have brought in for the last month, whenever you do it. I'm just I'm making this up, but you know, I've had $100,000 in sales excluding the tax. Here it is. Here's my proof. And then this is what I owe you on that.
I I don't have an answer to that. It's I have to think the credit card companies have some kind of algorithm that they can utilize to be able to determine this, but
Okay. I just I'm very interested in the federal. How do you and and are you going to do it just to the banks in Connecticut?
Right. And Representative, that's a really good question and we would love to know the answer to that. And maybe one of these financial institutions that are speaking behind us could could answer that. But you know, in this day and age where we have such sophisticated computer programming and as Maureen said, algorithms and AI and everything else, I can't believe that some computer programmer can't figure out a a solution to this problem of how to back out that sales tax. And oftentimes with these computer processors, they're providing the equipment to the retailers as well. So they're providing the backend, but they're giving you the the POS system or the cash register or the the equipment in your store. So certainly they're controlling both ends. They can figure something out.
Right. Thank you. And just a comment, if you will, I mean, at some because someone mentioned to me, maybe you swipe your credit card twice. And I said, I'm not swiping my credit card twice. They get as many tax dollars out of me as they do. I'm not swiping it just to say, here, I'm paying you taxes now on that. But thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Constantine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jean, thank you so much for being here. Maureen too. I know you've referenced to the people who'll be speaking after you too. So I'm curious, as the Connecticut Package Package Store Associations, you know, representing retailers, what kind of conversations have you had with the banking industry on this issue?
I'm going to be honest, we haven't had any recently, but years ago, we used to have a credit card processor that was a member that we utilize that all of our stores use because they gave us a a much better rate. We don't find those situations anymore. It's very challenging to find a credit card company that you can work with that will give good rates to members. In fact, one of the big complaints we hear from members is that they're tied to a credit card processor and they can't get out of it. They can't get anybody on the phone. They can't get responses to emails. They're trapped in these situations and just trying to extricate yourself from that is a real problem. So I know that's a long answer, but yes, years ago, we had great relationships. I I don't know that they do that anymore. If they do, I'd love to hear from them, but we haven't found that.
May I?
Yes, go ahead.
The other the other issue with Package Store Associations, we have certain POS systems that can track our inventory and go through our registers. And usually they are paired up with a merchant credit card company that utilizes their system. And you get into these contracts and it's hard to to get out of, but they're all they're married to them. So.
I mean, I will will follow up with the industry people who are showing up after. When you get to the the contracts, are these local contracts? Are they kind of national contracts, federal contracts?
On the phone, I think my company could be out of Utah, could be out of New Jersey, could be out of Georgia because I've gotten statements from all three places. I think a lot of them merge as well or buy out the smaller companies. So you could start with one company. Like I didn't start with Global Pay. So yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Representatives. Seeing no further questions. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Tracy McDougall from Farm Bureau. And Paul Larson.
Senator Fonfera, Representative Horn and members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee, good morning. My name is Paul Larson. I'm President of the Connecticut Farm Bureau Association, representing farmers in the state and a farmer myself. I'm here this morning to speak in support of House Bill 7175. And as you all know, this bill will provide a investment property, investment tax credit for farmers in our state as well as raising the threshold for the municipal property tax exemption on farm machinery and equipment. Quite often, when I come before a committee here, I I find myself testifying in support or in opposition of a bill, but in seeking maybe some revision in the wording. This bill is an exception to that. This bill, I think, is very well thought out, very well written, and we support it fully, just the way it's presented now. The long-term benefits Connecticut agriculture this bill provides will go a long way to support farming in Connecticut for many years to come. The the two proposal being offered provide significant incentives for farmers to invest in the infrastructure, farm buildings, farm machinery, processing equipment and so forth. And I'm sure we'll see very many tangible benefits down the road. A few key features of the bill are a farmer must have a history of farm income in order to take advantage of this tax credit. This wording will ensure that only farmers who derive a significant portion of their overall income from farming will be able to utilize this program. And that's a way to protect the farm, the state's investment in this program. So it's actually being utilized by farmers in productive agriculture. To qualify the investment, the asset must be a tangible asset with an expected life of over four years. So the equipment, machinery, buildings and so forth. Again, this is promoting the long-term sustainability of the farm and the state's investment in this in this program. And lastly, the farmer must use these tangible assets in agricultural production for at least five years. There's actually a penalty and a payback mechanism built into the bill so that if something is no longer used, yet the tax benefit was taken advantage of in the first year of purchase, then the farmer has to pay that that tax credit back to the state, again, protecting the state's investment in this program. So we think those are all reasonable aspects of this bill and we support that. I'd like to also comment on the second part of the bill, which raises the statewide municipal property tax exemption on farm machinery and equipment, fully supporting this. This higher threshold of exemption will be a key factor that will allow more farmers to make these equipment and machinery investments to ensure the long-term sustainability of their farm. So I ask for your support for House Bill 7175. I look forward to seeing the positive impact that this will have on farmers in our state, large and small, for many years to come. And I'd like to turn it over to my Executive Director, Tracy McDougall, for some further comments.
Hi there. You have a nice turnout here today. It's nice to see lots of legislators here. Yeah, so I would just piggyback on what Paul said. When I emailed our members about this proposal, I was using words like landmark and historic. So this is really a unique opportunity we have to make a huge impact on Connecticut farms. You probably are all well aware that we lost 500 farms in Connecticut over the last five years. So this would be a great way to help sort of mitigate that loss that we're seeing. As Paul said, there's lots of financial benefits to farmers, reduced financial burdens and investments, encouraging farm modernization, just like other industries where we see technology and innovation occurring at warp speed. That's happening with agriculture as well. And that would help move our farmers along with that. It encourages them to invest long-term in their businesses and also encourages them to invest in mitigating techniques and strategies to mitigate climate change. And finally, it strengthens the state's ag economy. So in the statewide municipal property tax exemption that's included in this proposal, it's really the same, a lot of the same bullet points in terms of investing in farming, investing in agriculture and would really just benefit all of our farms in the state. So we So we hope you'll take advantage of this opportunity, um, to, uh, support something that's historic for farmers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I go, am I under the time?
You're under the time. You get a gold star and you shared beautifully. There you go, agriculture representing very well today. I have a question that I wanted to start with, the sort of table setting thing that this is, this is a, you know, agriculture. We tend to talk about agriculture in a lot of different ways, but in a, among them, it is a four billion dollar industry in the state of Connecticut. Um, and this is.
Approaching five.
Approaching five. Thank you. Thank you for that. I'll start to use five. And so I think, as you know, I represent a district that's very close to both the Massachusetts and New York borders and I, in my district, there are several farmers who farm both in in New York and in Connecticut. Uh, and I wonder whether you had, have had any, have any sort of experience or or you could share with respect to how this is working in in New York as opposed to Connecticut. I mean, Connecticut doesn't have this yet and New York does.
Yes, that's a very good point. Thank you for that question, Representative. The, um, we actually do have a farmer who I believe has submitted testimony. I'm not sure if he's gonna be here today. And or testifying, uh, on this bill, but, uh, Cricket Jack here is out in the Litchfield County area. Uh, and he is, uh, he has, just as Representative Horn mentioned, he has land and agricultural production in both Connecticut and New York of both sides of the line. Um, he could very easily just change these physical, the, the, the business address without changing where he's farming. And just say now his farm is based out of some of the property that he has in New York, cross the line and take advantage of that tax credit. But that also means that all of the other, um, you know, uh. You know, the income tax and so forth from his farm, all the other, uh, aspects of the farm would not, would not, would no longer be connected with Connecticut. So New York State would benefit from those. Uh, so yeah, that is, that is certainly a factor. Um, similarly, um, Massachusetts has a program that's not exactly like this, but there are some benefits for agriculture that Massachusetts has that we don't have yet in Connecticut. So. Um, yeah, it, this bill will allow our Connecticut farmers to be more competitive and to be more of an incentive to stay in Connecticut.
Thank you. Representative Reader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's good to see you both. Um, and Tracy did a great job. So I'm glad to see both here. I just had a, a comment or a question. You know, I know we have bishops in Guilford, Bishop's Orchard, and they've been a real model of kind of, um. Looking to change what the word farming means in terms of their business and and business model and. Creating opportunities for apple picking and building a structure near the apple orchard and things to kind of bring the community in more. Um, do you see farms kind of moving that way? Or is, like, I'm just curious. What do you see as the future for farms in Connecticut to make them sustainable for the farmers and their families? Are they kind of diversifying what the farm looks like? Part of this bill is around like structures. And I know. At bishops, they've built two new structures to kind of welcome the community and have retail and other things like that. Do you see farms moving that way? Or is that more unique for that that model?
Uh, no, I'd be happy to comment on that. Thank you for that question. It's actually not unique to bishops. Um, many farms in Connecticut, um, you know, large or small, um, have found that. It just is not as profitable anymore to be raising your crop or producing your milk or raising your animals. And just selling them to a wholesaler or a processor or whatever. Um, those days are kind of gone. Uh, we, the margins are just not there. So, uh, what many of our farmers have done is tried to incorporate some form of, um, of agritourism, basically, of bringing the. Read the consumer onto the property to take advantage of capturing that retail dollar. And any percentage of their output that they can sell directly to the consumer, uh, which also increases that connection, of course, between food and farmer, which is a long term benefit, certainly. Um, helps nutrition, um, outlook and so forth, uh, but allows that farmer to capture that retail dollar. Yes, there are additional expenses involved, certainly in terms of staffing and infrastructure buildings, like you said. Um, and we also have a bill, uh, in the hopper here regarding agritourism, uh, that will limit the liability, um, that a farmer might, uh, experience. By having the public coming on to their property. So we certainly hope that bill, um, passes this session. So, yeah, to answer your question, um, this would help in that regard because some of those agritourism activities do require. Additional, um, you know, construction of maybe a new building, as you mentioned, out in the middle of an orchard perhaps, or something like that.
Okay, well, great. Thank you. You really, you really clarified for me what I thought was happening, but just wanted to hear it from you guys as well. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Constantine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for your testimony. It's, uh, great to hear that you have a bill, you know, fully support, sounds like for the first time. Um, so for the benefit of those of us on the committee, those of us hearing, uh, here in the room and on Zoom. Could you tell us a little bit about who comprises as farmers in Connecticut, small business? Do we have large agriculture? Is it all, you know, agritourism? Can you tell us a little bit about your members and how they'd benefit from this, uh, from this bill?
Oh, boy, I feel like this is like a pop quiz.
Tracy, let me just interject. Trade, Ms. McDougall has been our executive director for five weeks. Uh, but she has been associated with our, with our farmers and the Connecticut Farm Bureau for many years. So that's why I said, Tracy, you can take this one. I'm confident.
I mean, um, I think what I would really like to do is get you that in writing because there's a. Um, there's a NAS USDA survey every five years of all the farms in the state and. Their commodities and what size they are and how many staff they have. And I think I would just prefer to. Rather than make something up, I'd prefer to give you something in writing. Is that all right?
Yes, of course. That's perfectly fine. No, it'd be great. So we all have an, um, an idea as to who this bill is going to help.
Yeah.
Um, make sure, you know, um, how effective the bill will be and how effective it will be on the farm economy here.
Yeah. And if I could, I'll just elaborate this briefly here. I don't want to respect the time. Um, but yeah, Connecticut agriculture is extremely diverse, um, similar to other New England states, but very different to Midwestern states, for instance, or even. I mean, California is kind of the exception just because of the magnitude of their ag economy out there. Uh, but you know, we have everything from aquaculture and Christmas trees and vineyards and dairies and beef and Christmas trees and horticulture and you just name it, it goes on and on. Um, out in the Midwest, it's more commodity row crops, corn beans and soybeans, you know, down south, it's peanuts, cotton and so forth. So, um, the diversity that we have, it means that we also have a lot of smaller operations. And in those smaller operations, um, you know, if your margin is small as it is, but then you're taking a margin off of a smaller amount. It really makes things a little tight some years. So, um, a program like this, which, um, helps improve the bottom line for farmers. When they make those investments and when they buy that machinery or they put up that building to improve the long term sustainability of their farm, no matter what sector and ag they're in, it's gonna have long term benefits. And and it's also gonna be a benefit for the next generation, because that's one of our challenges in farming is, you know. Making sure that it's sustainably economically. So the next generation looks at the books and they say, okay, I'll do this. Because if they look at the books and and mom and dad were hardly making anything, why would the, that college student want to get into it?
I come from Minnesota, so it's very familiar story. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. I know if you send it, if you could send any information to our committee clerk, Ash Northman, so she can share it with the whole, uh, committee, that would be great. Representative Paines.
Hello. Thank you for being here. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I think we met in in Hattam when it was your second day. Tracy, so you've made it five weeks. You're doing great. Um, you just touched on it, um, Paul, in regards to the generations. And I think this is what's so important about what this bill is able to do. Is is that, you know, the fact that you say that we've lost five hundred farms in the last five years, that's. That's criminal. That's, that's so upsetting, right? But there was a lot of different things there, but to the point is that you just mentioned that the younger generations are looking at the books. And saying, can I do this after mom and dad is done? And I think what is more important too is is that. With farms and being, looking at that bottom line, the new equipment and the new machinery that they really have to invest in. Is only capable, you know, it's, they can only do that if there's some kind of incentive and help to do that, because right now mom and dad are running with. Very old equipment. And when I first got here seven years ago, I was trying to get the depreciation schedule changed so that the farmers were going out and buying used equipment. For the next modernization, even though they're buying twenty year old equipment, they're getting assessed at a new purchase price because it wasn't working for them. So this is, you know, this modernization that we're talking about, you can just talk a little bit about that and just let people know how important it is that. And all of the, you know, the, the bottom line numbers, this new equipment is that much more effective for them. And again, as the younger generations want to take in. They need that. They need that bottom line adjustment. And this is what this will do, which I think is a great bill as well.
Well, thank you for that. That's a very astute observation. The, the reality is that, uh, while, you know, if you track inflation since nineteen eighty five, when this. You know, current figure was set for the machinery, municipal tax exemption, for example. Um, you know, the, uh, pair of, you know, a car costs what, you know, twelve thousand dollars or something? And now we all know what that is. Machinery has actually exceeded that percentage. It's like two hundred and eighty five percent of other, of the overall inflation. So, uh, there's testimony that you'll receive. I don't know how many of the farmers that we have that submitted testimony will be able to come in today or are are testifying virtually. Uh, but some of them have actual numbers in their testimony. I've seen what they've written. And it's not unusual for like a forage harvesting equipment to either chop corn or, uh, to, um, harvest grass for silage or for a cow feed. Um, to exceed eight, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's just like unfathomable, um, from, you know, back. Twenty, thirty years ago, but that's what this machinery costs. The technology that the manufacturers have built into it, uh, is all great, but it adds to the cost. And, uh, if you, you know, the only other resort is to pick up someone's old beat up piece of equipment, you know, if you need to go that route, and then you're inheriting their problem. So. Um, the, the newer machinery is more efficient, it's more productive, uh, it yields, uh, higher yields for the farmer. So there's a lot of reasons why they should go with that new equipment. It's more safe. Safety is a big factor in farm equipment. I, I, you know, I don't want to talk about how many farm accidents there are in the United States, uh. But, uh, the new, the new equipment is much safer as well. So those are all reasons for an farmer to be able to make that investment and this program will help them. Make the numbers work when they do that analysis and put the pencil to the paper. Okay, I, I realize with this, with this advantage, with this tax savings, I can justify spending this kind of money on the farm.
Thank you very much for that answer and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Monfaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, uh, both for your testimony. This app, this morning and this afternoon. Tracy, great to see you. Longtime friend, longtime constituent, and let the reflect, record reflect that even an urban legislator can be a supporter of farms. We still have one, I think, still in Weathersfield. But Tracy, did I hear you correctly that in the last five years, we've lost five hundred farms?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
What, can you tell us, I, I know Representative Rader did delve into this area, but if you could tell us what. Was there, sure, there may be many reasons, but just give us a sense as to what's happening.
Yeah.
That we would lose that many farms in such a short period of time that we lose any farms, but.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, Connecticut is not alone. The number of farms in the whole country has been decreasing over time. Um, and there's a lot of factors that go into that. Um, one of the biggest problems Connecticut faces. Uh, is, um, profitability and being able to make money from a farm. So the more farms that can make money, the more farms we have. And it's hard to make money on a farm in Connecticut. Our input costs are really high. Power, uh, labor costs are very high and that all impacts your bottom line. And, um. I was talking to a member, uh, recently, who was a very established farm in eastern Connecticut. Very well known, multi generation, and he was in his late sixties and he said to me. If I could make forty thousand dollars profit salary for myself every year. That's kind of where I am. I'd like to be able to make more. And so then when you're looking at the next generation coming up, forty thousand dollars in the state doesn't get you very much. So. It's just making a profit is tough in this state. It's very tough. So that's why you see farmers. Diversifying so that if the pumpkin crop kind of goes down the tubes, then you've got your blueberry picking or you've got your, uh, corn maze. So. It's, it's tough. Do you want to, Paul, do you want to add?
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of contributing factors. Um, certainly some of the loss of farms is due to consolidation, farmers who retire or, um. Pass away, uh, and another farm in in some cases, another farm might take over the, you know, the production on that land, if that's an option. Uh, but it does mean there's one less farmer in the state, so that contributes to that statistic. Also, um, those are USDA numbers and USDA identifies as a farm, um, that produces only a thousand dollars of. Sales, whereas like our state definition of a farm in order to qualify for a farm tax exempt permit and so forth is twenty five hundred dollars. So it's a higher threshold for Connecticut. Uh, the federal number is only a thousand, so that includes some pretty small farms. Um, so many of those. And I don't want to, um, say anything negative about smaller farms because some of them are just beginning and they will in time take off and they'll be successful, we hope. Uh, but a lot of those smaller farms are efforts by an individual or a couple that might want to get into vegetable production or they have a small, you know, they're maybe a beekeeper. They can qualify as a farm under USDA standards. Um, but it's also not their primary source of income, clearly. And so it's kind of a, it's an overgrown hobby and we, we certainly support all the work that they're doing. But, um, they're also, because they don't have a lot in the game, so to speak, so those are many of the farms that are part of that five hundred. Uh, so fortunately, many of the, uh, more significant farming operations, the medium and larger farms are, tend to be a little more steady. Farming base here in our state. Um, unfortunately, some of them don't have a great succession plan in place for the next generation or for continuation of that farm. And some of that is related to the bottom line profitability, like Tracy mentioned. Uh, but those are some of the reasons that contribute to that, that. Alarmingly high number on the US, on the federal level from the USDA.
And is it reasonable to assume that of those five hundred that they're lost forever?
No, well, those individual farms might be, but others come in. And so those, especially those that were in that smaller category, like I mentioned, that might be sort of a. Looking at agriculture as maybe a retirement project or, uh, uh, you know, kind of a something for a spouse to do while the other spouse is working perhaps. Um, you know, and it's, it's sad when they go out, when it doesn't work for them, certainly. Um, but on the other hand, others see that as an opportunity and others come into the field. So, so it's not, it's not, uh. Oftentimes there is sort of a replacement going on there as well.
So the land isn't necessarily lost?
Well, no, a lot of it is, I mean, I don't know, I don't, again, we'd have to get back to the statistics, but, um, Yukon did a study and showed. The average yearly loss of productive acreage of productive farmland in Connecticut, lost to development. Or residential or commercial development, and it's alarming, uh, you know, but there's no easy answer for that. Uh, I mean, we have property rights, you own the land, you can do what you want with it. Um, but that is, that certainly is an alarming figure because we do lose a significant amount of agricultural productive land each year.
I'd just say, Madam Chair, that this is a question that I think goes beyond economics and it goes to. Our quality of life, it goes to our character as a state. I'm fortunate enough, uh, not a young person anymore to be able to be around. Not a lot of farms, but certainly part of my experience is to bring my daughter to farms so she could experience that. If we lose that, then I think we lose a lot as a state. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couldn't agree more. Seeing no further questions again. Thank you both for being with us.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Uh, next up, we have James Higgins.
All right. Good morning, everyone. Uh, thank you for allowing me to testify today in opposition of fourteen sixty. My name is James Higgins. I am the president and CEO of Skyline Financial Federal Credit Union. We're headquartered in Waterbury, Connecticut. We serve approximately three thousand seven hundred members out of the New Haven, Litchfield and Fairfield counties. Um, my credit union has been in its existence for ninety years this year, so it's definitely exciting as we were chartered in nineteen thirty five. Under the Federal Credit Union Act. Um, I'm here today to oppose the, uh, bill fourteen sixty mainly because of the interchange. Um, expense that would now actually get pushed on to the credit unions. And I think. Based on the testimonies that I heard today, there seems to be a misunderstanding of what exactly goes on in interchange. So I'd like to actually. Use this time to answer questions for that because prior to working in the credit union space, I was actually a salesperson for credit card processors. So I'll welcome any questions as it relates to that, but I did want to break down for the committee today and for, um, everyone who's in the audience behind me. When it comes to interchange, there is, uh, a number of different things that are on the bills as one of the, um. Merchants had actually showed you just in the, I think it was the first or second testimony. Those line items on those bills are exorbitant and it does seem like you need like a forensic degree just to understand them. And I don't disagree with that. There is a lot of details in those bills. What I do want everyone to understand though is the major players in this game such as Visa, Mastercard, American Express, Discover, they're the ones who are uh, actually making up the majority of that percentage rate. So for example, if a uh, person was to swipe their card at the gas pump and it costs two point five zero percent, probably two point four one of that two point five would actually go directly to Visa, Mastercard, whoever's holding it. Um, another major percentage would actually go to the vendor that's putting out that, um, I believe global payments was mentioned in that first testimony. That's who would take up the, the majority of the rest of that. A tiny little piece, which is approximately one-fifth of a cent, would go to the bank or the credit union on our end. Those dollars that we receive from it um, actually cover the losses for credit card and debit card claims that are made against the financial institution and we have to actually pick up the cost on those among running the program. So my credit union being about thirty-seven hundred total members, we have about seventeen hundred of them who have debit cards um, and another one thousand or so that have credit cards. It costs us approximately twenty-three thousand dollars per month in order to pay for that service uh, for those people to use those cards. Uh, with that, we also have losses that we have to write off uh, because of the fraudulent claims or disputes that are filed and that all falls onto the banks and credit unions. So I just wanted to share that information because I think it's a really major uh, proponent of what this is. And I would probably agree, I believe it was Representatives Zupkus that said it might be a federal level. I would agree with you on that as this is a national thing as it relates to the payment systems for Visa, uh, Mastercard and so on. So with that, uh, I'll take any questions um, because I, I don't think that this bill is going to actually help these small institutions that are here. Some of the large banks might be able to absorb the cost, no problem, but for our small institutions like mine, it's going to be very painful for us.
Thank you. A quick clarifying question, are you a state chartered or federally chartered institution?
Excellent question. So we are a federally chartered credit union and I would like to add that um, regardless of the charter, all credit unions are actually mandated uh, by the National Credit Union Administration uh, which uh, actually has the same regulations or most of the same regulations that you'll see at the FDIC for all the banks that are uh, possibly in the room or in the state as well.
Thank you. And I think Representative Zupkus may have mentioned this before, but there is a court case which at its current iteration exempts in the Illinois, uh, which has passed similar legislation, has exempted federally chartered institutions from that law. So I know it's still proceeding. Representative Zupkus, did you, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for coming um, and thank you for being in Waterbury.
Yes.
So could you just go back and um, repeat please? You were talking about the charges and what percent goes to Chase, Discover?
Sure.
All of that and what actually goes to the credit union?
Yeah, so approximately a fifth of a penny, um, or in other words, uh, one basis point of that. I gave an example of two point five percent. So basically that one would go uh, to us, two point four nine percent goes to the remaining players in the game, which would be Visa, Mastercard, who's taking up the majority of it. And then whatever the processor is that the merchant signs the contract with, uh, they'll be recouping the remaining eight to seventeen or whatever number that they're actually charging.
Thank you. And if I may, just one more question. And so um, transparency was brought up by our good chair here before. Um, and you mentioned they're hard to decipher, all of those things. So is there anything, because I still believe this is a federal issue, but um, until I can be convinced otherwise, but I just can't see how it is. Um, but could you please, um, oh, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, well, I just lost. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No worries. Uh, Representative Yakarina.
Thank you for being here and I was just reading through the bill and uh, besides the merch, besides the credit card, uh, credit unions or the processing, I would think it's a nightmare logistically for a merchant. I'm a, I have a retail business in my, I have a Clover and uh, I know this bill's come in front of us in the past and my, I spoke to my accountant about it and I do a lot of my, some of my paperwork, he does the rest. I think it's a logistic nightmare because we get returns, I do wholesale, I do retail. Um, the money is transferred, you know, one to two days, sometimes three days. Uh, I, I can't see this possibly working unless there's some amazing software.
So I would agree with you. There are um, softwares available that merchants can purchase at a cost, right? The, the last thing the merchant wants is another expense on their end and I don't disagree with them. Uh, one thing I would like to add though to your comment, um, as you start putting more information through those payment rails, then it also is a burden on the um, incidents that where there could be uh, risk as it relates to um, breaches of data. And if you start transmitting more data across those lines, who's going to be held liable for it? And you know, it just opens up a bunch of questions um, from my end of, of where the regulation and who's going to be held accountable for it.
I agree. And then if you get a return, sorry, I do a five thousand dollar sale and then I have its return, then you have to go back and do everything over. I just, I think it's a logistic nightmare. I don't see how it works. Uh, I don't know any other states do this, but I, I would think this is uh, I don't see that. I, I really don't look at the upside of this at all. And you know, I'm, I'm not a credit union, I'm not a bank, but I am a merchant and I think it's a logistic nightmare.
I agree with you.
So th- thank you, thank you for being there.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Zupkus for the second half of the first time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a blonde moment there. Um, transparency, that's what I was talking about. So what, do you have any suggestions on how to make it, maybe make it a little easier to decipher or to help out a, a merchant, a smaller merchant?
Yes, so shameless plug, turn to your credit unions, um, of course. So one thing to know is uh, all credit unions are not-for-profit institutions. All of the board members are volunteers and we do not have any paid members of uh, like shareholders or anything like that. So everything that the credit unions will do will be extremely transparent. Um, my credit union in particular is one of the few that actually offers payment card services uh, for its membership. So those members, uh, the, the merchants that are in our communities can take advantage of that. And our uh, statements are not thirty-eight pages long with hundreds and hundreds of line items. It's very clear and broken down. Um, and there's also ways that uh, you can meet with any person at a credit union, of course, especially mine, where we can go through that statement and explain those line items. Um, but I, I believe one of them uh, that was mentioned was a, a series of letters. And actually, as she was saying that, I'm like, I don't even know that one. So of course, we'd have to look it up. Um, but the biggest difference though is there's a number of um, ISOs that will work on behalf of the major uh, uh, credit card processing companies. Most of the payments go through a company called BuyServe or Chase Payment Tech. Those are basically a hundred percent, I shouldn't say a hundred, probably ninety-nine percent of all payments that happen across the country and worldwide. So at one point, it's going through those rails and a lot of those charges come um, from there. But that is something that, you know, I can help anybody out with if they pop into the credit union, if you're nearby Waterbury.
Great, thank you. And I do, I like my credit union.
I love that.
It's not yours, unfortunately, but I do like it. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Representative. Do you know further questions? Thanks for being with us.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Next up, we have Jason Williams.
Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chairs Horn from FAR, ranking members Paletta, Fazio and other honorable members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Jason Williams and I work in the Tax Department for RTX Corporation here in Connecticut. I would like to thank the co-chairs and the members of the Finance Committee in allowing me to appear today in support of raise bill seven one seven six, in particular, section three regarding exemption for certain joint ventures. Section twelve, four one two, subsection fifty-eight of the sales tax law currently provides an exemption for certain services, personnel services, marketing, R and D, business management services provided by joint participants to a joint venture. The current law requires that joint venture be involved in development, production, marketing or support of new product, new products or systems that have been actively engaged in business in Connecticut for at least ten years. The exemption is permitted for twenty years with a forty-year term available only for joint ventures in existence since January nineteen eighty-six within the aircraft industry. The aerospace industry often functions through joint ventures due to the high capital cost and risk involved in a single company undertaking a massive multi-year investment such as a new engine program. Pratt Whitney is a partner in such a joint venture called IAE International or Aero Engines or IAE, which was a joint venture for whom the initial exemption and current forty-year term applies. IAE is a mult- multinational collaboration between Pratt Whitney and several international partners. It's headquartered in East Hartford, Connecticut and design and produces and supports the V-two-five-hundred family of aircraft engines. Many of you have flown out of Bradley, you've probably flown in JetBlue. That's one of the uh, the family of engines, of the family of aircraft that this engine uh, supports. Nearly eight thousand engines have been delivered to approximately a hundred and ninety airlines and lessors of seventy countries. IAE's collaboration and agreement between its partners has been extended through twenty forty-five. While IAE maintains its own offices and staff here in Connecticut, each of its partner companies provides various services to the joint venture, leveraging the extensive industry experience of the partner companies through existing staff. These services can include management services, personnel, R and D, et cetera. These services from Pratt Whitney are provided by its employees working primarily here in Connecticut. Bill seven one seven six extends the term of the applicable exemption for IAE by ten years. IAE continues to be a leading aerospace business with a vibrant future. We respectfully request your support for this extension and maintaining a competitive tax environment here in Connecticut. Connecticut's sales tax is potentially applicable to these partner services only because IAE is headquartered in East Hartford. Very few US states, including none of our neighboring states, taxed, impose sales tax on these services. In closing, this bill represents a confirmation of the economic development policy underlying the original enactment, namely an incentive to locate such significant, long-term industrial joint ventures within Connecticut and avoid uncompetitive tax costs that would not exist in other locations. The ability to locate the joint.
You're at the three minutes, please summarize.
Yep. The ability to locate the joint venture within Connecticut also provides key synergies and interaction only with Pratt Whitney. Thank you very much for your time and consideration. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Uh, as you know, what we are proposing here is, is an extension of a current um, uh, exemption. And do you know when we first created this?
I believe it was first enacted in nineteen eighty-six. Well, yeah.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thanks for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Senator Fonthera, Representative Horn, Representative Paletta, Senator Fazio. My name is James Doherty. I'm here on behalf of the Connecticut Bar Association to testify in strong support of bill seven one seven seven and act concerning the estate tax filing deadline. I'd like to break my testimony down to explain what problem that this is solving, uh, how Connecticut is kind of the outlier on this issue and how this, this bill will fix that. So when people hear estate tax, they often think wealthy individuals. In many jurisdictions that have an estate tax, that's the case, that you're only having to file an estate tax return if you do have a great deal of wealth. Connecticut's not that. Every single estate, regardless of value, is required to file an estate tax return. So this means for, you know, any individual, they have to gather a lot of information uh, about a decedent. They may not readily know this information. They not, may not readily be able to search for this information until they're appointed as the executor by a probate court. Even once they identify the assets, how do you value them? That takes time. Things like cash is easy, but what if you have a family farm, a company, real estate? That takes additional time. And in Connecticut, our, with our current filing deadline of six months, simply there is not enough time, which means basically every estate is having to request an extension. So we have a system where the extension is really the rule, not, not the exception. In addition to the filing deadline, there's the payment deadline. This does only apply to states of high net worth. Uh, however, a larger state doesn't mean it's a liquid estate. And again, if you have an executor who's not even getting appointed till three, four, or five months after uh, the death of a decedent, coming up with a check to pay in a state tax bill only six months after date of death uh, is, can be a real challenge. Connecticut is the outlier in this. There are twelve other uh, states, uh, sorry, there are twelve states and District Columbia imposing the state tax. All the other states, it's a nine-month filing deadline. That's also what the federal government is. There are six other states that impose an inheritance tax, a different type of tax imposed at death. Their deadlines are also longer. This became an issue in two thousand nine with the legislature changed the Connecticut deadline from nine months to six months, the fill a short budget gap. This three-month shift of income from one year to another year created a lot of problems for thousands of families of all net worth over the past sixteen years. This bill will go ahead and, and fix that situation. So I would strongly encourage the committee to move this proposal forward uh, which would provide relief to all families as early as this year. I'm happy to take any questions on, on this issue.
Thank you. I, I have one quick question. We have, um, there was some testimony uh, submitted in opposition from the probate courts just noting that this, what this could do to their funding. I wonder whether you had a position on that.
I do. So uh, just so everyone knows, this is a proposal that has been put forward uh, by Governor Lamont, by Department of Revenue Services, by the Bar Association and done so in coordination with uh, the Office of the Probate Court Administrator. What they are pointing out is accurate, but I think has to be put in a bit more context. It is true, our probate courts heavily rely on the fee under forty-five A dash one oh seven. That fee though is not due six months after date of death, is due whenever the return is filed. So if you're filing an extension, that's when the payment's going to become due. So for larger states, which uh, I think for purpose of the probate fee is best defines estates about over eight point seven seven million, those are the ones that pay a forty thousand dollar court fee. Even if they don't use the courts, they have to pay this. Under current law, they have a six-month deadline to file, but they can get a nine-month extension. So that's fifteen months. What this proposal would do would make the deadline nine months with a six-month extension, still fifteen months. So for those larger estates, I don't agree with the uh, their position that's going to create a shift. I do think for some of the smaller states, because smaller states, you do six months after with only a six-month extension. Yes, for those smaller states, there is going to be a three-month shift from one to the next. As a practitioner before the courts, they definitely need the funding uh, and should be looked at. However, when we look at what this has caused problems for uh, for really practitioners, families, the Department of Revenue Service dealing with, with all these extension requests, I do think the uh, the benefits outweigh, outweigh the cost there.
Thank you. Representative Hens.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And um, just some questions in regards to the whole system. Um, is, in your opinion, could we do something about putting in some kind of threshold on the level of a state that needs to go through this process? And question number two kind of is a follow-up is that um, I'm actually talking to somebody right now who's had issues with just knowing how to go through the whole thing in, in the first place and where they go and, and where that information is available for them to start the process. Um, and so is, is there recommendations that you might give as somebody who's dealing with the system all the time? Is to how do we educate or how do you learn how to go through this process when the eventuality of the family member's death is before you and now you have to do all this? Like, how do we fix that?
Absolutely. It is overwhelming and it, as just the world's become more complicated, it's becoming more overwhelming for families. There's a lot of attempts to try to fix it. I think the bar is doing a lot trying to educate people about it. We're desperately trying to get more people into the profession because there are not nearly enough attorneys that'll handle. And I also want to give a lot of credit to our probate courts because I practice in, my firm practices in various jurisdictions. Our courts go above and beyond uh, throughout the state trying to help educate people uh, with it. But there is, there is more to do there. On the issue of how do we save families from this, right? Because filling out an estate tax return, and, and I mentioned this in my testimony, there are two types of estate tax returns, a more complex one for the larger states and I'll put in quotes, a simplified one uh, for less complicated states. In quotes, because you still generally need a tax practitioner to help you out, complete these forms, even for very, very modest estates. The issue we have in Connecticut that makes us different than elsewhere. So for example, I practice in New York. If you do a filing there just to get the estate taxing off your property and you're a small state, it's a one-page affidavit. Where the executor is just certifying, we don't meet the threshold, we don't owe the tax under penalties of perjury. The problem in Connecticut is, that makes us different, is how our probate courts are funded. So in New York, for example, it doesn't matter if you have a billion-dollar estate, the maximum court fee you're paying is one thousand two hundred fifty dollars. Connecticut, our maximum fee is forty thousand dollars for estates over that eight point seven million dollars. The only way the courts can calculate the fee is if they get the estate tax return because the probate court fee isn't just imposed on probate assets. You may have an estate that doesn't have a single dollar probate asset, say it's all a retirement account. You're still paying a probate fee. So you have to entirely restructure the fee system or really reduce the paperwork and kind of take that fee that under penalties of perjury, you're not filling out a complicated form so that this fee can be assessed. So it, it's a bigger root issue. So it's a bigger root issue. If we can't just fix something on the tax level, it does go to, and I do understand that the testimony of the Office of the Probate Court Administrator put in, it does hit them in their bottom line, and they do so much service for our communities, not just with decedents' estates, but dealing with minors and capacitated individuals. So you have to look at that general funding. I do think that's something the Bar Association would support. Because it is tough that if you have an estate, a dollar doesn't go through probate, everything goes to the surviving spouse. You can still have a probate fee in the tens of thousands of dollars. So I understand the frustration that people have with that system.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Clarissa Dietrich.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here today. I just want you to go over that one part you said, if your estate is above, I think you said eight point seven million, and you do not go through the probate court, you still have to pay the forty thousand?
Correct. So the way that the probate fee is structured under forty-five A dash one oh seven is that the fee is based on the highest of the inventory, the gross estate, which is basically your total net worth. It's not even your net worth, it's all your assets, forget about the liabilities, or your taxable estate, which is your net worth, but counts lifetime gifts you made. So it's possible to not go through the probate system at all. And the way this happens is those larger states, when you file a tax return, you always have to send a copy to the probate court. When they receive it, they go ahead and they generate the fee. And this is something not in their discretion. That's that's what the statute sets out. I can't verify the Office of Probate Court Administrator's numbers because I just don't have the same access to them. But I think her testimony says it's about seventy-five percent of their their fees. So you can have very large estates or even modest estates that are just going outright to surviving spouse, and you are getting charged with with that fee. It's often a surprise to people that they know most people have heard about in estate tax. Most people have not heard about the decedent's fee under forty-five A dash one oh seven.
And do you know of any other states that do that charge that forty thousand?
No, I do think we are the highest. A lot of states do charge a prorated fee. So, for example, New York's the one I'm most familiar with. It's once you're over like five hundred thousand dollars, you're paying the one thousand two hundred fifty, but it's not as high as it was. For many years, the highest fee was twelve thousand. It was like twelve thousand five hundred dollars. Then it was changed to unlimited. So I had one estate where the probate fee was over a hundred fifty thousand dollars with no probate assets. The cap has been changed to forty thousand dollars. So I do think this is something worth looking at, especially when a lot of the time that the probate courts spend, it's on conservatorships. It's not so much on the decedent's estate side and something that is deserving of taxpayer dollars.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, thanks for being here.
Great. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Horn. Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My name is Brian Yates, and I represent the Electronic Transactions Association, whose members include leading payments and fintech companies that partner with retailers, restaurants, and small businesses to facilitate secure and efficient electronic payments. I'm here today to respectfully oppose Senate Bill fourteen sixty, which seeks to prohibit payment card networks from including sales and use taxes in the amount on which interchange fees are imposed. While we recognize the intent behind this legislation, we do have significant concerns regarding its impact on Connecticut business, consumers, and the global payment ecosystem. This legislation would create unnecessary regulatory burdens and introduce substantial compliance costs for small business. Electronic payments are essential to business operations, enabling merchants to serve more customers while reducing the risk associated with handling cash. Consumers using credit cards actually spend twelve to eighteen percent more than they do with cash, benefiting merchants through increased sales, fraud protection, and faster transactions. This bill creates a disproportionate regulatory burden on small business while handling handing significant savings to large, big-box retailers. Additionally, small businesses will bear the cost of compliance, including system upgrades or replacements, operational complexities, and potential fee increases from banks and card issuers negating any perceived benefits from this bill. This bill is also likely preempted by federal law. This bill mirrors provisions of a similar law that was passed at the end of session in Illinois, which recently was preempted by a U.S. District Court ruling due to conflicts with the National Bank Act. The court cited the Quintero versus Bank of America federal court decision, which reinforced that state laws interfering with national banking operations are federally preempted. Large national and out-of-state charter banks will continue to have the full legal authority to collect interchange fees on taxes, regardless of this bill's provisions. This means that while state-chartered institutions would be subject to these restrictions, large national banks would retain a competitive advantage for their undermining Connecticut's local financial institutions. The Office of the Comptroller of the Currency, better known as E O C C, has already opposed similar legislation, calling it ill-conceived, highly unusual, and largely unworkable. If Connecticut enacts this bill, it would face legal challenges and cost taxpayer dollars to defend. Because of federal preemption, this bill unfairly discriminates against Connecticut banks and credit unions. Large federally chartered banks, such as Bank of America, J P Morgan Chase, and Wells Fargo, which collect the vast majority of interchange fees, would be exempt from this bill. Ninety percent of payment transactions would remain unaffected as they are processed by large national banks. Meanwhile, this bill would only apply to Connecticut-chartered banks and credit unions, which only process around ten percent of transactions. This places Connecticut-based financial institutions at a competitive disadvantage, ultimately leading to fewer banking options and higher fees. As a former Missouri legislator, I know firsthand how well-intended bills can sometime sometimes create unintended consequences. This legislation will hurt small business, impose unfair burdens on local banks, violate state and federal law, and invite costly litigation. For these reasons, I respectfully urge you to oppose Senate Bill fourteen sixty. Thank you for your time and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Questions for Mr. Yates? Representative Constantine?
Hi, Mr. Yates. Thank you so much for testifying and edifying us on your side of the business. You heard the previous people talk about transparency. Representatives Upkus also spoke about it. Do you have any suggestions regarding more transparency on the bills for small retailers to kind of make their lives easier?
Yes, thank you for that question. The payment processing industry is highly competitive. Often, these processors are out competing for business with small business retailers and others. They will hear from many solicitations. So what I would advise is, is just as we heard from the prior testimonies, really to 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 reach out and find those competitive businesses, like the prior witness found a better opportunity for to work with a processor that was a little bit more transparent at a lower fee. It's a highly competitive industry, so I would suggest just going out there in the private space and trying to find a better processor to work with that's more transparent.
And again, thank you, Mr. Chair. For those of us, you know, may not know banking as well as you do, would you be able to explain, like, who's actually in charge of sending out those statements? Is it the larger manufacturer, the larger banking? Is it their system? Is it the credit union?
Yeah, the the payment processor works directly with the merchant. Yeah.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope Chavez?
Hello, thank you for making the time today, esteemed members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Hope Chavez, and I'm the Executive Director at the Arts Council of Greater New Haven. We are a state-designated regional service organization, and we support the arts ecosystem of a sixteen-town region across southern Connecticut. Greater New Haven alone is home to over five thousand creative businesses, generating more than eight million dollars in state tax revenue annually and employing thousands of artists, administrators, craftspeople, and cultural workers. These individuals and institutions don't just enhance our quality of life, but they're the bedrock of Connecticut's economy and helped us grow economically during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Statewide, the arts and culture sector contributes a staggering thirteen billion dollars to Connecticut's economy. We're the second-largest contributor to the state's GDP, but Connecticut actually ranks among the lowest in New England in per capita public investment in the arts. That disparity puts our creative economy at risk, especially as we face federal funding priority shifts. So that's why I'm here today in support of H B seven one seven six and its proposed allocation of the meals and beverage tax revenue to the Connecticut Cultural Fund. And I have to say candidly, I provide testimony often, but it's often not with so much excitement and, dare I say, joy. This session, we've had several bills put forward to address the potential gaps in federal funding by allocating various state revenue sources for arts and culture. But none of them have had the potential to go beyond mitigation and actually set a legacy and be a catalyst for true sustainability like H B seven one seven six. It is a smart and strategic reinvestment that recognizes the interconnected nature of our economy. In the most recent American for the Arts study, they told us that every dollar spent on arts and culture in Connecticut turns seven dollars into local businesses, restaurants, shops, so much more. This is kind of intuitive because, of course, if you buy a ticket to the Wadsworth, you go to the culturally lit book festival, you pay for parking at a parking garage, you have a dinner reservation, or maybe you stop through a town and shop at the local boutiques. But this this impact cannot be overemphasized. Investing in culture means investing in small business, in job growth, in economic vitality. And by passing H B seven one seven six, you'll demonstrate to the residents and entrepreneurs and businesses alike that you understand why people choose to live here, why they create here, and why our cultural economy is essential to the state's future, and, dare I say, why they should make it here. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Questions? Representative Raider?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hope, it's good to see you.
Good to see you.
The unique opportunity to catch up with you and meet you just this last week. Could you speak to, in terms of, you know, in full disclosure, I'm an arts kid, studied architecture. I wholly believe in what you do and the impact it has on our state and our communities and our economy. But can you explain, have there been any identified hardships you've seen over the last few years in the arts communities? And how would this, how do you directly see this benefiting and impacting the arts community? Thank you.
Yeah, I've I've been in this role for a year and a half, but the Arts Council of Greater New Haven has existed for sixty-one years. And the top two requests that come our way are space and funding. And space, I mean, to perform in, to rehearse in, to use for studios, et cetera. And these are primarily economic challenges that have to do with capital and investment. I spent the first ten years of my career in New York, and certainly it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but we have many neighboring states across New England that have some kind of philanthropic engine that's really committed to arts and culture. In our state, we don't have an external philanthropic institution that does that exclusively. Most of our artists go to Connecticut Office of Humanities, Office of the Arts, and Tourism to get those funds. And right now, again, that per capita investment is just really low. So this bill, I think, does two things. One, we expect that the Office of Arts and the Office of Humanities to face some cuts. They get significant funding from the N E A and the N E H. So as changes happen there, they could suffer. So this might help mitigate that. But the allocation in this bill specifically, as opposed to some others that are put forward, is a really high percentage that ensures not only can we, like, navigate the change that might come from that, but also invest, really invest, and continue to be a catalyst as for the economic development.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
And up next, we have Senator Derek Slapp and Scott Dolch to be joining him. And while they're on their way up, I just want to recognize my colleague, Senator John Kissel, who I don't know if we've ever served on a committee before in our hundred and forty years being in this assembly. But it's it's an honor to have you on this committee, Senator. Please proceed, Senator.
Great. Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Fonfera, and good afternoon to both the chairs and the ranking members. My name's Derek Slapp, State Senator from the Fifth State Senate District, here to testify on Senate Bill sixteen forty, an act concerning interchange fees on electric payment transactions. And I'm here, as was mentioned, with Scott Dolch, the President of the Connecticut Restaurant Association and a constituent of mine who operates a small business in the town of West Hartford and can talk about the impact that this bill and this issue has on small businesses across the state. So I'm going to, I'm going to hand it off to to Scott and Gracie for for more detail.
So obviously, I've submitted testimony, but I think it's best, I'd love to have Gracia read her testimony first, if possible. I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of the industry, but Gracia, floor is yours.
Thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Gracia Ludena. I am the co-owner of Cora Cora, an independent, small, and family-owned business restaurant in West Hartford. I come before you today to support the Senate Bill one four six zero, an act concerning interchange fees on electronic payment transactions. My parents moved from Cora Cora, Peru in the early two thousands and decided to pursue the American dream in two thousand and eleven by opening a Peruvian restaurant in West Hartford. Our goal each and every day is to serve authentic Peruvian cuisine with love, which has made us different than the state. Now, almost fifteen years later, my sister Macarena, she is the executive chef, and I run the front-of-house operations and also the leadership of the full restaurant. The restaurant has seen a lot of success in the recent years with accolades like being a semifinalist for Best Chef Northeast and also outstanding restaurant by the James Beard Foundation four years in a row. And in twenty twenty-three, we won Best Restaurant in the State by the crazies. We are very fortunate to have all these accolades and achievements, and we are really looking to expand. We are hopefully hope to open a new location in Blue Buck Square. However, even with some of this success, it's still very difficult to maintain a successful and profitable business in the restaurant industry. I'm here today to say that the current system for the interchange fees on sales tax is a collective, it's an added burden to my family's business. These fees are imposed by the credit card companies and the processor each time a customer makes a purchase, including the portion of that transaction that covers the sales tax. Well, it might not seem like a huge number over time. These fees add up. For Cora Cora, for example, this means that every month, an extra fee on top of the sales tax I collect for the state of Connecticut. I'm sorry, I lost this. I collect for the directly, oh, as more of the fees go directly to the credit card companies. In fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Cora Cora paid nearly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in sales and use tax to the state of Connecticut. So this could have been a savings of more than five thousand dollars back to my business. And we understand, as the cost of businesses keep rising, eliminating this unnecessary fee will provide immediate financial relief to my restaurant and to many small businesses in the state. By supporting S B one four six zero, Connecticut will definitely help small, family-owned businesses like mine and will allow us to reinvest that savings directly into improving our businesses. This will contribute to the local economy and also help create more jobs and in our communities. I strongly urge you to consider the positive impact this bill will have on restaurants and small businesses and, of course, the people of Connecticut. Eliminating these interchange fees will be a step toward supporting local businesses and ensuring that we can continue to thrive. Thank you for your time, and we will welcome any specific questions.
Yeah, I obviously I've submitted testimony, as you guys know, and thank you, Gracia. That was important to to put real numbers and a real look of of dollars that can be saved for businesses in our state, not just restaurants, but all merchants. When we're looking at, you know, we aren't up here today saying with the the networks, you know, and the bank.
You're at the five minutes, please summarize.
We're just up here today to say that they shouldn't be paying fees to collect the state's sales tax. Businesses should not have to do that. We hope that this piece of legislation can go through, and we're happy to answer any specific questions from the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Paletta. Thank you for all three of you for being here and for your advocacy. I think that, you know, as I mentioned just a little while ago, there's been a lot of topic. This has been a hot topic of discussion for a number of years. And I just, again, in the essence of transparency, fleshing out the details, one of the questions I've asked consistently is what could the savings mean for your establishment? What what are we looking for at in terms of dollars, savings at, let's say, the end of the year, if this were to pass?
Oh, yeah, definitely. For example, right now, we're looking to open a new location in Blue Buck Square. We are a family-owned business. Going to into that location, it is one, a lot of money on rent. Now it's a bigger location and we have to hire. Now it's a bigger location and we have to hire more people to run the restaurant. We are considered one of the best restaurants in that country. And in order to do that, we need a lot of labor to do that. We need servers, we need cooks. And sometimes it just, the minimum wage is really high in Connecticut. And with that money, we can definitely give them a better opportunity for them to have a higher income perhaps. A lot of our people that work in our restaurant are people from different countries in Latin America, not just Americans. So we are giving them an opportunity to keep going and for them to have their American dream come true like with it.
Mr. Dolch, maybe you can just expound on the average savings, maybe?
So the the total impact that we've gotten, and there'll be some other experts in the National Restaurant Association and some partners that are going to give you numbers, but it's about a hundred, a little over a hundred and ten million dollars that our state specifically is paying on interchange fees for sales tax collection. That number obviously continues to grow, as you guys know, that in our industry. So, you know, for Cora Cora, it could be a five to six thousand dollar savings every year of of fees that we don't feel that we should have to pay. We, again, we're going back on the purpose that we understand the networks and the cards. We understand the world we live in today with the amount of use of credit cards, Apple Pay, everything. We just asking as as merchants and businesses should not also have to pay an additional fee to bring in sales tax and have to go through the DRS. And those numbers are clear. We know those, you know, and I'm happy to. I hope that makes a little more sense about, so real dollars, five thousand to six thousand dollars for one restaurant. We have ninety one hundred locations in the state. So, you know, I I think it would make a real impact.
You're saying five thousand yearly, annual?
Five thousand, at least five thousand annually, just at Cora Cora's, you know, and it really depends on, you know, the amount of sales tax, amount of revenue. You know, she's, I think her restaurant is a little over three million that she's bringing in a year in revenue. But the state sales tax is a quarter of a million dollars as one location in West Hartford is going back to the state.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Representative Yaccarino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for being here, Scott. I have a retail business and I do quite a bit of business. How how would I save money? I just did a sale last week to a person that paid sales tax. It was one sale over fifty four hundred dollars. It was a miss, it was an error. We have to redo the whole thing over. He changed his mind. So how do I get, recapture that money back?
Sure. No, Representative, I listened to other testimony in here as well today and to kind of talk about, you know, the, this is about the networks, not so much the banks, not even really the credit card. These are the networks that are setting the network that you work, you work with. All they're doing is, you know, they they can on the front end either eliminate. So I'll give an example in a restaurant example. You go out to eat and it's a hundred dollar check. You know, for, if I go to Cora Cora for lunch with Senator Slapp, it's a hundred dollar check. She's not paying the two percent on a hundred dollars. She's paying two percent on a hundred and seven thirty five. So she's paying additionally to collect the sales tax. So realistically, we're asking the networks to take out that first part and just pay the two percent on the hundred dollars, and then the sales tax wouldn't be added. If they're saying that it's difficult to do, then it could be a reimbursement. Every month, every single business knows what you're paying in sales tax collection to the state and really could just be a multiple, and it could be a reimbursement back or off of what they're already paying. I think there's ways to do this. I think, you know, saying that the technology piece or, you know, that it would it would add extra burden. I actually don't believe that. I know that, you know, another example to everyone here is, you know, and I brought it up last year. You know, we have two states very close to us in New Hampshire and Delaware that do not have sales tax. And they have restaurants. They've got credit unions. They've got banks. They've got card networks. There's no added fees. They they fraud protection. All these arguments that are being made on the other side of the opposition of this bill are still happening. They're protecting those restaurants in New Hampshire, Delaware. They need to be doing the same in West in in West Hartford and around Connecticut, and I think that this can be done. And why should there be a fee on the tax? That's my only question. So I hope that makes sense, Representative.
I I obviously I agree, you know, it costs me a lot of money every year. It costs a lot of people a lot of money. I just, if there was a way logistically to do it, I think it'd be great, and I'd love to get to that point. I just, I don't know if we have software or, you know, our accounting methods, but I appreciate your testimony and I'll continue to listen. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Representative Barry?
Thank you all for being here. Gracie, you definitely have one of the best restaurants in America. Scott, the restaurants, did they notice increased charges when the sales tax went from six point three five to seven point three five?
Yeah, it's actually formally in my testimony, but, you know, there is another bill that I'm I'm supportive of today. I know that it come here on seven one seven six, about the one percent. There's a one percent meals and beverage tax in the state of Connecticut, as you guys know, that's generated over four hundred and fifteen million dollars. Just putting that in perspective, the state received an extra hundred and seven million dollars last year because of the one percent. Also, all of those restaurants had to pay fees on that hundred and seven. So if we just take a round number of two percent, an additional two million dollars went back to these networks because our state, you know, added this one percent. So the one percent plays a role because of seven point three five versus six point three five. Again, just continuing to, you know, obviously would love to see tourism dollars and support and seven one seven six. But also with this, this is an additional fees that are going not in the in the hands. And the last piece of this too, to understand is, it's not revenue, it's sales tax collection. So realistically, there's no revenue to offset these fees for collecting the sales tax. So, you know, that that is another piece to this whole conversation of, we aren't against talking to the networks. Like people brought up that there's better processors. That's our job at the association is to help these businesses. But I don't believe it has anything to do with collecting sales tax and being charged to a merchant, not just a restaurant, a package store, any other business in the state.
Representative Wood? You're good. Representative Piscopo?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. I welcome my friend and colleague Senator Slapp there and your guest. And Scott, while you're here, I just wanted to, I I think it's important that I get the Restaurant Association on this. The one percent fee being directed, what is it? Fourteen sixty? No, seventeen seventy, seventy one seventy six, the other bill that you were testifying on. I see it as a, that one percent surcharge on the sales tax that they just, that they just imposed on restaurants, right? It was right after the pandemic when you could, when you were just getting back on your feet, and it just didn't seem fair to me. So I think I've tried in this committee to repeal that tax so that it wouldn't, you wouldn't have that imposed on you. Isn't that a better way to do it instead of taking that one percent and applying it to the good, of course, the real good things that wants, they're going to do with it? And that, but that's how they get you, you know, it's an unfair tax. We should be working to repeal that tax and not entice you with a real good, good expenditure or something. Can I, can I get the Restaurant Association just?
Sure. Sure, Representative, so that actually tax was added right before COVID in twenty nineteen. It's been five years. I'd said before, it's generated over four hundred and fifteen million dollars to the state. There was talk about it going back to cities and towns specifically for how they generated the one percent. You know, I I'm always open to a discussion whether to repeal it. But at the same time, I also, you know, I'm up here today supporting this other piece of legislation because it puts fifty percent back into tourism marketing and support where, you know, as as I've said to the the governor's team and all legislators here, I know we're looking to cut tourism from twelve million. It's now at seven and a half, and it's going to go down to four and a half million on July first. It's extremely disappointing. I've been up here in front saying, for every one dollar you put into tourism in the state, it returns eight dollars. It's obviously factual data. Why are we stopping to invest? I was at a ribbon cutting in downtown Hartford on Tuesday with the foundry. And Hartford Steam Boiler invested more than the state is going to be investing in tourism to open a restaurant in the city. So those are, those are my frustrations, obviously, whether it's repealed or not, but it's also a revenue side that we've been generating. Shouldn't those dollars go back to helping the towns? Like obviously, the hospitality hospitality plan, and I know that Senator Slapp actually supports this very much so. We we had a great press conference where we talked about a hospitality fund where fifty percent of this one percent would go back to the cities, thirty percent to tourism, and twenty percent to workforce and hospitality. So if we're not going to repeal it, at least reinvest it in the industry that's generating it, I guess, would be my statement from the association. And I appreciate all those that put this bill forward in this committee, continuing to talk about it because I think it is extremely important that we we should not be on July first looking at a four and a half million dollar tourism budget. Because I think we're going to have, we've already seen extreme repercussions of cutting the budget. I think the last, we're down two hundred and twenty thousand visitors to CT visit in the first part of the year. People aren't going to our site to find places to travel and come into our state. We need to change that. So I appreciate the question. Always happy to talk about it, but I'm hopeful that we can find a solution in the budget negotiations this year to reinvest in tourism and hopefully reinvest back into the municipalities as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Representative Zupkis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for coming. I apologize I missed your testimony. But I have a question regarding bill number fourteen sixty and the interchange fees.
Sure.
Um, how would you, I'm still believing it's a federal issue. But if we looked at Connecticut sales tax, right, how would you divide that out? How would you, how would restaurants, you know, liquor stores, how would they have not pay the interchange fees on Connecticut tax for Connecticut banks, but not for like a Visa? How how, it seems very complicated to me.
No, it's, Representative, I appreciate the question, and I'm happy to answer it. So understand that, you know, this isn't a federal issue. Federal, we are dealing with the Credit Card Competition Act. We are trying to create. There's a duopoly, you know, with Mastercard and Visa. We are trying to work with the National Restaurant Association to add more other companies into the into the place, into the country of having our merchants have better rates. But this isn't about that. This is why I feel it is a state issue because this is working with the, the way that this bill is written, which is also different than Illinois' bill, is this is, this is looking at the networks, not the banks, not even the credit card companies. The networks would have to either on the front end eliminate the fee in state Connecticut, if you're within the the fee, or on the back end reimburse it. So the networks that they work with, whether, you know, as they all have POS systems, you can go in, you can quickly run a report. They know what they're paying the DRS and the state every month. If they're not paying it on time, they're fined, penalized. They know, and they can quickly run that report. It's hard for me to believe that technology can't be, you know, we we know, and there's going to be people that are going to, you know, testify from the National Restaurant Association because this isn't just a Connecticut thing. This is, there's, there's bill in thirty other states. Obviously, Illinois passed it. One of the questions last year is, you know, let's see if another, a state did pass it. And Florida, it's not a blue or red state issue. It's around the country. These states are out there because they all have different sales tax. They, some don't have sales tax at all, some do, but in Connecticut, we do have one. We have a six point three five, and we also have a seven point three five for restaurants. All we're doing is telling the networks that they can't charge fees on that in Connecticut. If you want to go across the Massachusetts, you know, that's, we we don't have that jurisdiction, but in the state of Connecticut, we're hoping that they would eliminate the fees on collecting sales tax.
And you don't think it would be, you think it could be easily done just in Connecticut, but not in another state? I mean.
I I do. Obviously, you're going to have people come up here and saying, oh, there's new technology or things that need to be done, but everything's there. The data is there. You, there's other things that happen with nonprofit credit cards and other cards and chargebacks. There's things on there that that, you know, you can go and pay right now as a nonprofit, and they take off sales tax before you make that payment. So why, then you can also not add the fees to to you buying, you know, for the business? So I think there's ways that it can be done, and if they say it's too hard in real time, that's okay. Reimburse it every month or even annually. Reimburse that five thousand dollars back to Gracia because, you know, we know what that number is. She ran a report through her POS system that showed how much she paid, what her fees were, and what she paid in sales tax. So it's hard for me to believe that neither one of those options can be done. And I'm hopeful that the committee believes and continues to ask those same questions. And and, you know, I think this would be a huge win for for small businesses in Connecticut.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Question for Gracia. What percentage of your customers pay by cash?
Not even five percent.
What?
Not even five percent. It's a lot of.
Bet you like those five percenters, though.
Yes, we really do. But we're still paying, you know, the fees with the credit card. Apple Pay has become like the most usual ways to pay. Our restaurant is located in a used former McDonald's building. We use the drive-through now for take orders. So we have the handful device. People come to the window and they just want to pay with the with the phone. They just want to tap it and go, which is convenient for me as a business owner because I can sell food every now and then, which is super fast. But if I take cash, I have to give them the change, do the math and all of it, but people rather use their phone. So ninety percent of sales are just credit cards.
You sort of answered my next question, but I guess it would not be advantageous for you, or maybe I should just ask it without the negative. Would it be advantageous if you had a cash, much like a gas station, right, has a cash and a credit? Would it, would it benefit you if you offered a separate price for your service by by charging cash for those who would pay in cash versus credit card?
I've seen that, I think, in New York. I don't say, I don't know if that would be beneficial to us here in Connecticut or my business. But at the same time, who carries cash nowadays? Nobody does. I don't think it's going to be something that's going to make a difference. Everybody has a card, they have their phones, and we just want to make their lives easier to take their money.
But if they knew they were going to save on their purchase, more people would carry cash, wouldn't they?
I don't think so. It's not, it's not happening ever since COVID. Nobody has cash.
Because they don't, there's no advantage for the customer.
Yeah, I mean, hopefully they see that as an advantage, but if they do, I mean, we'll be happy to discuss that. But I don't think that should, that will be like a solution.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Peter Gistling?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and esteemed members of the committee. My name is Peter Gistling. I'm the Executive Director of the Avon Theater Film Center in Stamford, Connecticut. Been in this position since July twenty twenty three. I'm here today to express strong support for the House Bill seven one seven six, which seeks to allocate a portion of the revenue generated from the existing meal tax to the Tourism Fund with the aim of increasing annual funding, including for the arts. Each year, the Avon Theater welcomes over forty thousand moviegoers to our screens. Not only do these patrons enjoy independent films, documentaries, and special programs, but they also contribute significantly to the local economy. We know from our surveys that about thirty, nearly a third of our audience, around twelve thousand people a year visits a local bar or restaurant before or after the movie. The data shows an average spending of approximately hundred dollars per person, including tips and taxes. And this results in about one point two million dollars a year in local spending, about hundred thousand dollars a month. Under one point two million in restaurant spending generated by the Avon, this translates into eighty eight thousand dollars in direct tax sales revenue for the state. This is a very meaningful contribution from the Avon to the state's budget and supports the infrastructure and services that benefit all of us. In addition to this, our annual concessions in the amount of hundred forty seven thousand dollars generates another eleven thousand dollars in direct sales tax revenue, which brings the total direct sales tax revenue up to hundred thousand dollars nearly. However, the Avon Theater's economic impact extends far beyond just the immediate sales tax revenue. As a cultural institution, the Avon also creates multiple jobs, twelve point eight full-time equivalents, W two employees, attracts visitors, and helps keep Stamford downtown area vibrant. House Bill seven one seven six represents a tremendous opportunity to reinvest some of this revenue in the Tourism Fund, which supports arts and cultural organizations across the state. Increasing funding for the arts not only sustains the institutions that bring our communities together, but also helps attract visitors, creating additional economic growth. This is important to know, regardless of the fact we are in favor or not of arts funding in general. Just simply look at the economic impact alone, which is so important, especially in these challenging times. In conclusion, the Avon Theater Film Center is an integral part of our local economy. And by contributing to support House Bill seven one seven six, you have an opportunity to reinvest in the arts and tourism, ensuring that organizations like the Avon continue to thrive. But as important, benefit the economy and enrich the cultural landscape of Connecticut. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Thank you very much. Randy Collins?
Good afternoon, members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Uh, my name is Randy Collins, uh, Associate Director of Policy for the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. Uh, here today to offer testimony on two bills. Uh, the first one I wanted to, uh, comment on was House Bill seven one seven five. Uh, CCM opposes section two of the bill, which would expand, uh, the, uh, property tax exemption for farm machinery from one hundred thousand to five hundred thousand dollars. While well intentioned, uh, this bill would expand, uh, a current unfunded mandate on our towns. Uh, currently there are over a hundred property tax exemptions that are mandated upon our towns. This, and this number is, is, is troubling. Um, recently, the New Haven Assessor stated that, uh, of their property tax, fifty-six point seven percent, uh, is now exempt, uh, leaving just about forty, as we said, about forty percent of that city to carry, uh, the burden of providing for police, fire and any number of services. Recent changes to the veterans exemption, uh, motor vehicle changes have really put our municipalities in a hard, in a hard fiscal position. New London, for the first time, and as long as I can remember, is not running. Uh, wasn't able to fund, uh, their sale fest operation because of budgetary, uh, constraints. So we would ask, uh, that we do not, uh, further, further erode the property tax base, uh, on our municipalities. The other bill I wish to speak on was seven one seven six, an act concerning distribution of sales tax, um, specifically on the portion regarding meals and beverages. We support, uh, the initiative and I kind of echo my comments to, uh, Scott Dolson, Restaurant Association in twenty nineteen. Almost up until the end of the budgetary process, that money, that one percent was to go back to municipalities. We would be willing, more than happy to work with, uh, the Restaurant Association, uh, members of the committee and looking at using a portion of that money to go back to municipalities, uh, also to support the restaurant industry and the tourism fund. We think a, a collective work on that, uh, would be a benefit to all of our, our towns and cities and the industry. Uh, and it would be an important step towards revenue diversification. Uh, thank you for your time and happy to take any questions.
Questions for Mr. Collins? Thank you. Jonathan Edwards?
Yeah, I, um, I brought a couple of other farmers with me, uh, that are going to testify and I'll share some of my time.
Are they on the list?
Uh, yes, they are.
You could identify yourself at that time, it'd be great.
Okay, um, first of all, thank you, uh, to the, um, members of Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Jonathan Edwards. Um, I'm an owner and operator of Jonathan Edwards Winery, which is a farm in North Stonington, Connecticut. So we're in the southeastern corner, um, proudly farming. I also, uh, so I, uh, there, you have my written testimony. I also talk, talked to some of the dairy farmers in my town that have also, um, provided written testimony. And it was an easy yes when we talked about, uh, this issue. So I'm here to testify in full support of HB seven one seven five, an act establishing farm investment tax credit and increasing the farm machinery property tax exemption. And I'm proud to have supported a similar measure last session. In fact, I have begun the process of working with the selectmen in my town to try to increase the optional farm machinery exemption and tax exemption on farm buildings. However, these are currently only options that a town may pursue versus mandates to help the farming industry. And that's a big difference. In two thousand and one, my family joined the Connecticut farming community when we purchased the remaining portion of a former dairy farm that had been converted into one of the first farm wineries in Connecticut in the nineteen eighties. We have about fifty acres of land, twenty actively farmed for grapes and about twenty acres of protected woodlands. We employ fourteen full-time staff members, six of whom are full-time farmers or winemakers. The cost to maintain farm buildings, purchase machinery for farming and manufacturing has skyrocketed even in the twenty-five years that we've been in business. And the current tech tax exemptions, while welcome, are antiquated in their valuation and have not kept up with the rate of inflation. These potential new exemptions will help with the cost of doing business. As a member of the Connecticut Farm Bureau, the past president of the Connecticut Vineyard Winery Association and a current member of the Connecticut Wine Development Council with the Department of Agriculture, I have been a proud supporter of Connecticut alco, agriculture and pro agricultural legislation. If passed, this bill will have positive implications for generations of Connecticut farmers. This is probably the single best thing that you could do as a legislative body to support a healthy farming community in Connecticut. Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Keith Bishop from Bishop Tortures in Guilford, Connecticut, uh, three hundred and thirteen acre, sixth generation family farm. I'm down at the bottom of the list, the number forty-five, if you want to reference your list. I'm glad to help shorten your day by us combining together. I, one of my roles is also Vice President at Connecticut Farm Bureau. I'm an active supporter of agriculture. And I think what we have in front of us here is a milestone event and an opportunity for Connecticut to say yes to agriculture in a whole nother way that has not happened, uh, in, in the recent past. The bill here in giving the tax credit has a five-year protection for the state. So the, uh, investments really are long-term. You're aiming at people who then are dedicated to keeping their businesses going in agriculture here in Connecticut. I also see it as a support for the next generation. I don't like to admit that I just turned seventy, but I'm the fifth generation of our farm and the sixth generation, my three children are actively involved and they've made a commitment to continue on. Uh, previous testimony by Paul Larson and Tracy McDougall earlier referenced, uh, what the age of farmers was, the difficulty of succession planning, um, and what the income level is in order to live here in Connecticut and have your children want to stay here and come back. Um, this is all designed to help do that and keep farmland open as well as to attract the next generation, whether it's a multifamily generation farm or beginning new farmer that then is eligible for these tax credits. Indexing the, uh, the bill to inflation for the second part, for the municipal tax exemption, I think is another strong add that I would ask you to consider. We're at the, uh, mercy of having it been at the hundred thousand dollars since the, uh, the eighties. Um, with no indexing, I think it'd be appropriate to take one step and add indexing, just like the minimum wage to this particular one. And, uh, the other piece I'd like to mention, I support the provisions that allow, um, the different types of entities to be able to get support. Our family farm is an S corporation. We have multiple pieces of the puzzle that are in that. Um, the S corporation was formed back in the fifties. It is archaic compared to what the lawyers would have you put in for the way in which you would organize things now with LLCs. Um, but the gist of what I have, we roll things up into one organization. That's the way the land base is, the stock has been transferred from generation to generation. And I, the one pitfall that I see here in concern and whether, um, Representative Horn be able to take and answer this or we can get the answers to it is when the multi-diverse operation, whether it's Freuen's, uh, doing cowpots up in.
You were at the five minutes, if you could all please summarize.
Route forty-four or, um, is what percentage of your gross income from the various pieces of your operation? Then take and put you over the, um, the percentage. Um, because if you've got over two million, two million dollars in egg sales like we do, are we exempted because then we have five million dollars worth of sales or six million dollars worth of sales with the rest of the entity with agretainment? So I know I'm tight as time and I've also intruded on, uh, Jamie's time that he's up number forty-six and here in front of you as well.
I believe we'll have questions from, from the committee, so maybe they'll give you an opportunity to, to continue.
Thank you, Representative.
Uh, Representative Paletta, I believe, has a question to start.
Well, I guess, uh, since we didn't hear from Jamie yet, and, uh, I know Jamie, I'm going to ask you a question. Uh, well, first of all, thank you guys for being here and I've, uh, been to your farm and, uh, in, um, Joan's family, wonderful spot, uh, was there last year and we talked a lot about this and how important it is to your industry. So I was just wondering if you could, um, just talk a little bit about how this can, uh, this proposal can sustain agriculture in the state. Thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Representative. And, and yes, uh, my, my family farms in Shelton, um, I, as a Joan, I know Keith's trying to keep up with the Joneses. We're six, six generations.
No pun intended.
Uh, two and, um, I'll just, before I, for this committee to understand, I think it's been about twenty years since something as impactful of this bill has been introduced that you can do. And the last time I would think was the Community Investment Act. And you know what? That was something new and novel, uh, that they passed. And it was bipartisan, you had Representative Beldon, uh, Governor Rell on one side, President Don Williams and, uh, Speaker Amon, who made sure that legislation got to the finish line. And this piece of legislation, uh, could equally be impactful, but it's really just, part of it is just replicating something that's working in other states. And the other part is updating a number that's forty years old. I was in like third grade back then, the last time it was a, and there's powerful testimony to, to see where all expenses have gone in, in forty years. So I just think it's a great opportunity, you know, for this committee to do that. What it would mean for a farmer like ourselves, it comes at a really critical time. Use, I've, uh, you know, there's other legislation, we're dealing with climate change, invasive species, uh, energy costs, uh, labor strains. We need to reinvest in our businesses and this is just something to further entice and reward, uh, the investments that we're trying to make so we can continue to give back to our businesses, our communities and make us, you know, really stronger, you know, uh, vibrant businesses that can continue into the future.
Thank you. Uh, Representative Clarissa Detera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today and especially thank you to, uh, Farmer Jones for being here. Uh, we appreciate everything you do. I know as a small family business owner myself, uh, what goes in to running a family business and for the generations that you've all been in business. So, so thank you to that. Um, I have great memories of going to Joan's farm with my dad from a very young age, getting our Christmas trees and my dad saying, no, we have to go all the way up to the top of that hill and look for that tree in snowstorms and sub-zero weather and rain. Um, but again, I, I want to thank you for all you do to continue to add to our economy, to bring memories, you know, to the lives of, of all ages in the state of Connecticut and beyond. But, um, Jamie, I want to know specifically to your business, what benefits to you and your family business will this bill do?
Yeah, no, thank you. And I, I know those benefits, sometimes they're very intangible and hard to put dollars to. But, you know, I look at this, you know, the, as I mentioned before, the reinvestments that we have to make in taking care of the land, uh, we're very concerned about our soils, making sure our soils remain resilient and able to rejuvenate them. That's new cultivation equipment that we would like to invest in. Um, you know, energy is a big issue, whether, or looking at adding more solar power or potentially farming more with drones. You know, these are the things we need to do. Uh, we know the workforce of tomorrow is going to be less interested in doing the, the, the physical work. But for the first time in, you know, since graduating college twenty-five years ago, I see some technological breakthroughs that are going to allow us to, to change the way we do things. But of course, that takes investment and, and money. And this is, uh, you know, and just having this incentive will be a huge, you know, uh, driver to enable us to do that. Otherwise, you might be picking or choosing and we might get there, but it's going to take us longer to get there. But I'd like to get there faster.
Exactly. We'd like you to get there faster too. And a second question, what, um, do you know what other states have legislation that's similar to this?
Yes, um, there'll be a, someone signed up to testify, Speaker number twenty-two, Dario Arizo. He works with a, a farming cooperative. Uh, they offer financial services to farm families across, uh, New England, New York and New Jersey. Um, I know New York has had a program like this for several years. I believe Maine also has a program. I believe a couple of other states are also working on it. I think if you're able to ask him some specific questions, he could really drill down and see farm families in Connecticut versus New York and talk about what, what they're able to do. But yes, this is not a, uh, a new concept. It is definitely something that's been, been working for other farming, uh, communities.
Thank you very much for your answer. It's nice seeing you, gentlemen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative, Representative Paines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I feel like I'm looking at the three kings of farming in the state of Connecticut. And I've been to all of your farms and I appreciate all that you have done and will do in the, in the, in the future. And speaking of future, if any of you or all of you would like to speak to how this bill is going to help your generations to come, as far as farmers go, um, thank you for, um, doing it for as long as you have. Um, you don't look a day over thirty, so, um, but I do appreciate you guys being here. And I, I love the idea of the fact that this, you know, is so important to our new generation of farmers and that they stay here in Connecticut and they continue doing the, the great things that all your farms do. But if anybody wants to speak to the future generations and the aspects of how this bill is going to help that, that would be great.
Sure, I'll quickly step in here. Um, my daughters and son, um, can't be here today because they feel their work on the farm is really important to keep on going, actively managing what's, uh, going on there with, uh, our over a hundred employees and things that are, are they're active. Um, but it, it is an incentive to say, okay, you can turn around and have that twenty percent credit that then allows you to reinvest and whether that there's human capital, there is, you know, physical capital and physical needs that you have. Um, so you've got those pieces of the puzzle, um, that all come together. And it's important for the next generation to have capital remaining, that they've got a lifestyle that they can live, you know, in town and commute easily, um, to it. They can all, you know, live on the farm, don't want to live on the farm. We don't have the buildings that, you know, houses to do it. But I think that in, uh, in Joan's situation as well, where there's the next generation that is, uh, younger than mine. Um, I know many others around the state. Paul and Tracy earlier today mentioned, uh, the multiple generation piece. And, um, you'll hear from Seth Baylor later on this afternoon, uh, dairy farmer up in the Enfield area and their operation that is going to that next generation. And if it isn't for things that then say, okay, we bought a hundred and twenty thousand dollar tractor this last year. Took us six months before we, when we ordered it, when we got it. Um, we don't get the credit on that because that's already, you know, done and passed. Um, but it's things like that to say that, take that twenty thousand dollars. Well, we also just invested twenty-five thousand dollars in additional wine storage tanks for making hard cider, um, just, uh, at the end of last year. So those are things we're continuing to do in order to meet demands in our public. Part of that's tied to the agricultureism that we do, because our hard cider business has increased for people coming on the farm and doing activities. And thanks to, uh, the folks here, then the Farm Water React was changed to allow having secondary locations for it. A couple of years ago, we've taken advantage of that so we could turn around. And then at the pick your own area, you can also enjoy with your family to have a hard cider to be served legally, um, for us. So there is multiple generation pieces of it that are really important, as well as saying to new and beginning farmers, if you've got an investment, you can turn around and leverage that with additional stuff because it is a live credit, um, that comes back as cash if you don't use it all up that year. I, that's another critical piece of it that I mentioned in my testimony. Thank you, Representative Paines.
If, if I could just add quickly, um, by raising the exemption, what basically was happening for small farmers like myself is that you really need to vertically integrate. So you, you, it's not enough to just, to grow grapes, because the value isn't there, right? The value added is making wine. So then you need to, of course, have all this manufacturing equipment. So you're a farmer, yes. And then you're a manufacturer on top of that. And then piled on top of that, of course, you have your retail sales. But as we're manufacturing, we need to be more efficient. So we need to buy equipment. And for instance, a few years ago, we bought a, a new bottling machine. All that costs two hundred thousand dollars. That goes immediately onto your personal property, um, valuation. And so now your taxes go up. And so a, a tractor used to cost twenty thousand dollars, now it costs a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. A, a bottling line used to cost forty thousand dollars, now it could cost a half a million dollars. Um, if you want to try to diversify your operations, we're for, for instance, thinking about making sparkling wine or champagne, uh, because we grow Chardonnay grapes as well. Well, that's another hu, I need it, now I need a facility. I need a barn, I need specialized equipment for making champagne. I would have to go and buy that equipment. Of course, I would love to have a tax credit on buying equipment, which is part of this, but also having, uh, a reduction, uh, or an increase in the exemption on farm machinery, um, for that kind of vertical integration, which is what is happening to small farms, because you have to have value added. It, we're not, we're, uh, like Paul Larson said from the Farm Bureau, we're small farmers. It, we're not the commodity guys. So we're not the soybean and corn and we're, we're, we're niche or niche, uh, agro tourism places for the most part. Um, but again, you, you'll see a written ta, testimony, um, from North Stonington, the Bariah Lewis Farm, eighth generation, um, showpiece, everybody's buying their beef in southeastern, kind of restaurants are buying it from them. Um, he, if he were here, he would be speaking, uh, about the next, um, generation as well. So this goes beyond wineries. So this goes beyond wineries, this goes straight to the heart of all agriculture throughout the state. And I heard from the gentleman who was speaking about some losses, potentially revenue for places like New Haven and New London. If there's a farm tax exemption, I ask how many farms are in New Haven or New London? I would say it's probably zero. So that is just sort of a moot point to me. We're talking about real agriculture, boots on the ground in farming areas. Thank you.
I feel flattered. I've never been called royalty before. But you are, there's four hundred, close to four hundred years sitting in front of you right now. We are all deeply rooted in our communities. It's not something that we can just take our business and relocate it somewhere elsewhere unless, you know, we sell out and then it's gone. And of course, I have my children, the seventh generation, all of them do show interest in coming back to the farm. But I will also say what we're seeing, and I'm sure like Keith and John's business, we have a number of employees and now we're starting to employ their children and their experience. So it's not just you look at us, yes, we're the family, we are the the heads of the farm, but it goes beyond that. And I think in our own ways about Shelton, Guilford and North Stonington, you know, we offer all of those intangible benefits that are hard to quantify financially that really make, you know, Connecticut special, unique. So that's why we're here.
Thank you. Thank you for your answers. And 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 I think that that is so true is that Connecticut is so unique in so many different ways. But we have to, for the for the the land and the beauty of of Connecticut, we have to maintain our farms. We have to help you. And, you know, just the whole community that these farms represent is is so important. So thank you for your answers and thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Representative. As long as you add a Northwest Corner representative to your group, then I'm down with you, Representative.
Hillary Hopkins sent to regret that she can't be here, Maria.
Representative Raider, followed by we have two online.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to all of you being here today. I know you have very busy lives and businesses to take care of. And I think you can tell from the committee response, like, we really appreciate the investment you all have made through the generations of your family in Connecticut and your communities. I represent Guilford, and so I know Keith and his family well. And I just want to point out the asset that these farms are to our communities. It is an institution in Guilford. I don't think you could talk to one family in our community that hasn't had a wonderful memory at bishops or relies on them on a weekly basis like me for the prepared meals when I can't get home in time to make dinner. But Keith, specifically to you, I've watched bishops over the last almost fifteen years really diversify and reinvent yourself and really lean into the agritourism as well as your market and everything. And I'm thinking of all the investment you guys have made over even just the last five or ten years. And can you think of investments you would have liked to make but that this tax credit restructuring would really help your business consider? Or are there things on the horizon that will really help this come to fruition?
The types of things that we're going to need to be reinvesting in as well as sort of on the wish list. And we try and take a really good economic look of what we've got limited capital to keep reinvesting in. You know, we're in the neighborhood of over three hundred thousand dollars annually on reinvestment in in capital. In some years it's higher than that and others years it's not. When we put up a new barn a year and a half ago, then the barn itself was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, you know, and that's a long term, you know, piece of asset that will serve for our storage of equipment that we need to protect that investment. But ongoing technology is a big piece of it. As Jamie indicated, the newer technology has efficiencies that are built in, especially what we can do on labor saving because we all know that labor in specialty fields is tight. So where we, the next generation is doing things that then is, you know, with your cell phone and apps and things to control stuff. I look forward to having a tax credit in effect and you guys passing the drone bill that we have before. So I was up here last week to testify for having that drone technology to use it. So then buying a drone that's from twenty five to forty thousand dollars would be one of the first things that I would be urging my family to to make an investment in in order to more carefully take, spray where we need to and to make it more efficient at what we do. The other pieces of it, we've got aging tractors, some of them are, you don't want to replace. So a John Deere three thirty that we use that was from nineteen fifties is still a two banger putt putt that you can recognize from, you know, quarter mile away when it's coming down the road due to the stylistic, you know, muffler and combustion that it has. But we also need to take and replace our even newer tractors with cabs and have them be environmentally protected. So when we're doing operations, you've got protection from the weather environments or whether you're spraying, you've got the respirator protection that's built into the cab to do that, to follow up with EPA rules. The technology costing money, too. And I know some of you have heard about the bills that the fix it bills, I can't remember the exact terminology. Jamie can help me help me out here where farmers and and others are allowed to get the codes and the keys to be able to plug your device in to know what's wrong as opposed to have it be locked up at the factory and not be able to fix it yourself in your own shop. So there's things like that that all are additive in terms of extra costs that keep on coming our way.
Thank you, and really just thank you to the investment you've made in our community because it's a huge impact on all of us.
I do need to do a little pun on the royalty piece here because I would hate to be, as you referenced, our family Guilford, to be the the bishop that got beheaded because we sold the farm out.
You're not allowed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Senator Cohen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and hello, Jamie, John and Keith. It's good to see you all again, always. I'm happy to see this bill back before us again this year. Obviously, anything we can do to continue our rich tradition of agriculture here in the state of Connecticut is incredibly important. And I think there are a number of bills, not only before this committee, but before the legislature this year that will hopefully do that and make your lives easier. We heard from Tracy and the Farm Barrow a little bit earlier, as well as all of you about how difficult it is to be a farmer in Connecticut and the costs continue to go up. And we are, as you've heard from my good colleagues, so appreciative of the investments that you continue to make in your multi-generational farms. What I would say is, and and this is a question that's probably difficult to answer with any degree of certainty or precision. But we know that CCM and costs have been opposed to this due to a potential loss in revenue to the towns. But what we've also been hearing from each of you is the incredible amount of agritourism that's been popping up not only with your individual farms, but across the state of Connecticut. So farming is not just farming the land and shipping out produce. It's really become a venue for folks across the state, as well as folks out of state to come and visit and enjoy, enjoy the whole scene, whether it's a vineyard or it's a corn maze or a hay, a horse ride, whatever it is. And I wonder if you could speak to the potential for an offset to any revenue loss to these towns that should be considered in terms of you bringing folks into these municipalities. Certainly not only visiting your venues, but I would assume visiting others, restaurants, local coffee shops, local stores. And I think it's something that should absolutely be contemplated, especially as we're talking about agritourism. So I wondered if any of you wanted to speak to that.
That's a great philosophical question. And I I do struggle with it because, of course, I'm here looking for a tax break from my local community. I tell our staff and everyone who visits our farm, the success of our farm in Shelton does not succeed unless this community succeeds. All of our family goes through, has gone through the Shelton school systems, firm believer in that. But what I struggle with is, you know, you know, our farming, the hundreds of acres we have and the environmental services that we're providing by keeping the space open for, you know, tractors and so forth, that the tractors do not have children, they're they're not going on the the local roads. You know, how are, is it fair that they're being taxed? I'm not looking for, you know, a break on our our houses where we live or some of our employees live or the other parts that fund the infrastructure of our our towns or our town or, you know, other cities. So and of course, we do, we and we do pay a lot of taxes in my mind to our our local municipality. So so how you get that right balance? That's a very fair question, Senator Cohen. But I just try to feel like what what is fair and what pays for what you want to get done? And I just felt like, you know, something philosophically that the state legislature in nineteen eighty five increased the threshold to an appropriate level of a hundred thousand dollars back then and hasn't been raised. Why, I could make a case that maybe all tractors should be exempt from any use of, you know, tax taxes for what they're doing and the the cost is not there for the municipality.
Yeah, I'll chime in on that one there. I see some of the direct benefits, Senator Cohen, coming back. We sell food and obviously that's one of our main things, but then we're also offering agri-tainment. That's subject to sales tax and admission tax that's coming back to the state. So that's not a direct correlation back to our local community. But most certainly, the state is getting the benefit of what we are then selling from the admission and the sales tax going into it. Our farm acreage is being held back and it's more four ninety issue in the farmland assessment, but we are producing schoolchildren on our acreage that then otherwise be a a different kind of tax burden. Our farm operation, I don't have the numbers here in the financials all memorized, but over thirty thousand dollars that we pay directly to the town of Guilford for our taxes from our family corporation together for the land, the buildings, the property stuff. So there's no small jump change that we're paying as a part of that to our town to support that. And in turn, we appreciate the support of people who come from far and wide, excuse me, to our operation.
I can only speak about my own farm, but when we when we came in to North Stonington, we ended up purchasing what was left of a dairy farm and it in fact had been split up into housing lots. And there's lots of lovely homes on Chester Main Road where I live. But we we have ten housing lots that are all being farmed. So that means there's not ten houses, there's not twenty kids going to the schools. They're not pulling on municipal services, but we're paying high taxes. So we we pay almost thirty thousand dollars a year in taxes myself. And and so I think that's the kind of thing that you can see. And of course, the quality of life that people are enjoying by having places like Jonathan Eders Winery or Jamie's Farm or places to go, be, get outside, have an affordable day. Those type of things I think are very important and hard to quantify. But I would say in general that farms are not pulling on the resources of the town.
Thank you for that. And again, thank you for all you do. I I just think it's food for thought, you know, there there's certainly a benefit to all of us for having farmers in our towns and just enriching our communities in so many ways. So thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Wong.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to all three of you. Indeed, if not royalty, you are all very iconic institutions in the history of farming in the state. But I also want to acknowledge all of you because as you speak, and you're very well known, you're also speaking for many of the small farmers that that can't come up, that that don't have the resources and the opportunity to be able to share their struggles and challenges. So I want to thank you for being a voice for them as well. Now, we're talking about some tax credits for machinery that hasn't changed for many a years. But I want to kind of pivot and talk about the challenges you have that this bill, should it be passed, could give you some degree of economic buffer, one, to make the investment to build your business and and invest into the machinery, which has increased in significant cost. But but let's talk about climate change. What you as farmers had to endure relative to changing temperatures and in the the rain that has occurred that we've seen in in our communities. A lot of us have challenges and struggles with damage. But talk to us about how weather pattern, climate change has dramatically changed and altered your business, increasing risk, but also financial burden. And this tax credit could be a buffer against the challenges you have for each of you to be able to offer how climate change has a part of farming has dramatically impacted your ability to 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 manage your finances.
Thank you, Senator, for for your question. And I can speak specifically to this because we had a devastating weather event that had impacted us in twenty twenty three where we basically had no crop. And so we, I mean, who's going to remember the fact that February eighth, it got down to minus twelve degrees? We all forget that. Well, I can assure you, the grapevines did not forget that. And nor did the apple trees throughout the state. There was basically no crop, no apples, no many of the, you know, peaches and things like that. And we grow grapes that are not cold hardy. And so we had no crop. That didn't mean that I didn't need to farm all year long, didn't mean I didn't have to pay all of my people all year long. And then, of course, still pay my personal property taxes and things like that. So if we were, if we had a reduction in our personal property tax, that would certainly help to buffer us from some of these impacts from weather. There also, I think it was in twenty twenty four, there was a huge frost event that impacted many, many, many farmers throughout the state. That's whether if you're just growing lettuce and things like that. It just absolutely smoked everything and and it was huge impacts. So there's no question that we're having more rain, which is no good for for fruits. And and we're having a more, a kind of these extreme weather events of intense heat and drought like we just had this last summer or these polar vortexes that whipped down from Canada and places like that that impact us. So they are coming more frequently and are certainly taking a toll on farmers. And so again, just not having quite the tax burden that we would have had would help buffer us from some of those things.
And I would just quickly concur that it's a buffering piece. We're not seeing a movement of temperatures that are then moving up, you know, the coast. And then it's getting warmer and warmer, say you can't grow something like apples in the Carolinas anymore because you don't have a cold enough winter. These are erratic events that are happening. So we've been hit by the same frost that were mentioned here, hit our peach crop, our apples got hit somewhat, but not a lot. Strawberries that same year, hailstorm this last August twenty six that another farmer and other bills we testified on here hit ten acres of our orchard in Northford. And that decimated the crop there and turned it all into unfresh marketable fruit that had to be turned into juice only. But the costs of harvesting are still the same, whether you're harvesting an apple that's got cut marks on it from the ice and hail marks on it, or whether it's a perfectly good fruit that's going to go for retail price of two bucks a pound versus a juice price of ten cents a pound. So the events, this will definitely help buffer those things. How much? Again, theoretical as well.
Thank you, Senator Wong, and I appreciate that you recognize, you know, the climate issues. I would just say, as John and Keith, it's it's the extremes that we're dealing with. Average is is all, I could spend a lot of time. I really appreciate this committee's giving us the opportunity to present all these. But I'll just one really quick example would be, you know, we've talked about drones, the ability. If we can't get into a field because it's so wet or the tractors and the compaction, it might might lead to heavy rain and the potential plant diseases, you know, something that can be flying very aerially over the field, very low and applying something like a disease, a plant protectant, something that we couldn't have been able to do. And we we recognize as a farming community, we can't always depend on the government to come and save us every time, whether it's a frost, a hailstorm or something else. We appreciate the efforts that are being made, but being able to make some of these investments to get in front of it. A bill like this will allow us to deal with it and have that buffer to deal with what's just an inevitability. More of these, you know, extreme weather events are going to keep coming at us.
And and I appreciate that because in visiting all three of the farms and numerous others, seeds aren't a a long term purchase plan, right? If you lose a whole crop and you got to replant, seeds cost money right then and there. You don't have an opportunity of a payment plan. So you you've got cash outlays. So I I think that's one of the real challenges. A lot of people that don't understand farming appreciate that you have to outlay cash to invest in your crops and it could very easily be lost beyond your own control or your own management. I I know for us in the insurance committee, we looked at some of the storm damage impacting our our water log fields or dried out drought fields that's that's costing farmers and potentially putting them out of business. My second question to to all of you is, the worst of worst cases, the business changes, climate change and and burdens on property taxes and machine cost taxes and and lack of interest in getting into the business that you do sell. What happens to you? What happens to your land? I know what happens, right? It becomes track housing. And, and one of the biggest parts, when I say the three of you are iconic, is you are great educators and providing quality products. But, but you teach generations, a, a, across generations to understand that farming sustainability and coexistence with our land and producing farm to table is an essential part of, of, of climate change conservation that we are indeed creating an environment impacting, you know, carbon emissions and, 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 and burning off heat. The, the reality is if you don't survive and many other farms don't survive.
Sorry to interrupt. There's a two, there's a two-question, five-minute limit.
Then, then fine. That, that's my question is just quickly, if, if you fail and you sell out, what's the demise? What's the end product of, of us as a society and as a state? Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Very, very quickly. So we grateful to say to Connecticut, most of our farm has, has, is in the protection of the development right program. So it will live on, but it's my family. Maybe it's another farming family. Most of our land is preserved because we have that vision that we believe in that space always be for agriculture. And thank you for the general assembly for funding programs like that, for that surety. I will also say Senator Wong, although we also say agraturism or agratainment, our family's philosophy is more at agri-education because we believe we are almost more like an ambassador farm because we recognize that we're more getting multiple generations removed from families that have had a farm connection. So we have the hundreds of thousands of people that visit our farm. We, we take it very seriously and almost a responsibility that these people see a genuine, authentic, real working farm and what goes into it to grow those crops that they assist in harvesting and hopefully understand that, you know, the trials and tribulations that, you know, not just our farm, but other farmers in Connecticut and across the country need to deal with on a day in and day out basis.
And I guess the rest of my lifetime that, that I've got here, that my children will be dedicated to keeping our farm going for the stewardship it is. Unlike Jamie, then we own outright the three hundred thirteen acres that we farm on. Guilford has no development rights farms in a, in a bullet point area that really qualify for going to the state, not that we wouldn't. But the, I'd see the challenges of ours. We have a great land trust in Guilford that I would hope that if there's a major change with our family, that it would go into a program that would preserve it as opposed to then saying we're having to make housing out of it or sell it to a developer and have no control.
Yeah, I mentioned already that we bought housing lots, so they would go right into housing, obviously. But my next door neighbor who also testified, had written testimony, he's got five hundred acres. He's a dairy farm in my town. The, the other one, the Brialews Farm, six hundred and fifty acres. He also added written testimony. We're talking about eleven hundred acres between those two farms alone. So North Stonington, we've got thousands, I think we have six active dairy farms still in North Stonington, which is incredible considering I'm ten minutes from Mystic. Our town is really special, but it's ripe for development. The town of Stonington, which is Mystic Stonington Borough, the housing boom, you know, we're right by General Dynamics. So the amount of hiring that's going on is great for the economy. It's great for Connecticut, but the houses are coming, they're coming fast. And I'm watching them creep right up into North Stonington. And I just hate to see it become suburbia. I mean, I know we need housing, but we need farms too. And so we're talking about thousands and thousands and thousands and thousands of acres across the state of Connecticut that we can be helping with this legislation to keep us kind of a vibrant community. That's what we're looking for.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks to the good clerk for the reminder. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Senator. And yes, thank you to the good clerk for the reminder. Representative Constantine.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, what you just said about the creep, while we need housing, the creep into the farmland and how we really need to pay attention to that. I saw that out in Illinois, just north of Geneva and St. Charles where, you know, housing developments were going up on really, really deep, black, good soil. And it was such a shame. I mean, my grandparents had citrus and grape farm vineyards in Greece. My cousin still runs a farm. So what you said in response to Senator Wong's question on environment really hits home. Every time we would visit, it was all about the weather. This is pre-climate change talk, but, and how it really affects farmers. But Farmer Jones, since that's what our colleagues have been calling you, I was listening upstairs and I noticed in response to the gentleman from CCM, you talked about, you know, how you've used the services of the town, your kids have gone into school. I've used the schools and, you know, how, yes, you are asking for a tax break from the towns. However, you, I believe, Mr. Edwards, right? I, I'm not sure what to call someone who has a vineyard. Are you a farmer?
I would definitely say yes.
Okay, okay. Farmer Edwards then. But what you said about, and I think you actually mentioned how, how many people you're drawing to the town. So I'd like to go into what economic positive impact you are having on your towns. You know, you are paying taxes, but by increasing from a hundred to five hundred thousand, we're almost forty years of catching up, you know, on this tax abatement for equipment as equipments become more expensive. But could you go a little more into the positive economic benefit you have on the towns of the people that you're drawing in? And then perhaps them staying in the towns for lunch or for dinner?
Yeah, I, I think two things. Everyone never seen a study, but I do think people do like to live around areas where there's open space and we like to be a good neighbor to those people. So I do believe, and if you look at our town of Shelton, it's a very balanced community. It's got its open space, it's got its downtown areas. It's got, it's more corporate development and it's got more suburban areas. So I think that just adds to a very robust, healthy community. So that alone makes a desirable place to, to live in. And secondarily to your question, yes, we are attracting a number of visitors to our town from outside, not just the people in our town who enjoy our, our farm, but they're coming, especially during our, our October or our, our Christmas tree season. They are coming not from just outside of our town, but oftentimes outside of the state of Connecticut. They're traveling to, to spend a day there and it's, you know, whether it's restaurants or some other local business in the area. We can tell you drive around, you just see all these signs starting to pop up on all the, the roads that feed into our farm. And you know that these, although they might be buying a Christmas tree at our farm, I bet you they're spending more money that they spend on that Christmas tree, whether they're stopping with that family at a local restaurant or stopping at some other small, you know, business along, along the way. So we're, I mean, we're flattered, we're honored. We, we, you know, you know, a rising tide lifts all ships. So we're more than happy to do that. And, and that's part of the, what, you know, gets me up in the morning.
Thank you, Representative. I will, I will note that I am very heartened by the great broad and deep support among, and interest in the committee in this bill in particular. I will note to all the committee members, there are other farmers also testifying later if you have more questions. I do also, Nicky, I think I was out of the room beginning of your testimony, but you did raise a clarifying question and about, and, and if you don't mind just sort of sending that to, to our clerk or any, any issue you have about the way the legislation is currently drafted that might improve it, please, please bring it to our attention.
Thank you. No, I'll communicate that directly through the clerk. Thank you very much, Maria.
Thank you for spending a chunk of your day with us today.
I really want to thank you and thank you for your interest, your questions and, and potentially helping us out as farmers. I also just, in two seconds, just want to put in a little plug also that as a retailer who probably has fifty thousand people come through his door every year and does a lot of transactions. I'm personally in support of SB one four six oh. It feels like a double tax to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm truly flattered to, of this interest. So thank you and the rest of the general assembly for supporting Connecticut agriculture.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for the extra time today. Much appreciated in answering your questions.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Brennan Duckett, who I believe is online.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Chair Horn, Chair Fonfera, members of the committee, thank you for inviting me to testify in support of SB fourteen sixty, legislation that requires payment card networks to exclude interchange fees on sales and use taxes. My name is Brennan Duckett and I'm the Director of Tech and Innovation Policy at the National Restaurant Association. Swipe fees have grown exponentially over the last decade because just two networks, Visa and Mastercard, control over eighty percent of the credit card market. They set the interchange fee rates on behalf of thousands of banks and credit unions. As a result, US merchants pay some of the highest swipe fees in the world, typically ranging from two to four percent per transaction, depending on the card used. Worse yet, swipe fees act as an inflation multiplier, given that they are paid as a percentage of every transaction. But inflation doesn't hurt everyone in the US economy, as Visa's CEO has stated publicly that inflation is a positive for its business. Swipe fees are a top three to five cost for restaurant operators and they have no ability to negotiate the rates that the two dominant card companies impose. This forces merchants into a take it or leave it position if they want to accept credit cards with their logos on them. And it's the only business relationship in which the service provider takes a definitive cut of the operator's profit. Restaurants are a key engine of Connecticut's economy, which means that the industry is one of the largest collectors of state and local taxes. However, this service for the state comes at a significant cost because card networks require restaurant operators to pay swipe fees on the taxes they collect. In other words, card companies are profiting off of merchants' legal obligation to collect taxes on behalf of the state to the tune of nearly ten billion dollars per year in the US. Thankfully, SB fourteen sixty seeks to address this injustice. Passing this bill into law would save the Connecticut restaurant industry at least fourteen million dollars in swipe fees per year. In twenty twenty-three, as Scott noted earlier, businesses and consumers in the state paid over a hundred and ten million dollars in swipe fees on sales taxes alone. These are significant sums that could be kept within state borders that stimulate local economic activity as opposed to be sending these, these dollars to global card networks and money center banks. You will hear a number of arguments from those opposing the bill today that are raised every single time their lucrative status quo is threatened. They are red herring arguments. This legislation carefully considers litigation, litigation development in, in Illinois by putting networks, not banks, on the hook. This legislation is technologically feasible for sophisticated card companies that control a global payment system. All they have to do is issue new fee schedules on the front end to the banks that adopt their schedules that do not include sales tax in the calculation of swipe fees. This is not a big box retail bailout bill. It will save small businesses on Main Street real money. Rewards programs will not disappear. This bill takes a measured approach that gets at a very small piece of their giant hyper lucrative pie. Happy pie day. The sky will not fall for the financial sector if this bill were to pass into law. Thanks and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Good pie reference. Seeing no questions. Thanks for, for sharing your, your part of your day with us.
Thanks.
Uh, next up, we have Morgan Fippinger. Yep.
Hi, can you all hear me?
We can hear you. The floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Morgan Fippinger and I'm the Executive Director of the Carousel Museum in Bristol. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to you today. So nonprofit also means business. I read balance sheets, generate profit and loss statements. The Carousel Museum does budget forecasting and we respond to market trends, all to serve our investors and our investors at the Carousel Museum are our community. Our product is our mission and the Carousel Museum needs our community and our state to see us. Connecticut's arts and culture institutions, not just as an investment, but as a smart investment. And if you do, if you invest in us, I promise that we will deliver. Connecticut's cultural treasures will never be outsourced. The Mark Twain House and Museum will never find a better deal down south. The Carousel Museum will not look for a better employment rate overseas and the American Clock and Watch Museum will never move its operations to Germany. The American for the Arts Economic Prosperity Survey from twenty twenty-two reminds us that the nonprofits, arts and culture organizations are employers, drivers of commerce and centers of pride for our communities. We are the keepers of our local, state and national history. We employ local, we buy local, we live local. We support our communities because we know that when our neighborhoods, towns and state does better, we all do better. The very act of our existing art, our doing business, creating, presenting, exhibiting and educating has a positive impact on, on Connecticut's well-being. And the state of Connecticut nonprofit arts and culture organizations spent an estimated six hundred and six million dollars in twenty twenty-two, supporting twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-six jobs and generating over two hundred million dollars in local, state and federal government revenue. Here at the Carousel Museum, we are a vital part of Bristol's Art and Culture District. Our mission is to share joy and wonder of carousel with visitors who visit us from all over the world to see our one-of-a-kind collection. The Carousel Museum educators work alongside Bristol Board of Education STEM coordinators to provide engaging programming for students throughout the state based on engineering, mechanical and physics behind the how the carousel works. We employ restoration artists who preserve antique carousels throughout New England, keeping them running and keeping this unique American art form alive. The Carousel Museum leverages every penny that comes into our organization, whether it's from individual, private or government investment. With every dollar invested in us, we return seven dollars back to our community. With this bill, Connecticut's arts organizations will be better able to forecast, budget and predict what is on the horizon of our financial future. We are Connecticut and an investment in office, investment in us is the safest investment you can make. An investment in us is an investment in Connecticut, Connecticut communities and Connecticut's residents. Thank you so much for your time and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your testimony. Seeing no questions, I wish you a happy rest of your day.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have Jacob Rodriguez. No. Frank Stillwagner.
Good afternoon. Before I start, Representative Constantine, I grew up in Batavia, Illinois, so I know exactly what you're speaking of. Good afternoon, members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Thank you for your time today. My name is Frank Stillwagner. Two and a half years ago, I moved to Connecticut to take a job as the Director of Development at Goodspeed Musicals in East Haddam. Uh, I'm here today submitting testimony in favor of House Bill number seven one seven six with respect to the need for increased investment in statewide arts, cultural and tourism, tourism infrastructure. I'm here today on behalf of the Board of Trustees of Goodspeed Musicals and our artistic director, Donalyn Hilton. Goodspeed and all arts organizations not only serve as vital cultural hubs, but also as key drivers of economic growth and community engagement across this state. The arts are essential to our identity, to our identity as a state and they play a crucial role in enriching the lives of our residents. Investing in the arts and cultural programs allows us to foster creativity, stimulate an intellectual discourse and enhances the quality of life for all of our citizens. By supporting the arts through the state, by supporting the arts through state fundraising, fund, funding streams, excuse me, we can assure that a thriving cultural land, we can ensure a thriving cultural landscape that showcases Connecticut's rich heritage and diverse talent. Moreover, the economic benefits of the arts cannot be understated. Theaters like Goodspeed attract visitors from outside of the state, driving tourism and contributing to local economies. For every dollar invested in the arts, as my colleagues have said, it returns seven dollars to local business, to, to the economy through job creation, increased tourism and spending in local businesses, retail and restaurants, as well as hotels. By allocating tax revenue to support arts and culture, we are making a strategic investment in both our community's cultural fabric and in the economic vitality. The COVID nineteen pandemic highlighted the importance of the arts as a means of healing and connection. However, still, five years after the shutdown, we continue to strive to recover and emerge from these, from those challenging times. We need, the need for support in this sector is more pressing than ever. Dedicated funding will enable the performing arts not only to survive, but to thrive, allowing us to produce innovative programming, hire local artists and engage in economic and educational initiatives that reach our young audiences and underserved communities. In conclusion, dedicating a portion of tax revenue to the arts, culture and tourism is not merely a budgetary decision. It is an investment in our communities, our economy and our collective spirit.
You've reached three minutes. Please summarize.
Sure. Goodspeed and dare I say, all the arts organizations in this state are committed to this vision and we urge you to support this initiative. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you for being with us today. Representative Haynes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you Frank for being here.
Thank you.
East Haddam is a vibrant place because Goodspeed is right there at the foot of the bridge. And we appreciate all that Goodspeed does for the town of East Haddam. But if you could, could you just speak a little bit more as to, you know, how many people? But if you could, could you just speak a little bit more as to, you know, how many people are employed by Goodspeed? How many people come in every year?
Sure.
You know, to give an idea of the fact that this is a piece of tourism that obviously helps East Haddam. But it's not only East Haddam, it's the entire state of Connecticut as well as Mystic Country, up and down the Connecticut River, as far as all the restaurants, both in East Haddam is in adjoining towns. There is a lot of, you know, ancillary value, and that's why this bill is important. But if you could speak a little bit more as to your particular population and what your population does for the greater area.
Absolutely. Throughout our season, Goodspeed will employ over 500 people. We house a majority of those folks in, in East Haddam because we're bringing in some of the best artists that the country has to offer. So they are actually living in this, in the community during the time that they're here. We have 85 year-round employees, and then we grow throughout the season with musicians, actors, singers, dancers, creative folks, directors, choreographers. We see about 120,000 people come through our doors on an annual basis, and that is concentrated mostly from April until December, which is our performance season. And that is ever-growing. After the pandemic, we saw a, obviously, a severe decrease in numbers coming through. But we are growing by at least 10 to 20% on an annual basis. We serve restaurants and retail, really from the coastline all the way up through Middletown. And people travel, on average, they tell us, 45 minutes to come and see a show at Goodspeed. We've been, for the last 63 years, have been investing in the community. We are, if you've been by, across the swing bridge and been by the front of our building, we are currently under construction adding an accessibility ramp to the front of the historic building. Thanks very much to the support of the state of Connecticut in allowing us to do that. And we have our vintage 60-year-old parking lot has been, is being overhauled completely at this time as well because we, that parking lot serves not only Goodspeed, but the entire town.
Absolutely, and I was so glad the other day, I didn't even realize that you guys were doing the parking lot too. And thankfully, the parking lot is being redone. One of the things that we do in East Haddam, just for those that are listening, is on Monday nights in the summertime, we have music on the river. That Goodspeed graciously lets us use their lawn and their parking lot, et cetera, et cetera. So it really is a community hub, and it, the fact that it brings in people from all over, you know, 45 minutes away is, you know, New Haven beyond. So it's great. We love having Goodspeed, and, you know, we really do believe that this bill will help Goodspeed as well as all, all tourism in Connecticut. It's so important. So thank you for being here. Appreciate it. Tell Donalyn I said hi.
I certainly will. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Representative, and thank you for being with us today. Seeing no further questions.
Thank you.
Uh, next we'll go back to Jacob Rodriguez, who I believe is now with us.
Yes, I'm here.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Good afternoon, Senator Fonfara, Representative Horn, Senator Fazio, Representative Polita, and members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Jacob Rodriguez, and I am the President of Puerto Yarta Restaurant Group, which operates in eight restaurants across Connecticut in Avon, Danbury, Fairfield, Middletown, Newington, Orange, Southington, and Stamford. I'm here today in strong support of Senate Bill 1460 in that concerning interchange fees on electronic payment transactions. Let me share a little bit about my personal story and why this bill is so important to me and to other small business owners like myself. I am second-generation Latino restaurateur and has been a privilege to carry forward the vision and hard work of my father, who came to this country at just 16 years old from Mexico with $6 in his pocket. He didn't have much, but he had determination and the belief that if he worked hard enough, he could build a better life. After learning the trade and gaining experience, my father opened his first restaurant in Oregon. However, it was when he moved to 1990, after seeing the vast opportunities the state offered, that our truly began to take root. He opened his first restaurant here, and over the years, we expanded into the restaurant group that exists today. The resilience my father showed when starting from nothing is the same resilience I try to show every day as I manage to expand our restaurants. As a restaurant owner slash operator, especially one who oversees multiple locations, I know firsthand how crucial it is to keep costs manageable. Unfortunately, the current system of interchange fees on sales tax collection creates an additional financial burden that significantly impacts our bottom line. These fees imposed by credit card companies and processors are added to every transaction, including the portion of the payment that covers sales tax. While it may seem like a small amount for a business like mine, with high transaction volumes, those fees add up quickly, often in the tens of thousands of dollars per month or hundreds of thousands of dollars per year. My father built our business from the ground up, navigating countless challenges and overcoming obstacles. But the issue of interchange fees is something he and I both struggle with today. Every month, we're charged an additional fee on top of sales tax we collect for the state, which goes directly to credit card companies rather than benefiting our business or the community. It feels like a tax on a tax, and it's a financial drain that offers no value to the transaction or to our, or to our operations. Eliminating these unnecessary fees will provide immediate relief and allow us to reinvest those savings directly into the business. We could hire more employees, improve our operations, and create better experiences for our customers. We could continue to grow, just as my father envisioned when he first opened his restaurant in Connecticut. For small business owners like myself, this bill would level the playing field and give us the opportunity to thrive in a competitive market. By supporting SB 1460, Connecticut would be helping local businesses, just like my father's dream, continue to grow and succeed. It, it's about supporting families who have invested everything to make their businesses succeed, not only for themselves, but for the communities they serve. I strongly urge you to consider the positive impact that this bill will have on small businesses across Connecticut. Thank you for your time and consideration. I welcome any specific questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us today. Seeing no questions at the moment, have a good rest of your day.
Thank you as well.
Jeffrey Mainville.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to address this committee. Hello to my colleagues in the culture and tourism sector, and I'll echo some of the remarks of Morgan and Hope. And thank you to all of our elected representatives and esteemed members of the Connecticut General Assembly. My name is Jeffrey Mainville. I'm the Executive Director at the Noah Webster House in West Hartford. I've been working for museums and libraries in the greater Hartford area for over 20 years, and I'm here today to offer my support in favor of House Bill Number 7176 and in support of tourism. As we ask ourselves, why should we support culture and tourism? I'll just share two specific examples from my own experience. The first is this industry regularly contributes to supporting education in Connecticut. You might recall, of course, we probably all know that Noah Webster is the author of the Blueback Speller and that he spent 22 years of his life writing the American dictionary, the English language. But bear with me, Webster's story goes far beyond that. In 1785, he published Sketches of American Policy, which outlined his vision for a strong federal government. Webster cited the Connecticut Constitution as the most perfect on earth and ideal model to replace the ineffective Articles of Confederation. James Madison, Alexander Hamilton, and George Washington all had copies of Webster's Sketches of American Policy, and almost all of his ideas were incorporated into the United States Constitution in 1789. Now, I share that story specifically to illustrate that cultural organizations enhance our lives far more than you might realize. Yes, we teach American history at the Noah Webster House, but we also teach Connecticut history and civics and government and geography. And the primary source documents that we provide to our teachers in Connecticut contribute to improved reading comprehension and literacy rates and challenge students to flex their vocabulary and their critical thinking skills. That's one reason why it's important to invest in culture and tourism. The Noah Webster House is located in West Hartford, and residents are proud to call him their native son. In fact, the popular Blueback Square in West Hartford is named after Webster's Little Spelling Book. West Hartford is a place that people like to visit, shopping, dining, walking, lots of community events. And the museum contributes to that energy, along with other cultural institutions like Playhouse on Park or the West Hartford Art League. We are part of the fabric of the town and a selling point for folks that like to visit there or maybe even move there. A robust and active Noah Webster House that serves the community is good for the region. You know, our organization and many others that you have heard from and will hear from make a positive impact on the lives of folks in Connecticut and helped make this state a really great place to live. You know, providing unique educational opportunities and supporting our local economy are just some of the examples. But we really can't accomplish our goals and contribute to the success of Connecticut without support. Folks like our friends at the Connecticut-
Three minutes. Please summarize.
Connecticut Humanities Council provides culture and tourism guidance, funding, focus, advocacy, and we count on them to help us achieve a higher standard. Connecticut residents deserve no less. So Noah Webster once stood before this body to ask for help in securing copyright protection, and today we ask for your support of House Bill Number 7176. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there were some little pactoids in there that none of us knew. I certainly did not know, but-
Brighten up your day a little bit, right there.
Thank you for sharing that. Seeing no questions, enjoy the rest of your day. Thanks for being with us. Next up, we have Wendy Vincent.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Wendy Vincent. I'm a resident of East Haddam. I own the Golden Owl Bookstore in New London, and I'm the Executive Director of the Cultural Coalition of Eastern Connecticut, which is a nonprofit with an office in Norwich. I also serve on the Board of Sector, which is the southeastern Connecticut enterprise region. Our mission at the Cultural Coalition is to support the arts, heritage, and cultural communities of Eastern Connecticut, and we represent 42 towns here in eastern Connecticut. Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee, I'm submitting testimony today in support of House Bill 7176 with respect to the need for increased investment in statewide arts, culture, and tourism infrastructure. The Cultural Coalition works hand-in-hand with the Connecticut Office of the Arts, DECD, the Connecticut Office of Statewide Marketing and Tourism, and CT Humanities. Our partners and constituents include individual artists and creatives, museums, theaters, municipalities, historical societies, chambers of commerce, manufacturing and business entities, arts organizations, creative entrepreneurs, and so many more. We work to connect, collaborate, and communicate between sectors to ensure the continued success of Connecticut's ecosystem through workforce development, economic development, education, out-of-state investment, health and wellness, and cultural vibrancy. The Arts and Economic Prosperity Study reveals that nonprofits, arts, and culture sector is a $151.7 billion industry. Now that's nationally. It also supports 2.6 million jobs and generates $29.1 billion in government revenue. The arts and culture sector actually ranks number three nationally, which is above, which is above transportation. And the entire creative sector drives nearly $12 billion to Connecticut's economy, employs 54,000 people, and represents 4% of our GDP. We are, as some of our friends have mentioned earlier, in the arts, culture, and tourism sectors, we're state of makers, from our manufacturers to our individual artists that create the murals that help redevelop our most oppressed municipalities, to the museums and history organizations documenting and educating and preserving the stories of those who made people, who made history here, to the people and families that actually make Connecticut their home and a tourism destination. A strong arts and culture sector attracts tourism, expands the state's tax base, stimulates economic growth, supports jobs, ensures cultural preservation, and promotes community well-being to create a state that is a great place to live, work, and play. Please support this bill, which includes increased funding for these sectors, which bring our communities together through arts and culture, increased creative and innovative economic activity in our downtowns, and increased health and vibrancy. Thank you so much for your time today.
Thank you for being with us. I'm looking over at the representative from East Haddam, Representative Haynes.
Hi, Irene. We live in the same town.
Thank you so much for being here, and thank you for your testimony, Wendy. You've kind of checked every single box, which is so fun. But I was wondering if you could share, if you have them, numbers specifically regarding all those numbers in tourism that relate to Connecticut only. I'm sure the numbers are equally as impressive, but I was wondering if you had those.
Um, I do not have them in front of me, but I do have them and can send them in to you.
Yeah, if you could, that would be great. That way we can share it with the entire committee. We'll send it over to our clerk, and that will be great. But again, thank you for being here. Good to see you. And keep doing the good work. Thank you.
Good to see you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. East Haddam is in the House today.
Yay.
Next up, we have Dario Arezzo.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity today to speak with all of you. My name is Dario Arezzo, and I'm the Chief Financial Services Officer here at Farm Credit East, located in Enfield, Connecticut. We are a farmer-owned cooperative that provides credit and financial services to roughly 18,000 customers in the Northeast. I also, in my role, work directly with farmers in their tax compliance services and preparing their tax returns, and including New York State and Connecticut, as well as other parts of New England here. And I wanted to shed some perspective with my testimony on being involved with New York State for so long. I've helped actually their legislative efforts in crafting the Investment Tax Credit Bill, which I'm here to support, and know that bill very intimately, as well as practically working directly with producers across the state. And what I would like to say is that the Investment Tax Credit, since becoming refundable in 2023, has had a profound effect on the state. Farmers are really encouraged by the policy here and making generational advancements, as some of the former speakers have mentioned, with generational people coming up behind them. They're building for the future with renewed confidence here. And New York State has been very supportive, right, across all parties on providing this support. In addition to other things that they've done for the state, like, you know, they've given property tax credit relief from giving people refunds back on their school taxes and on county and county taxes through different credits as well, alcohol beverage credits. But the biggest impact that they've done in my tenure here at Farm Credit East has been the Investment Tax Credit. So I would, with that, happy to take any questions and certainly offer any insights I'm able to for members of the committee or any policy folks that are in the nitty-gritty on this legislation. And we'll do what it takes to provide any insights on a technical matter that I can for support of the Investment Tax Credit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us. Another speaker earlier referred to you as someone with some knowledge across how various states have handled this. And given what you have seen in other states, are there any suggestions about, you know, what should or shouldn't, you know, how our legislation should be drafted or? Or no, that'd be good.
Yeah, very, very great question, and this is one where it has taken some time, I would say, over the years in New York State regarding the benefactors of the bill. So I'll give you just a very basic example, for instance. The bill looks at farm income. So very simply, that means farmers report their income on what's known as Schedule F. Think of, think of a winery and a vineyard. The vineyard part would qualify as a farm activity, but the winery would be known as a Schedule C kind of operating production business. And so over the years, you know, looking at New York State, they've included other industries that they felt were important to the state that didn't necessarily qualify for the federal farming rules, like wineries, cideries, for example, commercial horse boarding operations. And maybe the only thing that I would offer would be, depending on how you craft the legislation, who you want to benefit, it may be technically requiring different components of what is eligible to be considered farming. You know, for example, when you get into that processing activity, a couple of folks mentioned earlier, that's where, again, certain rules will need to be crafted, depending on how you write the legislation to make those activities eligible.
Great, thank you. That's helpful. Seeing no other question? Thanks for sharing that with us.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Nick Foster.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Nick Foster. I'm the Director of the Wilton Historical Society in Wilton, Connecticut, as well as the President of the Board of Trustees for the Connecticut League of Museums and a resident of Wilton. I'm speaking today in support of House Bill Number 7176 with respect to the need for increased investment in statewide arts, culture, and tourism infrastructure. Arts and culture institutions like mine are vital parts of our communities, not only as mission-driven organizations that support and educate our audiences, but as businesses that employ residents and impact our local- but as businesses that employ residents and impact our local economy. We've heard some macro statistics today, um, but I'll give you an example of the impact that it has in my organization. In twenty twenty-three, my museum was fortunate enough to receive two grants from Connecticut Humanities, one for a new exhibition and another to subsidize free visitation for children during the summer. Both gifts, gifts totaled just over ten thousand dollars, which completely transformed the museum and parts of the town over several months. First, much of that funding immediately went back to businesses in our local community with paint tools and supplies purchased from our local hardware store, crafting materials from the art store down the street, uh, graphics from their print shop in Bridgeport, and an ad purchase in Good Morning Wilton, which supported local journalism. These dollars were not just an investment in us, but also direct investment in the small businesses that surround us. By making the museum and that new exhibition free and accessible, we saw a sixty-seven percent increase in visitation compared to our pre-pandemic numbers, with visitors not only from Wilton, but all across Connecticut and from New York State as well. This doesn't include the high school classes who were able to join us for day-long field trips to engage with the exhibition, which was focused on historic examples of civic engagement, infrastructure development, and community activism. As a historian and educator, it's hard to accurately describe how good it feels to have dozens of high schoolers tell you, telling you how awesome your museum is and then seeing them weeks later when they visit on their own. Right now, I actually have stepped away from approximately seventy-five fifth graders who are visiting the museum on a field trip, which is hard to do, but in fact, it was all made possible by the funding that allows me to have skilled staff um, and to purchase supplies to make that field trip possible, not to mention many dedicated volunteers who believe in the mission and want to be a unique and valuable resource for our local school system. As President of the Connecticut League of Museums, I can say that this is not a unique scenario. Um, for us, this is an example of how funding can impact all across the state to museums like mine. Um, I've seen it countless times, organizations big and small, and I'm proud to be a Connecticut native who've been able to stay close to home, to live and work here, making an impact in a field that I and so many others care deeply about. I urge you to support House Bill seven seven, uh, seven one seven six so that our states can, museums can continue to flourish with the support of the Connecticut Humanities, Connecticut League of Museums, and all the funding that makes it possible. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks for being with us and, and reminding us what people miss out on when they decide to come to Hartford to testify. So, Representative Constantine.
Hey Nick, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Oh, pretty good. Uh, thank you for coming up and representing Wilton Historic Society. It's a jewel in Wilton and on the lower Route Seven uh corridor, at least up until you get to the Milford area, I believe. You mentioned the Connecticut Humanities Grants and what a huge effect it had on Wilton Historic Society, on the kids who are able to participate, and on the town. So I just wanted to point out to everybody that the Wilton Humanity, uh, the Connecticut Humanities Fund that does so much of this, um, half of it is coming from the federal government, uh, which is under threat. So I think it's more important than ever that we here in Connecticut honor, um, you know, do what we can on the arts and humanities. But can you tell us, um, what would you do with future funds?
Uh, so many different things. Um, you know, we are a, a collection. We have eighteen historic buildings that we care for. Um, so funding, we actually sometimes receive state funding for preserving those buildings. Um, they're a big part of sort of making the culture of the community. Um, it helps me pay my staff. Um, we can only do what we do because we have, you know, professional people with professional skills that want to stay here in Connecticut and use those skills. Um, but it's even small things like paying for programming. Um, you know, we see, I would say, uh, over the course of the year, almost a thousand, um, school kids, um, and they need interactive things to do, and paying for supplies is such a vital part of that. So it really is, you know, museums are really good, nonprofits are really good at turning small dollar amounts into something really impactful. Um, and I think you alluded to it before when we have sort of uncertain, um, funding sources, uh, looking at us right now, both at the national level, but also just philanthropically with, uh, you know, an unstable, uh, stock market, philanthropic dollars tend to go away as well. Um, so having state funding like this to go to Connecticut Humanities Council, to go to the Connecticut League of Museums, helps museums sort of weather the storm and also pay from, you know, everything from our insurance bill going up sixteen percent in the last year to, you know, those fifty dollars of, of craft supplies that are going to really impact a third grader's, uh, day. Um, so it, it really is a diverse, um, thing that the money goes to.
So just one follow-up question, since I only have two. Um, can you talk about kind of the cost increases you've seen in the last year, two years, um, budgetary wise?
Yeah, our, our expenses have gone up almost a hundred thousand dollars since twenty twenty. Um, a lot of that is due to, uh, just inflationary trends. Um, some of that is due to, as I mentioned before, we have a lot of historic structures, um, insurance and maintenance for that has only gone up. You know, staffing costs, cost of living in Connecticut, it being what it is, we want to make sure that we're paying fair wages, um, to our staff. Um, and I can say as a nonprofit, we're not exactly in this fortune and glory, um, we're in it because we, we love the mission. So yeah, we, we've seen almost a fifteen and twenty percent increase in the last five years as far as just the cost of doing business. So any way that we can find funding to, uh, you know, offset that as much as we can, um, it only makes our lives a little bit easier. Um, but in what is currently a, a somewhat uncertain, um, future as far as where our funding is coming from, so.
Thank you, Representative. No other questions? Thanks again for being with us. Say hi to the fifth. Next up, we have Seth Baller. Welcome.
Hello.
Welcome.
Uh, thank you for your, the opportunity to speak today. I am Seth Baylor. I am an Ellington farmer and a fifth generation farmer. I am from Ellington, which was once called the milkiest mile in America. There was more dairy farms in Ellington, Connecticut than anywhere else in the country. That was back in the nineteen thirties. Today, there's us and one other farm, and we both, uh, struggled to, to make a living in Connecticut. It's, it's been a challenge, and there's less than a hundred dairy farms in the state. We produce about twenty percent of the milk in Connecticut at our farm, so we produce about twenty-five thousand gallons a day. Um, but that's not even fifty percent of the milk needs that is in the state. Us farmers in Connecticut, we can't produce enough milk, and we get about fifty percent of our milk shipped in from out of state, from New York, other, other, um, states bringing the milk. So that said, I think I want to hit that you heard a lot about farming, but I want to hit on three key areas, um, to be competitive, and that's really where our challenge is right now. This bill HB seven one seven five would definitely help us farmers, and I think being competitive in the world that we're in, um, we our, our price is set on a supply and demand on a world market, and we have to produce milk and our price is set, so we don't have any opportunity to set our milk price. So we're competing with the rest of the country. We, we benchmark to an Iowa farm. Their tax bill for real estate tax is eight thousand dollars. My tax bill in Ellington is over two hundred thousand dollars a year. Massachusetts farmers, we have a part of the CIA fund, we get a subsidy through Connecticut. Massachusetts farmers get four times what we get in Connecticut. So, you know, we got Iowa, we got Massachusetts. New York has this bill, I work with a lot of farmers in New York, they're building and growing, and their, their farms are thriving in dairy. Um, and they're growing and, and expanding their farms, which makes Connecticut less competitive. So I think we have like a couple issues here where we need to invest to our, our farmers or the state help would be great, um, but it's really competitive, a Food Security Act, and really, I think my last point is any dollar that is given to a farmer is a stimulus. It's not, it's not a credit, it's a stimulus because we are investing back into our farms. Like I said, I'm fifth generation. Um, we've invested millions of dollars over the past ten years, and we plan to continue, but it has been a hard, uh, hard industry, and we are, all we're doing is trying to produce safe and healthy food for our community. So appreciate your time, and I'll welcome any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for being with us today. I think it's really important for us to hear the specifics of, of, you know, the kinds of expenses that farmers across the state are experiencing. So I'm really grateful for you sharing that with us today. Representative Wood.
Hi, um, thank you very much for being here. I, I'm gonna do something strange and kind of ask a question to the world, and maybe some of the committee members can help. Um, we passed a bill out of this committee that's law now, which allows municipalities to give up to a twenty-year tax abatement. Would that apply to farmers? I'm just thinking out loud because your tax bill is crazy to me compared to our neighbors. Um, and we could probably do something in statute to make sure that farms are included in that. So we're, we're gonna do our homework and get back to you.
All right.
But thank you for bringing that to our, um, attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Wood. Seeing almost no further questions. Thanks again for being with us today.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have John Heath.
Good afternoon, uh, Co-Chairs Fonfarra and Horn, Vice Chairs, uh, Cabrera, Miller, Constantine, Raider, and Ranking Members, uh, Fazio and Paletta, uh, members of the, uh, Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. Uh, thank you for the opportunity.
Hello, Rep. How are you?
Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify, uh, in respectful, uh, opposition of HB five ninety-three. My name is John A. Heath, and I am, uh, the Senior Manager of Government Relations and External Affairs for Turo, uh, which is the world's peer-to-peer car-sharing leader. Uh, you have my written testimony and supporting documents. Uh, I want to say that, uh, I have an acute understanding of where you all sit as a legislature in trying to address, uh, very large budget deficits. I've been a senior advisor to a governor eliminating a one point six billion dollar deficit. I know what it is to be a committee staffer and also a staffer for a Senate president. Um, but I want to give you some key takeaways, uh, from, uh, our position as a company as relates to HB five nine eight three. Uh, first of all, uh, uh, you will note that, uh, our taxation uh, was settled during the bill that was passed in twenty twenty-one, uh, which established peer-to-peer car sharing separate from rental. That was also established with a guidance from DRS. Uh, HB five nine eighty-eighty-three also adds another tax, uh, to your constituents that pay sales tax uh, when they purchase their vehicles, uh, uh, at, uh, um, dealerships and, uh, other uh, entities as they purchase cars in the state. Uh, those folks also pay property tax as well. And as the only peer-to-peer car-sharing program, um, this, uh, measure would probably add north to three hundred or north of rather, three hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, to the state's coffers compared to the eighty-eight point seven million dollars, uh, that the state, uh, loses out on with the rental car tax loophole. Um, simply put, uh, one may look at this as looking for coins in a cushion rather than big cash in a couch. Uh, that is my testimony. I'm certainly open for any, uh, questions that the committee may have.
Thank you, and thank you for being here today. And I know there's a similar bill also heard at Transportation Committee, so there's multiple committees wrestling with this. I wanted to ask you whether there's been some disparity in terms of whether the nine and thirty-five hundred percent tax applies to you or not, and I have some DRS guidance here, which suggests that, you know, basically with respect to the rental or leasing of passenger motor vehicle for a period of thirty consecutive calendar days or less, uh, the nine and, you know, point three five percent applies to you. Is that your position or what's your position?
No, that's not our position. And when we came to the agreement, uh, on the taxation that, uh, the, uh, fact that constituents pay those taxes, sales tax upfront, that's where the spread, uh, came about. Uh, you'll find also with your colleagues in other, uh, states like Illinois, Nevada, Oklahoma, they recognize that. And so if an individual pays sales tax upfront, they're at that six point three five percent threshold. Let's say they're individuals that maybe do some bulk purchase or somehow don't pay the sales tax upfront, then that nine point three five would apply.
Thank you. Representative Paletta.
Thank you so much. It was a pleasure to meet you prior, and I think, uh, you know, everyone here, I can speak for probably everyone on the panel that, you know, we're on a fact-finding mission. I think there's been a lot of, uh, debate on both sides of this, and it's, um, it's, uh, beneficial to us to hear from all of you. Uh, in terms of your business, how many hosts do you roughly have in the state of Connecticut? Are you aware or?
Rep, I can get back to you on that. We, we went through a period of embargoed, uh, information.
Sure.
But I can get back to you with the number of hosts
Okay.
that we do have, uh, in the state. But what I can tell you is what we collect and remit is somewhere around six hundred and thirty-four, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for the state.
Okay. Thank you. That helps us kind of determine the footprint here and going forward. So I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Wood.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Heath. Really great to see you again.
Good to see you.
So if I understand, when the peer-to-peer car sharing, um, went into place in the state, the taxation piece was part of that negotiation.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and, um, who, who and why would this bill become, be coming up? Is there, um, some opposition from certain industries?
Sure. Well, I think the, the big rental generally supports these kind of measures. Um, I, I don't understand why there's always the needling, if you will, but this is usually what we find. Uh, I, I have uh, quite a responsibility around the country, so I see this quite often. And so generally, this, uh, comes from big rental.
Okay, so this is common, this type of animosity. And do the, um, the rental companies, um, pay taxes on their fleets?
Uh, no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Uh, seeing no further questions. Thanks again for being with us.
Thank you so much, and, uh, it's good always to be home, uh, in my hometown.
Uh, next up, we have Wayne Pashin.
Good afternoon. Getting late in the day. I think we're about the fifth or sixth group to come up and, and talk to you about Senate Bill fourteen sixty. Uh, hopefully we can add just a little bit more information and a bit of a different spin in terms of what you heard and, and, uh, try to keep it as concise and, uh, not be redundant, um, for everybody's time here. So I appreciate you all hanging in late in the day. Um, couple things. Four point six billion dollars in retail sales taxes are collected by Connecticut merchants every year. Think of that number, let that sink in. It's four point six billion. That is the second largest amount of revenue that comes into the state after state income taxes. You've got thousands of retailers collecting those sales taxes on behalf of the state. And what makes this egregious, in my opinion, is that almost every other state in the country has some form of remuneration for these merchants for collecting these sales tax on behalf of the state of the Connecticut. We are authorized by this state to collect those taxes, and there is no remuneration on the backend for doing it. And the costs associated with doing it is just going up and up and up based on the fact that the fees are going up and the amount of people who use these cards is going up. Doing business in Connecticut with the labor costs, the energy costs, and the operational cost to run a brick and mortar business in the state is only getting more difficult. And we ask you to make a decision to take that money on the state sales tax from the, the credit card processors and put it back into the businesses of the state. I'm gonna pass my, the rest of the testimony over to Molly Devaney from Highland Park Markets and.
May I ask, are you signed up to testify today? Okay. I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Sure, Molly Devaney.
Molly Devaney, great.
Sorry, Representative Horn. Yeah, we were doubling up in terms of time, so I'm, I'm just gonna hand off the ball to Molly now.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the Honorable Members of the Finance Committee. My name is Molly Devaney, and I'm part of the third generation of my family to run Highland Park Market, which is a local independent grocery business with stores in Manchester, Glastonbury, and Farmington. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony on Senate Bill fourteen sixty, which seeks to address the growing burden of credit card swipe fees on Connecticut businesses and consumers. As a family-oriented grocery store, we operate on slim margins, working every day to keep prices competitive while providing, uh, high-quality service to our communities. One of the most significant and uncontrollable costs that we face is the ever-increasing credit card swipe fees charged by major card networks and their partner banks. These fees These fees, which have more than doubled over the past decade, now represent one of our highest operating expenses, second only to labor. Think back to shopping when you were a young person, when you were a young family, going into the grocery store. I remember when I started in the business at 14, we used so many, we saw checks and cash. Now, at least 85% of the business in our stores is credit and debit cards. Unlike rent or supply costs, we have absolutely no ability to negotiate these fees. Every time a consumer swipes a credit card or debit card, we're charged a fee that eats into our already-thin margins. In 2023 alone, US merchants paid over $160 billion in swipe fees, with grocery stores shouldering a substantial portion of that burden. These fees are particularly frustrating because they're assessed not just on the cost of goods, but also on the cost of taxes that were required to collect on behalf of the state. That means Connecticut businesses are being charged a fee to collect tax revenue to the government. It's just an unnecessary added expense. This issue is not just about businesses. It directly impacts consumers. When swipe fees increase, we're forced to make difficult decisions within our businesses. Do we raise prices? Do we reduce services? Or do we cut back on employee hours? At a time when families across Connecticut are already struggling, with higher-cost unchecked swipe fees only make everyday necessities more expensive. These rising costs have a direct effect on our employment decisions, limiting our ability to hire, staff, and retain and keep our prices, focusing on some, deciding whether to focus on some of these, adding on those expenses to consumers. Small businesses like ours are disproportionately affected by these fees because we lack the negotiating power of large corporations. Unlike major retail chains that can absorb costs more easily, independent businesses operate on razor-thin margins and have fewer options to offset these financial streams. If we want to preserve Connecticut's small-business community, we need to address these excessive fees that threaten our ability to compete, to serve our customers. Senate Bill 1460, excuse me, is a crucial step in addressing these issues by prohibiting credit card companies from applying swipe fees to state and local taxes. This common-sense measure ensures businesses are not...
You have just five minutes if you could please summarize.
Sure. This bill will not eliminate the burden of swipe fees, but it's a meaningful step toward fairness and transparency in credit card processing. And I urge this committee to support Senate Bill 1460 to provide relief to businesses and consumers across Connecticut. Thank you.
I wish we could take a whack at the bigger issue here, but we are a state government and not the federal government, so we have some challenges here. Representative Zupkus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We were sitting here, and I'm hoping I'm gonna ask this right. If not, my good representative next to me might jump in. So this bill is looking to have the Connecticut sales tax removed from the processing fee, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Does, who sets the processing fee?
The bank. The bank or the institution.
Okay, so when you enter into a contract for these fees with this institution, it's in the contract what they're going to...
Correct.
...charge you. Okay. Does the state of Connecticut get any money from those processing fees? Or does it go all back to...
All back to the processors.
So there's $100 in groceries that are sold, and then there's a sales tax on top of that, right? What happens is, is the state gets the benefit of the sale of the $100, and then the sales tax, there's also a fee on top of that, which is paid directly by the merchant.
Yeah, so it's one fee for the whole, the...
The entire transaction.
The entire transaction.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative Constantine.
Hi. Thank you so much for, thank you, Madam Chair. Wayne, you had mentioned that Connecticut's one of the only handful of states that both charges a sales tax and does not offer renumeration. I know you're Connecticut Food Association. Do you have any information on what other states do regarding renumeration?
So actually, I'll share that with the committee at some point, probably on Monday. I'm guessing maybe tomorrow I'll work, but it is St. Patrick's Day weekend. But yeah, there's a whole list of what states do in terms of how they handle sales tax renumeration. So I can get that to you by state, and every single state is different. Some states limit it to a percent and a half. Some states give it a flat fee rate. Every state does it differently. But I would tell you, I'm pretty sure it's 36 states offer some renumeration to their retail merchants for the collection of these sales tax, and I think it's only 14 that don't. So I will follow up with the committee and get you a by-state view of how states offer renumeration for the collection of sales tax from retail merchants.
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Representative Barry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you both for being here. Molly, you know you're another Glastonbury gem here today. Did you say that swipe fees were your second-largest cost after labor?
Yes, that's correct. So energy or less, it's amazing when you talk about swipe fees and how much we pay for them.
Do you know how much you pay in a month or in a year?
I have the number. I can get, I'll get it to you. It's staggering. So this would help us, in one store alone, it would help us, $15,000 a month, so.
Okay. Wow. All right. Thank you. Thank you both for being here.
And can I just, I'd just like to add one more comment in terms of those numbers and what those numbers mean in terms of a P&amp;L on a business, right? So our ability to either maintain staff or invest in our businesses is really going to pay for swipe fees at this point. Because again, I don't think you, we've only done this bill twice. This bill came up last year for the first time, and this committee passed this bill last year for, because it was pretty simple in terms of, do we give this money back to the merchants who are collecting it on behalf of the state? And let the merchants keep the bulk of that sale? Because they do get 97% of the sale to put the fee on anyway. And so this is acute at this point only because of the amount of transactions and people going contactless in terms of payment. So it's much different today than it was even five years ago. Thank you. Thank you, Representative Horn, for letting me kind of...
Thank you. And if any further information that you just discussed with Representative Barry, just make sure to provide it to our committee clerk so that we can share it amongst the committee. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi. So we're still over here debating, so. So if you would, you as retailers and anybody else in here who has been talking about this bill are using, taking credit cards because it's easier. You get more sales that way, correct?
No. No. First of all, the gentleman who spoke early from the Credit Card Processing Center who said that people didn't want cash, do you know how long merchants in the state of Connecticut wouldn't take a credit card for because of the costs associated with it? But what's happening is, is it's progressing. The markets progressed. You don't have a choice. There's a wonderful pizza chain called Vinnie's Pizza. There's several of them around the area. We go there all the time. Didn't take credit cards for years, forever. But you know what? Consumers forced it because they're not carrying cash anymore. And now you have no choice as a merchant but to submit to credit card transactions. Look at what the fuel companies did. The fuel companies, and Christian, who's following me, can explain this a lot better. But because these fees are so onerous to those businesses, they charge extra to use the card. So the cost of the, to the business to make the transaction is turning to a point where it's part of your P&amp;L now. And it's really a burden to the business, and it doesn't matter what size the business is.
And we understand that. We see that. I guess what we're having difficulty here is, at least our debate, little debate in the corner, is that how do we step in the middle of a contract that you have with the merchant services? The state doesn't regulate those fees in such a way. We, it's a contract that you've decided as a business, and I'm just playing devil's advocate here. Believe me, I don't want this to be onerous on you. I go to a place for breakfast that doesn't take cards, period. It's cash-only. That's it. But it's a small place, and you know, the amount of dollars that they take in is probably not a lot. But my point being, our point being, is that you're asking us through this bill to make a change to a contract that you have in your business alone, not you alone. But I mean, it's a contract between a business owner and a credit card company. How do we go in there and tell the credit card company to charge less?
I think it's just prohibiting the ability of that processing company to count the sales tax as part of the collection. So you would basically back out the sales tax portion of that, and they would be allowed to, you know, take that fee for the sale of the good and the service and not be allowed to take it for the actual collection of the sales tax. You know, again, these bills, there's only one bill, and Representative Horn, you had mentioned Illinois. It's interesting about Illinois, both sides actually claim victory there. Kind of strange, if you ask me. But at the end of the day, I will say to this committee, we are in uncharted territory, Representative Haines, in terms of how we might do this, right? Because again, there's movement on the federal side of this bill. There's movement in Tennessee. Colorado passed it out of committee last night, I've been told. Illinois has passed a bill. So we're in uncharted waters in terms of legislating this type of processing exclusion for a merchant. And some of it may have to be sorted out in the courts. But it's a real problem in terms of our ability to operate our businesses at this point. And we're asking for some relief as entities that collect billions of dollars on behalf of the state. Right? So think about it this way. If I'm Utah and I'm getting 3% back already for doing this work, it may not be as critical to me as in a state like Connecticut where we're paying all of these processing fees and having to buy new pin pants and all that, and there's zero renumeration. So I think it's a little bit different here as well in terms of a sense of urgency.
Representative Zupkus.
Thank you for the last time. Thank you. Because I was, again, we were just sitting here, and we certainly cannot compare ourselves to Utah, if it's state. So, but you know, and I have, you know, my husband has his own business. I understand the burdensome to do business in this state, for sure. It is expensive, and every time we turn around, there's a new mandate or a new burden on small businesses. So I completely understand. But if I was a credit card company in this past, why wouldn't they up their fees on the other end? And then you're gonna have to deal with that, I guess. So if they did that, you could always choose to contract with them or not, just as you can now, right?
So we've seen 40% increases since 2020 anyway, so okay, how, you know, what do you want to do there? And then I think the other thing, some of this goes back to the federal legislation around transparency around these companies. So they're almost different conversations in terms of, oh, well, why are you charging me that? And how can you charge me that versus, oh, we're raising our rates again? So if you look from 2019 to 2025, there's been a 40% increase in terms of the rate that the banks are charging for the fees on the processing.
Thank you. And I do understand the burden of doing business here, without a doubt, and how it is difficult to keep your businesses open. So I'm just trying to figure out the whole process here with this, but I do understand.
Well, I ask you to give Greg my best.
It would be, it would be, it would be wonderful if we could collect all cash, but I think just unfortunately, we're not in that day and age. And I think also too, if you have cash coming into the stores at all, there's a security issue when you have many elderly people that are carrying cash with them. And it's a nightmare. It really is, no matter what. So thank you for listening to us today. We really appreciate it.
Representative Yaccarino.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll be really quick. And thank you both for testifying. I've owned my own business for 34 years. My family's had a business since I was, before I was born. I remember that when I was a teenager, using the credit card, your actual little box, and you swipe it. I've always taken credit cards because it generates much more business, to be honest with you. I've never, you know, I don't have a problem with it. What I'm trying to wrap my head around is you pay your sales tax. How do I, you have to segregate what was taxable and what's not. How am I gonna capture? And I've asked my accountant, who's a tremendous CPA, he has no, there's, how do you capture? How do I get that money back? And then to one of the representatives' points, I can almost guarantee, and I'm not saying it's right, but the banking industry or the credit card processing company, and I'd use the same company that are very good. I don't like to switch around. How do you, they'll just somehow raise the fee somewhere, unfortunately, I think. Or like, I have a Clover, and I have my fees, but I also have a set price for the Clover every month. I own it, but you still have to have some sort of, so what they did is, because I do business with them for years, I pay the lowest possible rate as possible. So how do I segregate if I do $10,000 in sales tax? How do I get the money I'm not back?
I'll take a moment. Well, first of all, sales tax is separate from the actual...
Right. My pain, the state remitting $7,000, $10,000. How do I remit, how do I capture or segregate that 6.35% back? And that's, there's always a rounding area when you have 3.5%. How do I get that? I'd love to do this. I just don't know how I'm gonna get it back.
Yeah, that's all data that's captured. You know, the rebate process that we had talked about seems like it would be the right fix for this. On our credit cards and transactions that come through the register now, there's already a difference in the receipt, right? So if you see their receipt with the tax with the state of Connecticut, there's also the restaurant tax that's on there when you're in a grocery store.
Yeah, not a restaurant, yeah.
So yeah, well, you have that. All that data is captured. And the rebate program seems like it would be the best thing for us to work with.
And then the state, or who would send me the check back? Or they just direct deposit? Because I direct deposit my sales tax every month.
So we could do direct deposit. We could do whatever would be the right way, either way.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative, I think we should circle back with you, however, individually, and have some conversations. We don't want to confuse anybody about this either, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Representative Constantine.
Sorry, not to belabor. I mean, we're already after 3 o'clock, and there's quite a few more people to testify. Quick question, because you mentioned how they moved from cash, obviously, from, let's say, 20 years ago to almost the exclusive use of cards. What do you think of the retailers who are passing along that charge to the consumers, let's say, on a 3% credit card fee?
Not able to in Connecticut. I was recently shopping in Southern California back in December, and they actually do put a surcharge on a credit card purchase, not allowable in the state of Connecticut.
Thank you for clarifying. I was trying to remember. I've been traveling a lot, so I know I've seen it many times. But I just couldn't remember.
Won't see it here or in Massachusetts, Representative.
Thank you. I think you've exhausted the questions on the committee.
Thank you so much. No, we know it's late in the day, and we are so grateful for your time. Thank you all.
Next up, we have Chris Herb.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Herb. I'm the President of the Connecticut Energy Marketers Association. We represent 600 small, family-owned fuel retailers that serve over half the homes in Connecticut with HVAC services. Our motor fuels members own, operate, and distribute fuel to over 1,000 convenience stores throughout the state. We're here in support of Senate Bill 1460. For those of you who know me, I've been doing this about 24 years, and you know I'm a really simple person. So a lot of complicated testimony was given. It seems to distract from what the bill actually does, which I think we should get focused back in on. But I'll just start by saying, why are we here? In 1979, the legislature divorced vertically-integrated refiners from owning and operating gas stations. So these, when you go into a Mobil station or a Shell or a Valero, they are typically owned by a very small, family-owned business that we represent. About 80% of our customers pay with some form of card, debit or credit card. I've heard testimony today that I'd like to just, and I've submitted and written, I just want to address some of the questions that have been asked that I think could cause confusion. Number one, it is absolutely correct that the state prohibits charging surcharges for credit. So when you see a cash price offered at a gas station about 15 years ago, when gasoline prices exceeded $4 because of the geopolitical events that were occurring at that time, we came to you and said, we need to be able to provide relief and get people away from credit cards, which further... which further punished the price. And this committee at that time allowed us to go to the cash credit pricing. So we give a discount for cash, which is is allowed under the law specifically. So we're not charging a surcharge for credit. We have a regular price and then you have a discount for cash. That's the first one. The other one that I I wanted to address is the is the question about, I think that was, we were asked over here regarding, lost it. Oh, so 15 years ago, when prices rose, this legislature was very concerned about the gross earnings tax effect on gasoline prices and fuel prices as they exceeded $3. So we capped it. All of our contractual relationships with with our processors at that time were interfered with because the state decided to make a change. So I would say that this is not setting a precedent. This state often, over the quarter century or so that I've been coming here, makes changes that interferes with our business relationships that requires to retool them. So I don't, I I wouldn't be concerned as a policymaker that the decisions that you have before you today on this bill is going to somehow affect that. And like I said, I'm simple. I I don't know a lot about the exact details. I think you got a lot of really good answers from the people who actually own businesses and have to deal with this. But I would just like to leave you with that, that what this is, is they're not going to make less money. You've had institutions come here and say, we're going to be, we're going to make less. They're actually.
You have the 30 minutes, please summarize.
They're still going to make money on the transaction. They just make it on a price that's a little bit lower, which saves the business a little bit money that in our industry will be passed along likely to the to the end user because of the intense competition of 1,000 retailers. So I would encourage you to vote positively on this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Reader.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I probably should have asked this to the the previous testifier, but I felt like we needed to get moving on. Maybe you can answer this question. I was just asking my colleague about this. So a lot of us use Apple Pay, you know, it's on our phones and it's connected to either our credit or debit card. So this really goes to debit cards. I'm just curious, how do banks look at the debit card transaction versus a credit card transaction? And does Apple Pay come into play in any way in terms of those fees? Does it get just processed through Apple Pay as another bank? I'm just curious if you if you know this offhand.
Sure. I I wish I was a millennial, knew more about Apple Pay.
Yeah, I know. Me too. Me too. That's why I'm asking the question.
I have cash in my wallet, actually. My my understanding of it is, is that anytime you have to enter into these processing networks, there are fees associated with it. Some are more expenses, have you heard, from cards that carry programs with them where you get points back and things like that? Debit tends to be less expensive. I'm not sure where Apple Pay falls into that. I just know that once we start using their networks, there's fees associated with it. That's why sometimes we get accused of, you know, isn't debit free? Well, debit is not free. And you see that Visa, Mastercard, or NICE, or all the different, there's fees associated with that and it's built into the cost of the product that you're buying.
So you don't see it, okay, so for example, I'll go to the gas station and I'll use my Apple Pay and I'll just hold it up and it's connected to my debit card. But you just see that as a credit card transaction, but you're saying that because it's debit, it's just you're charged a little bit less because it's not as protected.
Typically, that is correct.
The credit card company is not protecting that transaction as fiercely as it is the credit card.
Yeah, you're you're still using the same toll road to get there, right? Whether it's a debit card or a credit card. And Apple Pay, going back to that form of payment, still gets on that toll road, so the fees have to be paid.
Right, right. No, I kind of knew the answer, but I just wanted you to confirm that. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions. Thanks for being with us. Next up, we have Wesley Brulick.
Good afternoon, leadership and members of the Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Thank you so much for your time here today. My name is Wesley Brulick and I'm a resident of Weathersfield. And I serve as producing artistic director of Times Fool Company, which is a nonprofit professional theater company in Weathersfield with a focus on accessibility. We are a theater without walls and we believe in imagination without limits. And we believe that art is a human right and cost should not be an obstacle to attending professional theater. Theater should be for everyone. 23% of our audience is under the age of 18. And for many of those kids, our productions are the first professional plays they've seen or their first Shakespeare. Over half our audience is from outside of Weathersfield and folks regularly attend from as far away as the Berkshires. Our professional union artists serve thousands each year. And our events are either free, like our Summer Shakespeare, or pay what you can. Now that means I have to raise a lot of money and write a lot of grants to pay our artists equitably, fairly, and hire union artists. I also serve as the chairperson for Economic Development and Improvements Commission in the town of Weathersfield. I am submitting testimony today in favor of House Bill 7176 with respect to the need for increased investment in statewide arts, culture and tourism infrastructure. I believe that the arts are a cornerstone of economic development. If you want to transform Main Street, the arts are a proven way to do it. Now, people ask me all the time, how are the arts economic development? I could reply with numbers and statistics and data, and I'm happy to share such things. But I prefer to talk about the people we serve. Just ask our local shopkeepers how their businesses are impacted when we hold an event. Try getting a table at the Charles or Lucky Lou's or get in line to get a slice at Village Pizza or a space at the bar at Old Town. Just two weeks ago, we held our first Stories on Main event at Heirloom Market. Now, this is a Moth-style storytelling event. And I asked the owners of Heirloom Market if we could use their establishment and they said, sure, and asked how many? And I said, about 20 people, I think. Well, I was wrong. We had to turn people away and their establishment was at capacity for fire code. What could have been a quiet, sleepy night in February turned into the biggest day of the month with our storytellers sharing their true tales of love in all its form. Now, we can't do what we do without help from agencies like Connecticut Humanities and the Office of the Arts. We've received funding from both and Times Fool Company has been a recipient of a Good to Great Grant. And we are grateful for this essential assistance. Essential because we have very little earned income in the effort to make art accessible to all. And a bill like this could be transformative for an organization such as ours and serving the public for its betterment and benefit. There's so much data to show how art changes lives and transforms communities. But we can't do it without help and without significant arts and culture funding. Personally, I believe the arts and culture and theater is one of the last bastions of true democracy. It's one of the last places where in our fractured world, folks can sit side by side with different ideologies and gather and watch their collective humanity reflected back at them from the stage. Thank you so much for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for being with us today and sharing that perspective. It really matters. We glad glad to have you. Seeing no questions? Sorry, Rep. Wood. I lied. Seeing a question?
Hey, Wes, thank you so much for your testimony. Can you also just elaborate on the guests that come during the summer? Are they required to pay anything to watch your theater?
No, they are not. We are completely free during the summer. We legitimately pass the hat at the end. But people pay nothing. And that's kind of the point. It it should be, when you look at our audiences, you'll see people all the way from grandparents down to grandkids. And what's great about it is because it's free, people can take a chance and try something new. They don't have to get a sitter. They don't have to shuttle their kids off. They can all go together as a true community event.
Thank you. That was really important for us to hear because, you know, you offering this service basically is filling up the restaurants in the area. It's having people visit the cultural attractions. They're stopping in to get an ice cream. So it's benefiting so many different aspects of the downtown, not just culture and tourism, but retail and hospitality as well. So thanks for sharing your story with us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Representative. Thanks for being here. Next up, we have Bob Mara. And if you could introduce anyone who's seated with you and whether or not they're signed up to testify.
Absolutely. It's nice to see some familiar faces too as well. Thank you. Right next to me is the president of our organization, Ms. Camaro. So basically, what I what I've heard amongst legislation is there's a rumor that says third time is the charm. So we're here again and we're going to try this just one more time, or maybe a few more times. We'll see what happens. Good afternoon, Distinguished Finance, Revenue, Bonding Committee members. My name is Bob Mara and I am operations manager at Hartford-based Edna Ambulance Service. My written testimony has been submitted in support of HB 7176. Edna Ambulance has been dedicated to serving the city and its surrounding communities for the past, this year is going to be our 80th year in in the city of Hartford. Our team is approximately 160 EMTs and paramedics and they are committed to providing high-quality care to the patients that we serve every day. This longstanding partnership with the state highlights the importance of this legislation, which seeks to exempt ambulance-type vehicles and ambulances from sales tax. This exemption is critical to support emergency medical services, particularly during challenging times and this years of rising costs. For the past three sessions, I've come before this committee with a similar request and each time you have responded with a joint favorable report and I appreciate that. I returned today to emphasize the continued importance of this request to exempt ambulance-type vehicles and ambulances from sales tax. The rising course of vehicle purchases, which this year has increased approximately 30% to purchase one, fuel and maintenance place a significant financial strain on all ambulance providers in the state. Acquiring an ambulance is one of the most critical expenses for EMS organization and this tax exemption would provide a modest but meaningful incentive for organizations that might delay purchasing new or replacement vehicles. While I recognize the importance of tax revenue to the state and the need to meet budgetary requirements, this exemption is a small but meaningful step in supporting the effectiveness of our frontline healthcare. We respectfully urge the committee to consider and endorse this bill once again. Thank you for your time and I'm available to answer, or we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Do you have, and I may have asked you this question in the past, but I wonder whether it's even possible for you to quantify what this tax exemption would enable you to do?
Is, yeah, you answered that, you asked that last year. Last year was more of a staffing and educational aspect to what we were going to use the money for. This year, I would say that amongst everybody that we've been listening today, the rising costs of fuel, the rising costs of supplies, a typical, a typical scenario for cardiac arrest is roughly, is roughly, has been about $1,800 per call. Now it's up to about $2,800 per call. For for an ambulance to actually go on a call went from about $75 to now it's about $100 per call. So, yeah, the 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 amount of money saved, because we, this year we bought about 10 ambulances. It's not a huge amount of money, but it is a small amount that 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 can support little little things that have that have increased over the years, about budgetary expenses that are just, that are continually going up.
Thank you. Representative Haynes.
Hi, thank you both for being here.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the fact that Medicare, Medicaid, whatever reimbursements that ambulances get is going increasingly lower? Therefore, obviously, that doesn't help the expense and bottom line as well. So this is one other way that maybe we can overcompensate for some of that possible funding.
I'm happy to speak, but I don't think I was registered with you. We have allowed that earlier and so you're here. I I think it's okay for you to answer the question, but please turn your mic on if you do.
Yes, thank you for your question because it's very meaningful right now. There is a a bill in the governor's cuts to return. It's it's an $8 million cut to the bottom line. But for EMS providers with the federal match, it's 28 million. So that is a significant setback. It's unfathomable that that could occur after we really got all the support from everyone last year to get that Medicaid increase. So we're all fighting hard for that. We were all up at the state last week or two weeks ago with Senator Anwar. So this bill, as Bob mentioned, it's 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 much smaller, but every penny counts with, you know, our vehicles going up 30% medical supplies, all the repairs. But this Medicaid cutback will be significant and and much more severe. And it, you know, I can't say what it's going to do for every provider. But, you know, the the bottom line is it's going to put greater strain for mutual aid, response times. And in a time like this, I don't, I don't understand how this is coming forth. It's such a setback. You know, we're, we really, we, most of us do not have any subsidies from the from the towns we serve. Our reimbursements are mostly Medicare and Medicaid. That's about 80, 75 to 80%. The rest is small private pay. So we really do need the support to have the Medicaid funding stay where it's at and not to be cut. But we certainly would appreciate the cut in the sales tax as well.
Thank you. I think, you know, that's an important piece of this that we need to recognize. And if there's things that we can do, you've been in this, you know, again, this small, small piece to help. Emergency medical response is our first, our first line of defense when something goes sideways really fast in your life, no matter who it is. And we have to support EMS services in the state of Connecticut any way we can. So I'm a firm yes on this bill and I hope we can, you know, pass this. But I do think that everybody really needs to pay attention to what's going on in EMS because it actually affects not only, you know, your loved one when they fall over with a heart attack, but it it hurts our municipalities. It hurts everybody. And so we really need to address this in in every and each way we can. So really appreciate you being here. I'm surprised there's not more of you, but I'm certainly glad that Edna's here and and it's great to see you both.
Thank you very much for asking for that because that's so critical for us. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Chad Perkins? Chad Perkins? Dan Swanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Can you hear me?
Here, you're fine.
Great, thank you. My name is Dan Swanson. I'm an attorney and I'm testifying on my own behalf in support of Senate Bill 1460. I worked on swipe fee reform for nearly 18 years as a staffer to U.S. Senator Dick Durbin of Illinois, who led federal debit card reform legislation. And I know some members had questions earlier about the interplay between this bill and what's happened federally and in Illinois, and I'm happy to speak to that. Couple of quick points. So the structure of the credit card system is complicated and it's confusing, but it is key to this conversation. Interchange fees are fees that card acceptors pay to card issuing banks on each transaction. But the banks don't set the rates for the fees they get. Visa and Mastercard, which control about 85% of the card network market, fix interchange fee rates on behalf of all their card issuing banks, which means the banks don't have to compete with each other on fee rates. And that's a great deal for the banks, but it stifles normal marketplace competition that would help hold fees down. And so the bill would stop Visa and Mastercard from establishing interchange fee rate schedules where the rate formulas cover the sales tax portion of the transactions. So under the bill, if banks want to let Visa and Mastercard keep fixing fees on their behalf, they can. But the fees Visa and Mastercard fix would not apply to the tax portion. And that makes sense because it's not fair for the credit card industry to impose a financial penalty on Connecticut merchants for collecting sales taxes on behalf of the state. If this were a more competitive market, I think you'd see that 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 practice go away, but it's not a competitive market right now. And these taxes are not revenues that merchants retain. But when interchange fees are charged on these portions of the transaction, merchants are compelled to raise retail prices to cover the cost of the fees. So the fees are inflationary for consumers. Now importantly, enforcement in this bill is solely on the card network companies like Visa and Mastercard. They are the only entities that are subject to enforcement actions. And that's appropriate because they establish the fee rates and set the rules in the interchange system. And in Illinois, the court considered and rejected the argument that state laws reining in Visa and Mastercard are federally preempted. So members, you have authority and jurisdiction to act on this issue. And then the question was asked earlier, what's been happening federally when it comes to to swipe fee reform? Well, in 2010, Congress passed some federal reform that applied to debit cards, but not on credit cards. And so that has become an area of urgent need. Merchants and consumers need relief now when it comes to these credit card fees. And that's why you're seeing states all over the country taking action and moving forward with legislation. And so bottom line, the status quo is just not sustainable when it comes to these swipe fees. The system is structurally anti-competitive and the fees are inflationary. And taking steps to rein in Visa and Mastercard's most problematic fees will give real relief to merchants and consumers across the state. And so I would urge the committee to support the bill and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Any questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Swanson. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Alberts?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Senator Fonterra, members of the committee. I am Mike Alberts, President and CEO of Jewett City Savings Bank. We're a small mutually owned savings bank located in Eastern Connecticut. We're state chartered. We have about four hundred and forty-five million dollars of assets, and we have branches in seven locations in Eastern Connecticut. Our core business is to collect deposits and to provide loans, consumer and commercial loans. About sixty-one percent of our loans are loans to small businesses. We have no shareholders, so very similar to credit unions in that regard. We're essentially owned by our depositors. We attempt every year to take some of our earnings and divert it into a Jewett City Savings Bank Foundation, which provides much-needed grants to local first responders and nonprofit agencies, including area food banks. While we don't issue credit cards, we do have about eighty-nine hundred active debit cards that are issued through the Mastercard network. Our customers utilize those cards, as you would expect, through all types of retail transactions, stores, restaurants, gas stations, and merchants who accept the credit card payments benefit from faster and more secure access to funds, and they pay an interchange fee, which you've heard much testimony about. For a small community bank like ours, interchange fee income is a vital revenue stream. I think you've heard earlier testimony today that approximately one-fifth of a penny is the amount of money that a bank receives or credit union receives. And that's about, that's about right. That's about what we see as well. That money has to help cover the cost of offering the debit card program, which includes fraud prevention, cybersecurity, transaction processing, and customer service. The loss or restriction of this income would severely limit our ability to do what we do. So in short, Senate Bill fourteen sixty isn't just about credit card payments and large banks. It also threatens small community banks. Over the last two decades, we've seen a number of banks consolidate. During the course of my banking career, four of the six banks that I have worked at no longer exist. I believe Connecticut benefits from having both small state charter banks like ours and large national banks to serve the diverse needs of our citizens and businesses. As a number of small banks dwindle, local communities lose access to the kind of service that only a small bank like ours can provide. I do thank you for your time today. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions that you may have of me.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Alberts?
One, two, three.
I'll ask Representative Zupkis if she has any questions.
Oh, very good, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Mike. Nice to see you. Welcome back to the building.
Uh, thank you. It's, I'd say it's an honor to be here in this room. It's great to be on this side of the table.
Well, it's good to see you. I just have a question. So you only deal with debit cards? Correct, no credit cards?
That's correct.
And you said you do get a little half, a fifth of a penny or something?
A fifth of a penny, yes.
So your bank and other, do all banks get part of that processing fee on the sales tax?
I can't speak to how the network efficiently, you know, efficiently and effectively works. I can tell you that we get that one-fifth of a penny on the total dollar amount of the transactions that our debit card users use. So if you look at all their transactions, multiply that by a fifth of a penny, and that's about what we get. I mean, you've heard a lot of testimony about cards. Card usage is definitely on the rise. We did the math, and we had probably about two hundred and five million dollars of transactions that those debit card holders were doing. But we have a vault full of cash, too. So if people want to get access to cash, we have it.
I, I would like to use cash, but I use my debit card all the time, because I never have cash. Um, but I was just curious. So my question was, do you get? But I'm just talking about the processing fees on this tax. So your processing fees could come from the whole transaction?
That's true. So, yeah. That piece, I was doing some quick math on it. It's probably on the tax piece. It's probably about twenty-five thousand dollars. You know, our bank has usually had profits, annual profits of a million to two million dollars. And this year, you know, we're a little bit more successful than that. But every revenue stream like that, where you have twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand dollars at stake hurts us. We do a lot of work and spend a lot of time combating debit card fraud and education of our customers. So there's a very real cost there.
Right. Thank you. I've had, I think, three debit cards in the last few months, because they get hacked into or whatever. So, um, thank you. Nice to see you, and thank you for answering that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Representative Piscopo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to welcome our former colleague there, Mike Alberts. It's good to hear your testimony, Mike, and good serving you. You, you, I just want, you contrast between four to six banks you've worked in, where you've worked at since you left the legislature. Though you worked at some when you were still in the legislature.
That's correct.
Yeah, but, um, what, what is it? What's your point? That they could absorb that kind of a hit if?
Well, the number of banks in the country continues to shrink. We're down to about forty-four hundred institutions of all sizes in the country. That's on a steady decline from the depression era, where there were about thirty thousand banks. So the cost of doing business as a bank continue to rise. The cost of fraud, the, every single piece of the transaction costs more for us. So we try to guard our revenue streams as much as possible, and, and we're competing with larger banks for certain pieces of business. Being a state-chartered bank, we are subject, as I understand it, to the possibility that if this bill moves forward, we are going to be, you know, competing with federal organizations in the state of Connecticut, banks, fellow banks, that may not have these same restrictions imposed on them. So then I've got to make a hard decision. Do I want to continue our bank, which has been chartered since eighteen seventy-three? Or do I want to recommend to the board of directors that we should now look to seek a federal charter and then have no official regulatory tie with the state? It's not what I think our, our board would like to do. But, you know, as each initiative by the legislature encroaches upon our business, we have to consider it.
We've seen a bunch of small community banks being gobbled up by, by the larger. Is that out of four of six that have left, have they been gobbled up by a bigger bank?
A lot of those banks are stock-owned banks, so that there's a benefit to the stockholder of those banks. But as a mutual savings bank, which has no intent on converting to a stock bank, we don't want to follow that business model. So as long as we can be sound, as long as we can earn money, as long as we have good management, we can try to stay independent. But when we start to lose money, then we're in jeopardy of going the way other banks have gone.
Thank you, and good to see you, buddy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Yaccarino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike, thank you for being here. Mike was a mentor to me, I think. I've learned quite a bit from Mike, and your integrity and honesty was always very important to me. But I asked a question a couple of times today about how do, me as a retailer, how would I recapture that percentage? And I don't know if anybody could really gave me definitive answer. And it, and not that I want to, I want the money, but it's, I would, I would argue that any institution, especially the larger ones, maybe not the smaller ones like your bank, are going to find a way to get that money back, recapture that money some way, because they do spend a lot of money on fraud and different education and different avenues. So how do we, I, I really don't know how to ever get that.
You raise it, you raise an excellent question, Representative. I, I think that the timing of this bill, I believe it is suggested to take effect in October twenty twenty-six. I, I really don't know if that's feasible. There are people who will be testifying after me who can talk a little bit about that challenge of doing that. I don't know what the, the best way of doing this is. There's got to be another mechanism, I think, to recoup some of that, that fee income that, you know, seems to be charged, but I don't know how to do it in a way that would be, you know, easy for that merchant like yourself who's trying to collect the fees in a bifurcated system. I'm not sure how that could be done.
Yeah, that's funny. I've had the same account since I've been in business, and he, he really, you know, he's very, very smart. He just, unless you have a specific software, and even that might be difficult, because you have different, you have different levels of sales, debit credit, some returns, gift cards. You know, when you sell a gift card, it's not taxable until it's redeemed. You know, tho- those are all things that you have to segregate, and that's, that's what I'm trying to say. Logistically, I just don't see it working. I wish it could. I wish we had no sales tax, but we do, and I remit it every month. But I've always, you know, I've always, I, I'm listening to you with good intent, well-intentioned, and I appreciate everything you're doing here, testifying, but everything you did here is legislative body.
Thank you.
I really thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mike.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Davis?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon.
Other distinguished members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. Always a pleasure to be back with you. My name is Christopher Davis. I'm the Vice President of Public Policy for the Connecticut Business and Industry Association. I'm here to testify in support of Senate Bill fourteen sixty-two and Act Establishing a Tax Credit for Employer Contributions to Employees' Chet Accounts and Concerning the Connecticut Higher Education Trust and Connecticut Baby Scholars Fund. We would like to thank State Treasurer Eric Russell for bringing forward this idea to provide a tax credit of up to twenty-five percent of an employer's contribution to an employee's Chet account. This proposal makes Connecticut's employers more competitive by aligning it with six other states that offer a similar credit of contributions from employers into their employees' tax-advantaged education savings accounts. With Connecticut still facing over seventy-five thousand job openings, we see this tax credit as another tool in the tool belt of employers to be able to offer to attract and retain employees here in the state of Connecticut. It puts it closely in line with other tax credits that were passed by this very committee last year for student loan contributions on behalf of employees. And we believe that this makes it an opportunity for us to be able to try to hold on to some of that, some of the youth here in Connecticut that, as many of you know, has the brain drain when they get to an age of moving out of the state and, and raising a family. This gives an opportunity for employers to make those contributions, to try to encourage those young families to stay here in Connecticut. I would recommend, however, in, in consultation with the Treasurer's Office and, and recommending to them as well, that the committee consider including taxpayers under Chapter two oh seven, which is the insurance companies here in the state under the bill as well. I think that was just a oversight during the drafting of the bill, so that those large employers here in the state can also maximize the benefits of being able to offer this type of contribution to their employees as well. In my written testimony, I offered some very simple substitute language that just adds in two oh seven to the bill, that I hope the committee will take under consideration if they move forward with the bill this session. And since I have a few moments, I'll just say that I also submitted written testimony in support of dedicating a portion of the revenue generated from the meals tax to the tourism fund that I know you've heard a significant amount of testimony on here today. So with that, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chris. Questions for Mr. Davis?
There is a question online from Rep Farrar.
Thank you very much, Ash. Representative Farrar?
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Ash. Hi, Chris. Good to see you. Hope you're having a good day. I do have a question for you. I asked the same question of Treasurer Russell earlier. Do you know anything about the states that have implemented this, what they have seen about any uptake or increase of contributions to Chet?
I did hear that question earlier to the Treasurer, and I, I would defer to him, because I know that their office has done quite a bit of research into this, and I know he indicated he would get you that information. I wasn't able to find that information myself prior to coming up here today, but I think it is an important thing to take a look at to see how much of a difference this makes in, in getting people to make those contributions into their Chet accounts.
Great. Thank you, Chris, and I'll certainly follow up with the Treasurer. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Representative Farrar, I beg your forgiveness for not recognizing you earlier today when you had a question of a, of a witness previously.
All good. I tracked them down, so all good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for former Representative Davis? A very able member of this committee for a number of years. Seeing none. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ranking member, correct. William Delacamera? Amrys Williams? I've not seen this first name before. This is a first for me. Hopefully I pronounced it correctly.
Um, yes, you did. It was perfect. It is of Welsh extraction, so.
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Esteemed members of the Finance, Revenue, and Bonding Committee. My name is Amrys Williams. I'm a resident of Middletown, and I'm the Executive Director of the Connecticut League of Museums, which is our state museum association. We are located as an in-house community partner of the Public History Program at Central Connecticut State University in New Britain, and we're funded in partnership with Connecticut Humanities. We have been a grassroots membership governed organization, serving Connecticut's museums and historical societies since nineteen fifty, so we're celebrating our seventy-fifth year this year. We have near six hundred individual members representing approximately two hundred and fifty museums and historical societies in every corner of the state. And I'm really grateful for the chance to speak with you today about increased investment in our state's cultural sector as proposed in HB seven one seven six. So I've submitted written testimony that outlines some of the many ways that the Connecticut Cultural Fund in particular really unleashed the social and economic power of our state's five hundred-plus museums, particularly during the difficult times of the pandemic, as well as of the State Museum Association that I run through grants, through digital infrastructure, through public access to museum collections, and through workforce development. But today, I want to share a more personal story about what museums mean to Connecticut's communities and why they really deserve state support commensurate with their impact. So for years now, I've been taking my son, who just turned six about a week ago, to the Eric Sloan Museum in Kent for an event called Trades Up. This is a hands-on experience in the historic and contemporary trades. So he shows up, he gets a pair of safety glasses and a T-shirt, and we sign a release. And we let him loose on several acres that are filled with stations with craftspeople. And at every station, kids and their grownups can try their hands at everything from carpentry to plumbing, blacksmithing to landscaping. So my son has helped rivailogue with a pro and a mallet. He's built a masonry arch. He's hammered a horseshoe with a farrier, climbed a tree in an arborist harness, mixed plaster and shaped a crown molding, drilled a mortise with like a nineteenth-century beam auger that you do like this. He's upholstered a chair seat, and perhaps his favorite of all, smashed a hole in drywall with a hammer and then fixed it. And the day forges these connections between young people and practicing tradespeople, between museums and businesses, and among families and visitors. And I always have to tear my husband away from some in-depth conversation that he's having with like a window restoration person getting home restoration tips. As I said, we have over five hundred museums here in Connecticut, and each of them are doing incredible things like Trades Up. We are so fortunate to live in a state where experiences.
You've got three minutes. Please summarize.
Well, we need a space like that, that museums provide like this more than ever these days. They foster community, support local businesses, and inspire self-directed learning and make space for joy and wonder. I know many of my colleagues here today have talked about how funds in this sector are increasingly unpredictable. So I encourage you to support this bill, and I thank you for your service. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. You do know about there's child labor laws in Connecticut?
Because like to work, too. I mean, you need experiences, too.
Chair horn.
Thank, thank.
Doesn't agriculture have an exemption for that? I don't know. I'm also a historian, so.
I just wanted to note your, of course, I was walking the room when you were talking about the Trades Up event, which is a very popular event in Kent at the, at the Machinery Museum, draws people from all over. at the Machinery Museum, uh, draws people from all over the region, so to play with, to play with tools and to learn how to work with their hands.
Yeah.
Which is really important. So that's just the, a comment, not a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Art Corey?
Good afternoon, Senator Fonfara, Representative Horn, ranking members Fazio and Paletta. My name is Art Corey, General Counsel with the Connecticut Bankers Association. We, uh, are pleased to have an opportunity to come and, and testify on Senate Bill fourteen sixty. Uh, the CBA represents fifty-five banks doing business in the state of Connecticut. Twenty-five of those are state chartered banks. Uh, twenty, thirty of those are out-of-state and national banks and about fourteen of those are national banks. Um, we're, we're very concerned about the potential impact, negative impacts that Senate Bill fourteen sixty could have on the ability of, of banks, uh, to provide the efficient, convenient and secure card payment services that they provide today and, and not just the banks, uh, both large and small ability to do that, but also uh, the rest of their partners, uh, the payment, the card networks, the payment processors and other participants in that process. I think one of the things you heard today and, and a lot of the testimony is how valuable, uh, card payment services are for, uh, our customers, both businesses and individuals. Uh, and again, we're, we're very concerned that, that this will have an impact on the ability of all the participants in the card payment system to provide those convenient, efficient and safe, uh, secure services. Um, i- it's a complicated, uh, uh, process, uh, there are complicated economics involved in this, uh, which is why we, um, have asked the gentleman to my right, Steve Rouschenberg, to come and help us, uh, sort of try to clear up some of the questions and confusion that there is around that process and, and this bill. Steve is, uh, representing the Electronic Payments Coalition in addition to us. He, um, is, uh, uh, an expert, I think, on the, the economics of, of the process and the card payment system. Uh, uh, he's an expert on a lot of this legislation. He travels, uh, to many states. Uh, I think he was in three, um, this week alone, uh, two of them out west, uh, and we're fortunate to have him here and, and I, my hope is that, um, when you, you have, you have questions, you, you don't direct them to me because I pretty much have exhausted my, uh, technical knowledge on this subject. Uh, but that maybe some of the questions that were directed, uh, that you had for other testifiers, you might ask him particularly around maybe the, the economics of this because I think that there was a lack of clarity, I think, on some of the, uh, cost to merchants and retailers, uh, for the, you know, the interchange fee on the sales tax portion. So I'll, I'll, I'll conclude there and, and, and let Steve make his comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Co-chairs, thank you for allowing me to testify. I'm Steve Rouschenberg. I represent the Electronic Payment Coalition. I'm a recovering Illinois State, uh, Senator, um, served from nineteen ninety-two to two thousand and seven, uh, just finally getting over it. Um, I really appreciate all of you still being in your seats. I know what it's like to, I was a Chairman of Appropriation. We used to run some very long hearings. I know what it's like to sit through long hearings, so I really appreciate you being here. Let me start by just saying a couple of things. If you were to build the ideal system, uh, for today, uh, it would be built by the private sector, wouldn't cost a nickel of state or federal taxpayer money. It'd be voluntary. Um, it would be open to all financial institutions, large and small. Uh, it would be virtually open to every merchant that registered with their state. Um, it would be, it would include ninety percent of Americans and ninety-three percent of those Americans would be satisfied with the system. It'd be highly competitive, uh, competitive, um, among networks, competitive among processors and competitive among issuers. Um, it would have competitive contracts for the, the retailers to negotiate. It would have ten thousand banks, credit unions and financial institutions worldwide participating so that a visitor to Connecticut from Frankfurt, Germany could use their credit or debit card in your, uh, restaurants and your cultural attractions. Um, it would have nine competitive networks worldwide. It would have more than three hundred major processors and would have millions of satisfied cardholders. Uh, you know, there's been a lot of talk about this, uh, system that we have today, which I think is pretty amazing, um, about it being a duopoly or, or being controlled. There've been two extensive reviews by the U.S. Justice Department and two Supreme Court decisions in the last ten years, um, all kind of addressing the question of whether there's competition in the credit and debit market. And in all cases, the federal government has found it to be a competitive marketplace without anti-competitive behavior. I can guarantee you Walmart, Costco and other large retailers are constantly, uh, nipping at the heels of the, um, the, the banks and the institutions that run the network to keep their act clean. Um, this, we, we heard some things. I just want to address three of them and then I'll, uh, be quiet and if you see if you have questions. There was talk of a forty percent increase in, um, uh, interchange rates or in costs.
You've reached five minutes. Please summarize.
That forty percent represents increase in, uh, volume, not increase in rates. The interchange rates have been flat for eight years. Thank you.
Questions for the gentleman? Representative Haynes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you so much for being here and, um, I'm gonna let you finish what you were gonna testify. I, uh, we're very interested in trying to figure this out and that's an interesting, um, last, uh, note that you just mentioned is that the fees have actually been flat over the last whatever year. So can you keep expounding on that information?
Yeah, credit card interchange fees have been flat for the last eight years. There have been no changes in the rate. There has been a substantial movement, um, in large part stimulated by the COVID to move people to electronic payment. Um, so there's been, retailers are experiencing an increase in the amount they're paying, but it's not because of the rates have gone up. It's because utilization is up dramatically. Um, the, um, credit card interchange rate averages about one point six, one point seven percent of the transaction. But for a debit transaction, this question was asked by, uh, one of the other members. Um, the, the debit card transaction interchange is point four. So it's very, very small compared to the, because there's no loan involved. Uh, you're in the, the bank is not loaning the money to the customer in an unsecured loan.
Thank you for finishing that thought. Can you tell us a little bit more about from what you've heard of us, our, our conversations earlier in regards to the actual, um, you know, the contract that the retailer is, is, is making with the credit card company to use credit cards? There's, um, you, I think, um, your friend here has mentioned the safety, um, safety net that, that the credit cards give the retailers, um, you know, what are the other benefits that using the credit cards? And why it's either important or not important for a business to use a credit card and, and hence why the processing fees are in place?
When you consider all forms of possible payment that a merchant or retailer can accept, the Mastercard Visa system is essentially the least expensive method. If you wonder why there's no more store credit cards or why Costco contracts with the credit card provider to have their own card, it's because the processing costs of the global payment system are actually lower than other costs. When you take into consid- can, uh, consideration the cost of managing a cash drawer, change error, uh, bank fees, other things that are involved in managing cash, it's actually more expensive than, uh, a credit transaction. It's only if you compare, um, you know, if you assume that you have to manage cash and you add, um, electronic on top of it, that it actually has a cost. The reason the airlines have moved to all electronic is the cost of managing cash drawers for each of their reservationists to collect luggage fees exceeded the value. Um, it's much less expensive for them to participate in the global payment system. That's why you, you want a system that's low cost, okay, and that's providing great service. And every single day out in the West Coast, some fintech is coming up with an innovation and there will be competition, uh, for the global payment system as there should be. Um, but yeah, I just, it just seems a little unfair to take the system that kind of helped restaurants and small merchants survive the whole COVID, uh, you know, as governments shut down small retailers and let big box stores stay open. Uh, it was the global payment system, the electronic payment that, that really gave, um, small businesses a fighting chance. And I realized, I, I love toll roads. Uh, we have all kinds of toll roads in Illinois. I, I love the way they plow them and they maintain them and I hate to pay the toll. I, I don't disagree with any merchant who doesn't like to pay their processing fees, but, um, they, they are pretty reasonable in relation to other payment modalities.
Thank you. And just one last question. If we were to roll back the sales tax and so that the processing fee would not be on the sales tax, but on just on the total merchant merchandise price, how does that either benefit the retailer or where does that money show up later? Like where does it, where does it make sense or where does it not make sense there?
Well, I'll try not to be confusing and I'll try to be as brief as I can, but a couple of things first. I- i- if you assume that this bill would stand federal review, um, what you would do is you would take the amount of sales tax that a merchant collects, subtract the amount that they receive in cash or by check, take the balance, divide that into three pieces. About two-thirds of that would be a credit transaction and about one-third would be a debit transaction. So you could take their sales tax earnings and multiply it by about point nine, a little less than one percent. That would be the annual savings if this applied to all transactions and that's on average. I mean, the, the number of, the amount of cash transactions a, a, a merchant gets depends kind of on what business they're in. Uh, but so about little less than one percent of their sales tax collection would be their savings and that would come out of the issuing banks. Not a nickel of that would come from the processors and none of that would come from Mastercard, Visa, Discover, American Express and any of the networks. That comes out of the issuer that takes the credit risk, loans the money, pays ten dollars to replace the debit card that gets, uh, compromised, uh, does the monthly billing, et cetera, et cetera. Um, now a couple more things. It appears to us, and I, I think we're, we're in very good ground, that the National Banking Act preempts states from regulating the way national banks set their fees and collect them. Um, so we believe that, um, this bill would not apply to nationally chartered banks and nationally chartered savings institutions. The, the judge has not yet ruled on how she views, uh, nationally chartered credit unions. But nationally chartered credit unions are not big issuers. They, they tend to be kind of localized. So i- it's about ninety-two percent of the market in Illinois that is excluded under the judge's, um, preemption right now, her, her preemptive. Um, th- there's a question of whether, uh, other parts of the network will be included in her, um, uh, decision. They've asked for summary judgment. She's, I think, gonna hear, uh, arguments and summary judgment in the next two weeks. Um, so I, I would urge, as I've urged other states, that if you're really interested in this, you might let the state, the, the court case play out in Illinois before you kind of leap. Uh, but we think it's pretty clear this will only apply to, uh, state chartered, uh, banks and credit unions in a state that passed it. Hope that was responsive.
Thank you. That definitely was and, and I think you're right in that we really do need to wait.
You've reached, uh, five minutes and two question limit.
Okay, sorry. Thank you.
I'm not looking left or right anymore.
At the end of the day, you guys have been very gracious and long day.
Every angle of this bill for the next two years. Thank you, gentlemen.
Can I just close by saying if there's any info- any information that the committee wants, we're very happy to bring things back to a, a committee briefing, whatever we can to help you make good decisions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rufus Durham?
Hello, Finance, Revenue and Bonding Committee. Uh, my name's Rufus Durham. I'm a resident of Kent, Connecticut, uh, and I'm the interim Executive Director for Connecticut Arts Alliance. Uh, we are a statewide arts, culture and creative economy advocacy organization and I'm testifying in support of HB seven one seven six today. Uh, my colleagues from other organizations and our partners, including CT Humanities, CT Tourism Coalition, CT Restaurant Association, CT Retail Association, I think even CCM maybe, uh, have all been testified, CBIA, uh, have all been testifying in support of the multiple bills this session, uh, supporting our efforts in securing one percent of the meals tax, uh, to help increase funding to arts, culture and tourism, uh, sector in the state. Through this process, we've been sharing a lot of data, a lot of figures, showing that our sector is an accelerator and will show a fairly immediate return on investment. And we already saw this through COVID with the ARPA funding and the COVID relief funding, uh, coming through the states and what that did for the vibrancy and recovery of our communities. Uh, actually, for a brief moment, for one very, very short, brief moment, we were actually first in nation for arts funding per capita, uh, in the whole of the United States. Um, and we were finally competitive with the surrounding states for tourism marketing. Now, we're not. Uh, we lag behind our neighboring states and we aren't even where we were as a state for the height of our investment in two thousand and one, two thousand and two, two thousand and eight. We haven't even reached back to those levels. Um, while we support all of these bills, seven one seven six excites me the most as it is the opportunity to establish a long legacy in Connecticut of innovation, creativity and community vitality. I grew up in Kent and I still remember the moments where I realized the world was a bigger place than my small hometown. Um, it was going to a show at the Warner. It was going to events at our library. It was taking a field trip to puberty. It was hearing a concert on the green. I was going to a movie on Bag Street Theater in Milford. These moment, moments of discovery had pushed me to a career in the arts that has brought me all over the world and allowed me to meet and talk to filmmakers, actors, musicians, artists, authors and business leaders from everywhere you can imagine. Uh, one thing that unites every single one of these people is shared moments of awe and connection to a larger community through arts and culture experiences in the place they grew up in. We look at arts and culture as, as inflection points in our lives. First loves, first heartbreaks, loss, celebration. Uh, it is a fundamental human experience to share stories and lessons. This goes back to when we first gathered around the fire to, to celebrate hunt and a so- uh, uh, successful harvest. Uh, and if we want to support this next generation of creative thinkers and workers, and not just in the arts and culture industry, if you ask any tech.
You've reached three minutes. Please summarize.
Uh, that they need this creativity and this is the bold investment that's going to cement this legacy. Half of it going to municipalities, half of it going to arts, culture and tourism creates a cyclical and beneficial thing for our community. More events mean more people going out to restaurants, which means more investment into events, which means more people going out to restaurants and it will build. We are a state of makers and innovation and we're a, if we're the pizza and basketball capital of the world, why can't we be the creative capital too? Thank you. If you have any questions, I'm open.
Before I turn the mic over to, uh, Chair Horn, would you be willing to share what that shirt says that, that we can get the benefit of?
It says, uh, practice, practice radical empathy. It's from a, a group called The Bitter Southerner.
Very good. Representative, Representative Horn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and hi Rufus.
Hi.
Um, I just want to note that, you know, you have done tremendous work in the arts in the Northwest Corner in general in various capacities and, and that for my corner of the state that I represent, um, really is what economic development needs. Um, uh, it is what drives a lot of incomes across the state. And I wonder whether you had, um, any particular sort of big picture numbers that you, that you wanted, you might want to add to, you know, what this bill could accomplish.
Sure. So, uh, the last real numbers we have are from two thousand and twenty-two. So we have BEA numbers for the entire creative sector, which is about twelve point seven billion dollars, is four percent of our economy. It's about fifty-four thousand creative workers in our sector. Um, again, that's twenty twenty-two, so we're just coming out of COVID. I think if we did, when we see these more recent numbers, uh, it's gonna be higher. Uh, nonprofit sector alone has a total expenditure in the state to our, uh, our economy of almost a billion dollars, nine hundred and fifty-four plus million dollars. Uh, this returns about fifty-four million dollars, uh, of state tax revenue. Uh, third, and, and, uh, represents about three hundred and forty-seven or almost three hundred and fifty million dollars of expenditures into our downtowns. Um, we've also bring ten million people into the state or, or into our downtowns. Uh, ninety percent of that is in-state travel, so people from other towns going into our towns. And this is largely because we do not fund tourism marketing at a state level comparatively to our surrounding areas. Um, but yeah, largely we, uh, including line item earmarks, we fund at about one dol- dollar and eighty cents per capita. Um, without the line item earmarks, we sa- we spend forty-one cents per capita. This is significantly under every single state that surrounds our borders. Rhode Island, Massachusetts, New York, New Jersey. All of these states spend, uh, an order of factor magnitude greater. Um, but this bill would allow us to become competitive and it would spread. But this bill would allow us to become competitive and it would spread. We would be able to fund more organizations and in doing events in more towns and help fight the narrative that there's nothing to do in the state. I grew up here. I left. I came back. All my friends in New York wonder why I don't come visit them is because I live 10 minutes from about 15 to 16 different trails. I, we have some of the best restaurants in the state. We have some of the best arts organizations in the state. We have some of the best museums in the state, big and niche, like the Carousel Museum, one of my favorite museums in the country. This state is amazing and we're too, sometimes we get trapped in our Yankee mentality of like being a little down on ourselves as the middle child between New York and Boston. But I'm a big fan of this state. It's why I came back. It's why we live here. And it's why I'm doing, that's why I'm in front of you and saying, hey, let's help our, our kids and our grandkids like stay in the state. And like, let's get more people to move in.
And we're glad to have you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? You had me there for a second. Thank you, Mr. Durham.
All right. Thank you.
Next up, we have Cricket Jackier, who I believe is online. Trying to get to us in person. I know you've been traversing the country. So welcome.
I have. Well, good afternoon, Representative Horn and, and committee members. My name is Cricket Jackier and I'm a dairy farmer from East Canaan. Laurelbrook Farm LLC fully supports House Bill 7175 in its entirety. As a multi-generational dairy farm committed to providing 15,000 gallons of safe, local, and nutritious milk that Connecticut residents enjoy every day, thank you for considering this legislation. Our family is committed to the long-term viability of family farms, which includes our social, environmental, and economic responsibilities. To produce this amount of milk from our cows, we also farm about 2,800 acres of land that ensures the rural landscape many of you enjoy. This bill will help us be in a more competitive place that we are in today than our neighboring states. I assure you that capital needs on farms to meet normal replacement of machinery and equipment is extremely challenging and truly daunting. We must reinvest in our business while adapting new technologies and initiatives to remain relevant and have a successful business model that attracts the next generation of farmers. The tax credit will help tremendously in these efforts. Increasing the machinery exemption for municipalities from 100,000 to 500,000 is long overdue. To say equipment expense has increased is an understatement. Tractors and harvesting equipment have easily doubled over the last eight to 10 years. We appreciate all of you recognizing this financial impact with the limited resources that we have available. We know our dairy farm is one of the economic engines driving billions of dollars of impact to our state's economy. Dollars received are dollars reinvested in our operations and contributing to drive more return to the local economy. We encourage all of you to see the positive impact this important bill would bring to our agricultural industry that needs to not only survive, but thrive as everyone is so dependent on us and we are committed to you. Most importantly, this bill supports all-size operations as we depend on each other in serving our local communities. Thank you for the opportunity to share that with you all today in considering House Bill 7175. I don't, are you on mute? I'm sorry.
Gosh, I've been reminding other people to do that all day. Sorry about that. I was, you are my constituent and I know that you farm in both Connecticut and New York. So you have experience with both the New York Investment Tax Credit and possibly others. And I, and I remember recently you told me a story when you were thinking about the next generation of your family and where you were going to invest in them so that they could have a future in farming. And you were looking at New York because it seemed like the grass was a little greener over there. I wonder whether you could comment on that.
Yeah, sure. And I think, you know, when I talk about sustainability and it's long-term investments and future generations, you really have to figure out where, where can we farm? Where, where is that place to operate? And I think, you know, we had the opportunity to do a small segment of our farm expansion into New York, which has really this tax credit program going on. And this has been imperative for us. Our investments over there are rapidly happening as we speak. It's a small segment of our business, but I also know that Connecticut can do the same as 90% of our farm truly wants to stay in Connecticut and that's where we want to produce milk. We may end up housing our young stock in another state. But I also am on a cooperative board that has over 200 dairy farmers from New York State. And I'll just tell you, I wanted to share this just a real quick. The attitude and the momentum of investment that's happened in New York that absolutely must trickle into Connecticut. That competitive advantage that we need is real and it's happening all around us.
Thank you. As we said, because we are right at that border, we can sort of see it happening across the border and we very much want to keep that, you know, you, as I was, I use the figure of, of, you know, agriculture being a $4 billion industry and was correct that it's nearly five now earlier today. So it's an important investment for us all to make. Any other questions for Cricket? Seeing none. Thanks Cricket. I know it's been an odyssey for you to get to us today.
I wanted to be there in person, but thank you all.
Really appreciate it. Thanks. Next up is Maureen Abramson. She went already. Sorry. Dina Fleishman.
I'm coming on.
There you are.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having me. Good afternoon to our state Senator Fazio, as well as the other representatives in the room and the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee. I am representing today Greenwich Historical Society where I serve as the Director of Development and have been for nearly two, two years. I am submitting testimony this afternoon in support of House Bill 7176 with respect to the need for increased investment in statewide arts, culture, tourism, and tourism infrastructure. The proposed support of arts and culture will allow increased access for all citizens of our state and beyond because we also serve Westchester County as well as the surrounding areas. Additionally, we hope that these funds will be used to support the celebration of Connecticut's Americas 250, which celebrates the commemoration or commemorates the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the founding of our democracy. So please allow me to just share a little information about Greenwich Historical Society if you don't know much about it. Last year in 2024, Greenwich Historical Society served an audience of over 18,000 people, including visitors to our museum galleries and our national historic landmark Bush Holly House, researchers in our library archives, attendees at our summer concert series, and seasonal outdoor family festivals. We also served over 1,500 schoolchildren and art history summer camp attendees. Past funding from Connecticut Humanities and the Connecticut Cultural Fund allows Greenwich Historical Society to enact our long-range planning and foster new relationships that connect our community with our commitment to providing history and education for Greenwich residents of all ages, including those children I referenced earlier from both public schools and area private schools as, as well as students from the surrounding areas. This funding makes possible for the historical society to continue to offer free programming from two Title I schools in our area, in our town. And it also supports arts and cultural, the arts and cultural and social studies curriculum for Greenwich Public School children. And our organization also offers visitors comprehensive adult and family programming year-round. These include lectures, book talks, film screenings, and these are often presented in partnership with other local nonprofits and cultural organizations. We also have a vibrant concert series during the late spring and summer season. This is offered free of charge to our members, of which there are nearly 1,000 annually and at low cost to local residents. We have three family festivals each year, our latest being Juneteenth, which is a pre-celebration.
You've reached three minutes. Please surprise. You've reached three minutes.
Okay. So everyone has said that funding is very important. But, you know, we do lag behind our neighbors and it's really important to fund arts and cultural organizations because museums are vital for communities as they preserve our local heritage and foster education and promote civic engagement. So please, 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 please vote yes on this bill 7176. Thank you very much for your time. Any questions?
We'll check. Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bruce Adams?
Good afternoon, Senator Fonfara, Representative Horn, Representative Paletta, distinguished members of the Finance Revenue and Bonding Committee. My name is Bruce Adams and I'm the president and CEO of the Credit Union League of Connecticut. I'm usually over in the banking committee, so this larger room is perhaps a little intimidating, but I'm happy to be here, testifying in opposition of Senate Bill 1460. This bill harms credit unions and their members, who, for those of you who don't know, are underserved and overlooked, sometimes the least bankable or banked people in Connecticut. And it does so by making credit unions pay retailers to perform their mandated state function to collect tax. The bill has an obvious, immediate, and detrimental impact on Connecticut's credit unions. We are small, not-for-profit cooperative businesses who can't afford to lose this revenue. And as not-for-profit cooperatives, as you've heard from James Higgins earlier today and Riverbank Credit Union, Police Credit Union, Manchester Municipal, and of course, SNCAP in Hartford. As these non, you know, not-for-profit entities, what they do, their whole mission is to invest their profits back into their communities. So erosion of this legitimate revenue hampers their ability to educate their consumers and their customers and invest in their communities. But turning to the substance of the bill, no one would expect a vendor to provide its services to the retailer for free. And so interchange is most akin to the costs a retailer would pay for snow removal than it is to anything else. And this is why, just like snow removal, interchange fees are a tax deductible cost of doing business. The important difference is that the people who share the revenue from interchange fees provide frontline fraud defense and cover against bad debt. So the private sector supporters of this bill and, and us, those of us who oppose this bill are aligned, actually in two very important aspects that bear highlighting here. One, merchants perform an essential state function when they collect and remit tax to the state. Two, they should not have to pay for the privilege of carrying out their mandated duties to collect and remit. But lest you think I mischaracterize their testimony, here are some examples. The Connecticut Food Association says, "Let's be clear. This is a fee for tax collection." Says Connecticut is one of only a handful of states that does not compensate merchants for performing this critical collection and remittance work. The Durbin staffer, Mr. Swanson, says, "The credit card industry imposes swipe fees on the taxes that merchants collect on behalf of the state." National Restaurant Association, "These businesses are some of the largest collectors of taxes on behalf of the state. Stop &amp; Shop, Garofalo, Highland Park, the Retailers Association. Merchants are effectively paying swipe fees on money that is not part of their revenue."
You've reached three minutes. Please summarize.
I don't think I need to summarize. You get my point. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Adams? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I think at the, my own risk of saying that the last testifier before us today, Jason Mancini. Is Jason here? Yes, he is. Very patiently waiting. You have the floor, sir.
I'm happy to back clean up. Dear Senator Fonfara, Representative Horn, and honorable members of the Finance Committee, I'm Jason Mancini, Executive Director of Connecticut Humanities, Vice Chair of the America 250 Connecticut Commission and a resident of North Stonington, testifying in support of House Bill 7176 in our concern in a portion of the meals tax. I'm speaking on behalf of a culture and tourism sector that indeed seeks greater investment for, from the state for arts, culture, and tourism. I've been at Connecticut Humanities now for seven years and during this time, I've listened closely to legislators and the governor talk about investment in education, innovation, healthcare, workforce development, supporting small businesses. As a statewide-focused nonprofit affiliate of the National Endowment for the Humanities, I'm here to testify that we have done all of that on your behalf along with our partners in DECD's Office of the Arts and Office of Tourism. Together, we engage, grant to, convene, and connect nearly 750 cultural nonprofits across Connecticut in nearly every one of our municipalities. These organizations are small businesses, employers, community anchors, learning, creative, and innovation spaces, and connectors. You've heard from a number of our grantees and community partners today, stories that illuminate the importance of your investment through us. There's more, there's more evidence in our, of our impact in the written testimony. We can't build on all we've achieved without your investment. Through our grants, we collect and report data. We know the opportunities. We understand the ROI. Collectively, we are 13.4% or $40 billion of the state's gross, gross state product, 175,000 jobs, and more than 1,000 destinations. We are an engine that continues to modernize and make sustainable our operations. We serve the social and educational needs of our communities and we grow our economic impact. Again, we need investment. 90% of the attendees and revenues this sector produces are our residents and 10% come from out of state. Said another way, this means Connecticut loves culture and we're missing out on opportunities from our out-of-state neighbors. Imagine what greater investment in our cultural organizations and in tourism marketing could grow, could do to grow our businesses and with a minimum of six to one return on investment, our tax revenues. In our communities, the organizations we fund, including libraries and museums, are our most trusted public institutions. In these partisan, polarized times we live in, it is imperative we invest in these public spaces to bring people together across differences and towards common good. We are trusted, resourceful, accountable, and innovative problem solvers. We are partners and collaborators that invest in, guide, and support small businesses as community anchors. We weave together the educational, cultural, civic, and municipal fabric of Connecticut.
You've reached three minutes. Please summarize.
With increasingly unstable and shifting culture and funding culture in Washington, we will see, we will see more pressure in the philanthropic landscape. While important, those investments are inconsistent at best and perfunctory at worst. We know a stable source of investment could be accomplished as part of the proposed meals tax allocation. Our request would be a rounding error in the state budget, but one that couldn't be more important to Connecticut's long-term health and future. I'm grateful for your consideration.
Thank you, Jason. You're a good closer. Representative Seth Constantine?
Hi, Jason. How are you?
Hi.
You mentioned it in your testimony. I was just wondering, do you have any concrete information as to any of your grants for funding being cut off? Have you been informed of anything on the federal level?
If funding were cut off?
Yeah, from the federal level. Have you had any communication?
So right now, no. We were very concerned when the federal freeze from OMB was, put everything on pause. But we've been in direct contact with our congressional delegation and happy to report to them that we have had no adverse impact so far. That doesn't mean it's not going to happen. We remain concerned. And the federal funding that we receive funds pretty much all of our operations so that almost everything we get from the state goes back out to the communities.
So to clarify, your operational funding is from the federal government?
Yes.
Thank you.
Co-chairs are arm wrestling over who's. Co-chairs are arm wrestling over who's, who's got the mic. Thank you, Representative. Seeing no further questions, I believe you have, uh, closed us out today. So thank you for.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks to everyone. We do not have a, uh, an official date for anything else yet, but stay tuned. Arriving in your inbox soon. We will have more.